Okay, good morning, everyone. David, would you begin with the television announcement, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20 and 9:00 AM in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Inez, Santa Maria and Orchid areas. Rebroadcast of the Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 PM on CSB-TV, Channel 20. And now for the roll call. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Blau?
Here.
Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
Commissioner Valencia?
Here.
Commissioner Jackson?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Black, if we can roll. I'm going to have to figure out how this new system operates. Bear with me a little bit. Ms. Black, can we start with the agenda status report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. You have six items on your agenda this morning. The first item is conceptual review for the Hunter La Parisma Resort proposal. And you have four regular items. And the process improvement workshop that we continued from last week is our last item on the agenda. And we're ready to move forward with all those items this morning. Moving to the projection report. There are a number of changes to the projection report, so I'll just go through it, starting at the beginning. Your next meeting will be on January 23rd. And on that date, we do have the greenhouse gas emissions briefing scheduled with the Commission. We did have an affordable housing workshop scheduled with the Commission on that date as well. We have taken that off at the request of Long Range Planning, and we will be putting that on in the spring for the Commission. And I believe that'll work better with the RENA allocation process, and will provide a bit more structure and substance to your discussion. February 6th, we have the Santa Barbara Ranch discussion about how we're going to proceed with the hearings. As you recall from our briefing, fairly lengthy briefing on the EIR last week, we expect to have an assessment of the public comments on the EIR by that point, and some idea of when the hearings will commence. And then we want to discuss with the Commission how we should structure those hearings. Also on that day, we have the Planning Area Boundary Discussion for the Galita Community Plan update, as well as the Annual Work Program for Land Use Planning Projects and Policy Initiatives. February 8th is the Planning Commission Retreat, and I'll come back to this at the end of the projection report. I do have draft retreat agendas to review with the Commission. We did choose a location for that. It's going to be at Kachuma Lake. There's a facility right there, and we'll bring in lunch for the Commission, unless somebody doesn't want to do it there, in which case we'll look for someplace else. We'll talk about that in a moment. February 13th, we did add the North County Jail as a government code consistency review, so just wanted to point that out. The Commission hadn't seen that before, and this is a pretty time-sensitive issue, as I think you heard, in the context of the San Inez Community Plan. Commission will meet again on February 27th, and we have two briefings scheduled for that day. The briefing on SB 18, tribal consultation, and a very short briefing from the Montecito Water District staff on proposed water-efficient landscape design guidelines. Then moving to March 5th, we have the solid waste thresholds are proposed to be updated. This is something new on your calendar. Resource Recovery staff will be bringing those forward for your Commission's review. And we've also finally scheduled the SEQA training for March 5th as well. Mr. Yates will be presenting information to the Commission. And then, last thing I wanted to point out, we have moved the Trinket on Ridge hearing for two reasons. Number one, one of the Commissioners couldn't be at the meeting that we had tentatively set. And the second reason is that the item is still in final formulation, so we're hopeful that March 27th will work. That is a special hearing date, and so I would ask if Commissioners would be available that date. It's the fourth Thursday of March, I believe. And that's all I was going to review in terms of the projection report. I would like to hand out -- well, are there any questions first on anything I've covered?
I'm not sure if questions or comments, but I'm not real happy to see the Affordable Housing Workshop put off that far, and I'm not sure it's necessary that it be a part and parcel of the RENA numbers, to tell you the truth. The Board last year formed an advisory committee, keep changing the name of it, to tell you the truth, and they came out with a series of recommendations that they presented to the Board. The Board then adopted all but, I think, one or two of those recommendations with the idea that staff would go forward and implement those. Well, as part of the implementation, they need to be further developed, they need to be brought up for this Commission, they need to be approved, and then sent up to the Board for final consideration. So putting this off until spring is, like, not acceptable to me, because I don't think that the affordable housing elements and the components, especially a lot of them that the Committee came up with, have much to do with the RENA numbers. So I'd like to see this thing stay on the January 23rd agenda. And even if we don't do any more than review what the Committee proposed to the Board, and have staff come and tell us what they're doing to create those changes and implementations, it may be continued, but I don't see the reason to wait until March. I think that would be not a good idea.
Mr. Chair, may I -- I'll speak to Commissioner Blau's comment. The affordable housing presentation that was going to be done by Long Range Planning was with relationship to, essentially, the RENA process. It wasn't to speak to the 13 recommendations that you're speaking of. That's going to be done by HCD, and in fact, they are doing a quarterly report for the Board of Supervisors on that very item. I believe it's either next week or the following week. I can't remember now. I don't have that in front of me. So if you'd like, we could ask John Terrell, Director of HCD, to bring that stuff to the Board, or to the Commission, because that's really a separate item from what Long Range Planning was going to be doing in the first place.
Before Commissioner Blau, only because of my newness, HCD?
It's Housing and Community Development Department, which is separate from Planning and Development.
Okay. Commissioner Blau.
And, Mr. Chairman, that would be great, fine by me. At least gets the process started, and more important, I think I'd like to see the Commission get up to speed with what is being modified as a result of those recommendations last year. So that would work out just great. We could make a good direction.
I will make a call to John after my little piece of the agenda today, and see if that can be arranged for the 23rd.
Okay. Ms. Black and I had discussed this, and it was my understanding when we did of the saliency with regard to the RENA numbers, and we were trying to plan accordingly. If we can work that in, and I presume we can work that in on that basis, then that would be acceptable to me, too. Mr. Cooney?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add my own comment with respect to the agenda postponement. I originally asked that this be put on the agenda for the first month of the year with the idea that we would keep in front of the Commission the importance of...
Are we hearing this? Sorry. We would keep in front of the Commission the importance of addressing the need for affordable housing. I know, Mr. Baker, that a number of speakers addressed the Board of Supervisors yesterday with respect to work. I'm not sure if that's the same committee that Commissioner Blau referred to, but again, the impetus was that we're not doing enough in this county to address the need for affordable housing. And my concern was, though the technical numbers were met in relation to the Isla Vista Master Plan for the period under review last summer, that I was concerned the Commission be aggressive in addressing the challenges ahead for affordable housing, with or without regard to any state mandates.
Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Cooney, and that's exactly what Long Range Planning has asked to be able to do, and they need more time with regard to the, you know, their ideas is that what we've got to do is look forward, not look back. And so that, but they do plan to bring those, that very set of issues to you, which somewhat dovetails with what Commissioner Blau has requested in terms of the policies that deal with the affordable housing, which will work their way into the housing element. And they, John Terrell will be able to provide you with, you know, where they stand on those items that, as they work into the housing element with regard to affordable housing.
Well, I'm sure the Chair's lack of understanding of the jurisdictional differences between departments on these issues, but I'm happy to have it continue on the agenda if we can as soon as possible, and then I'm sure with staff support, we'll be able to advance the discussion.
Yeah. As I think some of you are aware, HCD now is one of my responsibilities, as well as Planning and Development, so that's why I know what they're doing with the HCD piece of this.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Baker, I'll always ask for assistance with acronyms, as I'm getting my feet wet here. At this juncture, it is in the agenda, it is time for public comment.
Mr. Chair, before we move on from the projection report, if we could spend just a few moments on the Planning Commission Retreat agenda?
That would be fine by me.
Draft?
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have prepared a draft agenda for the retreat, based upon the comments that we heard from the Planning Commission several weeks ago. And just wanted to see if this agenda met the needs of the Commission, if there are things you'd like to add, or delete, or address differently. And we can touch this one more time at our next meeting in Santa Barbara, but that's the last meeting we have before I think the retreat needs to be noticed, and we need to really make firm arrangements. So I don't know if people have had an opportunity, if Commissioners have had an opportunity to review the agenda and have comments now, or if you'd like to comment later.
Ms. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, under Plans Full Size, we had a discussion concerning 11 1/2 by 17 presentations, so we could handle and look at the, instead of having these sheets the size of a pickup truck.
Mr. Chair, the reason I put this on was precisely because of that discussion, because I don't think all of the Commissioners had the same desire, and so I thought, well, it's a pretty routine matter, we could discuss at the retreat.
I'm sure there's a happy medium in between there, but, you know, sometimes we get packages that are this big, and it's difficult, and we don't need air conditioning concerns and that. All right, that's what that means. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. I would like to just make another comment on about maps. Well, let me just go back to staff reports. Hopefully that this topic, if it's not listed, we will be able to discuss other issues besides Plans Full Size. You know, I sent you an email yesterday, Ms. Black, concerning maps and digitizing those maps, to be able to look at them on the Internet, because they're not readable in the format, either what we've got, or what is on the Internet. And I think there really needs to be something else to allow the public to look at them. So anyway, I'm hopeful that by not including the full scope of what might be possible, that we're not precluding ourselves from being able to discuss it. Correct. Mr. Chair, I think we can discuss matters like that. Thank you.
Commissioner Blau?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to have one more item added to there, if at all possible. I'd like to see kind of a flow chart of how a project from the applicant, coming up to the front desk and putting an application, gets through the process. And my concern is, just so there's no surprises, I'm concerned that this is kind of a bottom-up organization, as opposed to a top-down, and that we don't have enough supervision on projects as they go through the process. So I'd like to see how that process flows now, and have a chance to discuss it at the retreat, to see if we can't, if there isn't some way to improve that and create some more accountability. The other thing I'd like you to do, if at all possible, is to look into the idea of getting a CAD Lite software for the Commission. What that allows you to do, if we could require developers, and all of them just about, or architects now have their programs, or their plans, on some kind of a CAD program, and there are some CAD reading programs that are very easy to use, you could teach yourself how to do it in a heartbeat, and it would solve everybody's problem, I think, on the size, whether it's 11 1/2, or by 24 by 36, because you can literally make one letter the size of your screen. But if they could just look into it and maybe have some availability for the discussion, I don't know if it's worthwhile or not, but I'd like to find out.
Mr. Chair, I have another comment.
Commissioner Brown?
I think rather, what I'd like to do is put another item on there, which is process improvement effort, because I think as we talk to our constituents, we hear of things that could be changed, improved, and this would be an opportunity not only to capture Commissioner Blau's concerns, but some of the things I've heard from some people that I've talked to about, well, why does the Department do it this way? Why couldn't they do it that way? And perhaps it might be more information for you to pursue in your process improvement effort, so. Yeah, it's the same thing, it's just going to be expanded, and perhaps, and I'm just wondering, rather than look at that specific item that you've addressed, is there may be others, and we may want to have a hearing where we, like, we hold a workshop, a public workshop, where we look at these things in a more formal way?
Not to debate it, but the issue was, I want to understand how they're doing it now, so that I can sit down and look at it, and try and figure out how to do it better. You're right.
Mr. Cooney?
Okay, I'll do that. We'll get through this. I would just like to comment. I haven't had a chance, having just gotten this this morning, to make sure it covers everything, but it's certainly a full agenda, and to remind the Commission that the real purpose of this meeting is for the Commission to interrelate with staff and to work on issues that make our job more effective, and hopefully to represent the county better in terms of taking up projects. What I don't think we want to do is go too far into matters which are of deep concern to the rest of the community, because we should hold those items over for public sessions when everybody's easily accessible and can get to us. And if we're stuck on an island in Lake Kachuma, it's not going to be as fully attended as one of those meetings. So I think at most at our retreat, we ought to be identifying those issues we might want to have public hearings about.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooney, fellow Commissioners, Mrs. Black and I had a chance to discuss this, and much of this, I'd like you to go through it, is in part, education for your Chair. These are areas that I felt, certainly I had an interest in getting caught up on. If some of these are redundant, I'm prepared to do homework and learn them on my own, but since this reflected some of the past Commission Retreat work, I was pleased to see it stay on there, and I will welcome new stuff. But I do concur with Commissioner Cooney that we keep ourselves focused on our own processes, and leave those items that have a public concern for our public hearings. Commissioner Valencia, do you have?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'd like to add on to Commissioner Blau's request for a flow chart. If we change the flow chart perhaps to a per chart, it shows the time element, and it would give a better picture of how the process goes with respect to time. It's a newer process, and if you wouldn't mind upgrading the flow chart to a, because the flow chart is a top-down thing, and a per chart is a horizontal with time, with all the time elements and skips in it, might be more effective.
Okay. I think I would defer to staff to give us something that can assist us in realizing the process as it stands. And you've got a number of suggestions on the way to make that work. That being the case, and seeing no others, it is on our agenda at this point for public comment. I have a number of speaker slips, but they appear to speak to specific items, and if I'm incorrect on this, I'm going to have to have somebody let me know. But because at this portion of our meeting, this public comment period is set aside to allow public testimony on items not on today's agenda. So if you have handed in a slip here, and it is your wish to speak in the public comment phase, please raise your hand, because most of what I have, and I believe you have more, speak to specific items. So can I get a read from the audience? Are there people in the audience who wish to speak at the public comment that's on items not on our agenda today? Okay, it appears that I don't see any. Are there any in a remote location that we need to know about? Okay, that being the case, we'll move on to Planning Commissioners' informational reports, and I'll open it up to Commissioners to present any brief reports on planning issues. Are there any? Does not appear to be the case that there are any in those, so we'll move to the Planning and Development Divisional briefings. Do we have any of those?
Mr. Chair, no. Not this morning.
Okay. I'm feeling very efficient this morning. Okay. Moving on to Director's Report and a summary of the Board of Supervisors hearing. I see we have Mr. Baker here.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. The one item from yesterday that was a Planning and Development item was the Beneficial Restoration, which the Planning Commission and the Montecito Planning Commission both approved. It was unanimously adopted by the Board of Supervisors yesterday. I would point out that next week is going to be a significant meeting of the Board of Supervisors. There's going to be a detailed report on two spills by Greca, and the process of permitting, et cetera. I mean, all that, it's going to deal with the incidents, as well as processes, to deal with those kinds of issues in the future. So it might be of interest to tune in if you aren't doing anything next Tuesday morning. That's it for today.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Baker.
I had one question.
Commissioner Blau?
Could you let us, could you tell what happened yesterday with the BIA, with the bar issues before the Board?
I'm sorry. That hearing was set, and it will be on the 15th. 15th, so yeah, the issue was set for the 15th also. That's correct.
Okay. Commissioners, I don't see any other lights, so that being the case, we'll move to the first item, which is on our conceptual review agenda. Ms. Black, at least for my benefit, this is probably the first conceptual review that I will have seen, and perhaps for all of us, could you share a little bit about the expectations of what is asked of us, at least for my benefit, on a conceptual review?
Sure. Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, thank you for providing that opportunity. We haven't done that many conceptual reviews, so I think it's a good reminder for the entire Planning Commission. Conceptual reviews are a process to provide the Planning Commission with input early in the planning process on a project. It's a method to get comments from individual Planning Commissioners for the applicant, and for the Planning Commission to hear early issues or concerns from the public, and a summary from the applicant. So the key features of conceptual review is, number one, the project is not fully analyzed, we have not, by staff, we have not conducted environmental review, we have not done an exhaustive policy analysis. We try to do some initial review for the Commission. The hearing is focused on the applicant's project description, comments from the public, and then comments individually by Planning Commissioners. We don't ask you, and actually don't want you, to reach a consensus about a project at this very early stage in the process. So the hearing structure is very similar to a permit item. We start with a staff presentation, then we move to the applicant. Commission can ask questions, you know, during either of those presentations, or at the conclusion of those. Then we go to public comment, and then we ask each of the Planning Commissioners to make individual comments if they choose to on the matter before you.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this juncture, it has been common to allow staff time to set up. Do we have a need for that, or are they prepped and launched and ready to roll?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. It looks like Nathan, who is our planner on this case, is ready to go.
Okay. Then it is also customary from my cheat sheet that it is read into the record, so, David, can you help us with that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a request of Mr. Ken Marshall, Agent for Ken Hunter, property owner and applicant, for conceptual review by the Planning Commission on the Hunter La Parisma Pre-Application Project 07PRE13, application filed on August 28, 2007.
Thank you very much.
I need to make a declaration with regard to this project. This is the first project that has come before the Commission in a long time that I'm going to be unable to participate in discussing, and I realize it's only for conceptual review on today's agenda, but even still, there is a potential conflict question. I have, in the long distant past, represented as an attorney entities which are related to the applicant in this case, and while there may not be a literal financial basis for disqualification, I think the appearance is such that I should recuse myself, and I plan to do so. I've discussed this with the applicant, and so I'll take myself out of the room, and will not participate in any matters involving the La Parisma Golf Course application.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. At this juncture, also, we normally look to ex parte and site visit disclosures, Commissioners, if you have one. I see Commissioner Valencia, your light is lit.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Sometime back, I met with Mr. Hunter, drove around the golf course, and looked at some maps. I looked at some maps and drove around the golf course, and had a couple of conversations with him. That's about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Valencia. Commissioner Black, or Brown, excuse me.
I've been to the site. I've driven around the area. I have received material from DUDEC and Associates, which I don't know that the Commission received, but it was maps and drawings and things like that. But other than that, I've had no ex parte.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Blau?
Yes, I've seen the golf course several times. Been in areas where most people probably shouldn't go. And I've had the same, I think, information from DUDEC that you received. I've had a couple phone calls from the applicant offering me a tour. I'm very familiar with the project. I don't need another tour other than to play golf, so.
Okay. For myself, I've had some scheduling conflicts and haven't been able to... For myself, I've had some scheduling conflicts and haven't been able to get a tour, but I too am familiar with the golf course for less germane reasons than Commissioner Blau, but I hope in the future to pursue further after this presentation and an opportunity to see it. Okay, that being the case, and following down my cheat sheet, would be now would be the time for the staff presentation. Mr. Edie, are you ready to go?
Yes, Chairman Jackson, staff is ready to proceed with their presentation. Good morning, Chairman Jackson, fellow commissioners. The project we have brought to you today is the request of Ken Marshall from DUDEC and Associates, representing Ken Hunter, for conceptual review of the Hunter La Parísima pre-application project. Project site is located in the Sabata Canyon area, immediately north of Highway 246, approximately three miles east of Lompoc. The site consists of three parcels, which are approximately 106 total acres. As seen in this aerial photo, the project site contains the existing La Parísima golf course, which was legally permitted under a conditional use permit number 83 CP 78.
Can we just wait until he does exit the lights?
The proposed pre-application project includes the construction of an 80-room resort with a restaurant and spa facility, in addition to 85 fractionally or wholly owned casitas. Buildout of the proposed project would include the main resort facility and casitas grouped on the eastern side of the site, with additional casitas clustered on the western extents of the property. Additional roads and parking areas would also be constructed. Here are in large views of the development clusters, with the main resort and casitas to your right, and the more casitas to your left. The proposed main resort would consist of 80 hotel rooms with a total square footage of 40,960 square feet, as well as a 16,000-square-foot lobby. The main resort structure would primarily consist of two-story architecture, with building heights varying from 15 to 30 feet. However, an architectural tower, which is non-habital, is also proposed as part of the project design with a structural height of 45 feet. The restaurant would be approximately 4,400 square feet, have a maximum capacity of 293 patrons, and would include a banquet facility. The proposed spa would be approximately 3,240 square feet and would contain eight treatment rooms. The proposed project also includes 85 casitas clustered in two development areas. Each casita would be approximately 2,000 square feet, for a total development area of 170,000 square feet. These casitas will be held in either fractional or whole private ownership. If the project were to be accepted for formal processing, it would require the submittal of a general plan amendment, multiple text amendments to the comprehensive plan, a rezone, text amendments to the land use development code, a development plan, and a tentative tract map. All three parcels contained within the project site currently have an agricultural land use designation and zone district with 100-acre minimum parcel sizes. If the proposed project were to be considered for formal processing, some significant policy issues would need to be analyzed. These issues include locating an urban commercial use in a rural area of the county, locating urban density residential development within a rural area, and finally locating residential uses within the resort visitor-serving land use designation. As previously mentioned, the project site is currently designated for agricultural use. Therefore, the project would require a change in land use designation to resort visitor-serving commercial. This land use is defined as urban development by the county's land use element, and would therefore result in the placement of an urban use within a designated rural area of the county. As seen in this figure, the project site is highlighted in red, and the urban boundary is located approximately two miles to the west, denoted by the dotted line. The urban development boundary in this area of the county encompasses Vandenberg Village, Mission Hills, and unincorporated areas of Lompoc. All remaining areas of the county in this region are designated rural. The county's land use element provides a specific definition for uses which represent urbanization or urban development. In accordance with this definition, the majority of commercial uses are defined as urban development. There are limited exceptions to this assumption, which will be discussed further. In addition to the majority of commercial uses, residential development at a density greater than one unit per five acres is also considered urban development. The land use element also provides a specific definition for what are considered allowable uses in the rural areas of the county. The land use element identifies the primary acceptable uses for the rural areas as agriculture, mineral extraction, recreation, low-density residential, and public facilities. There are limited exceptions for allowing some commercial uses within the county. These include resource-dependent uses, such as mineral hot spring spas, commercial uses granted a conditional use permit, subject to a finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan, and highway commercial. The county's existing land use pattern reflects the comprehensive plan's limitation of commercial uses in the rural area. These are, there are approximately 40 commercially zoned parcels in the rural area. Seventeen of these parcels are located within existing developed rural neighborhoods. Commercial uses located within EDRNs predated the comprehensive plan and the application of the rural area designation. The remaining 23 commercial parcels located in rural areas are all zoned highway commercial. There are three properties in the county which currently have the resort visitor-serving commercial designation. However, all three of these properties are located in urban areas of the county. As shown in the displayed table, highway commercial uses allowed in the rural area are intended to serve the highway traveler and typically include auto service stations, restaurants, and convenience stores. The proposed location of urban commercial uses within the rural areas of the county poses a direct conflict with the comprehensive plan. If the project was to be formally accepted for processing, it would require text amendments to the land use element, which specify what, if any, additional commercial uses should be allowed in the rural areas. Allowing higher intensity commercial uses within the rural areas could have substantial countywide implications in regards to agricultural viability, water use, traffic, air quality, et cetera. The potential cumulative impacts of such a decision would have to be evaluated. The comprehensive plan defines residential development at a density greater than one unit per five acres as urban development. The proposed project includes fractionally or wholly owned casitas at a density of one unit per 1.2 acres. Therefore, this project would result in the introduction of urban density residential development within rural areas of the county. The proposed location of urban density residential development within rural areas of the county conflicts with existing language of the comprehensive plan. Therefore, if the project were to be formally accepted for processing, it would require text amendments to the land use element, which specify that additional residential density can be allowed within rural areas under all or limited circumstances. Such text amendments could result in a higher density of development across the majority of the county. Such substantial countywide implications would have to be evaluated. The land use element specifically defines resort visitor-serving designation and lists typical allowed uses. These uses include hotels, motels, restaurants, country clubs, guest ranches, riding stables, and beach clubs. Private residential ownership is not described as an allowed use. An additional text amendment to the land use element would be required to allow private residential ownership within this designation. In conclusion, the proposed project, if accepted for formal processing, could result in the introduction of a commercial use as well as a residential density, which are defined as urban development within a rural area of the county. These proposed changes to the established land use patterns in the county would be precedent-setting, and the countywide implication of these changes would need to be evaluated. That concludes staff's presentation. Mrs. Alice McCurdy and Derek Johnson from Long Range Planning and I are all here to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Edie. At this time, we normally have our questions from commissioners. I'll entertain any questions from any commissioners at this time. Mr. Valencia, or Commissioner Valencia, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, this is a fourth district item, and before we get involved in something, since this is conceptual review, I would appreciate if my fellow commissioners would allow the applicant to make his presentation.
Are you asking in advance of questions from commissioners at this point? Okay. I don't see any objection to that. Again, following down under our normal, this would be the applicant presentation portion, so at this point, I don't see a problem or a challenge with that, so perhaps we will ask at this point if the applicant is prepared to make a presentation at this time?
My name is Ken Hunter, and I represent the La Parísima Golf Course, which is, as a matter of information, is a limited partnership with about 60 partners, the Hunter family being the largest partner. I just wondered, is there a, there's not a label mic here by any chance, is there, other than just something that's, because this, I don't know, I have to lean over, I guess, to get to it. Do you have label mics?
We don't have lapel mics, but we'll look and see if we have a handheld mic.
Well, first of all, we do have a brochure. I don't know, many of you have probably already seen it, but if you could, we could pass it around to any members of the public. I think there's quite a few brochures, so they're available if you haven't already seen them. I guess to start out, I think history counts, the, and is, just to kind of set the table as to what the original circumstances were at the time that the golf course was approved and then built and developed. I think it was around '82 or '83 that the golf course, some 25 years ago, was approved. And at that time, the expectations were there'd be rapid growth in the Lompoc Valley from, by reason of the Vandenberg Air Force Base becoming the Western Headquarters of the Space Shuttle, and there was a great deal of speculation and hope that there would be a lot of economic development in the Lompoc Valley, occasioned by that. And there are many hotels built in the city of Lompoc, a lot of expectation of tourism and so forth, and so that was the, those are the circumstances. So when my father conceived of the course, there was certain expectations, oh, thank you. Can you hear me? Is it on? Hello? Yeah, okay, it's on, okay. There were certain expectations there would be quite a bit of growth in the Lompoc Valley. Also, golf at the time, golf.
A little louder, Ken.
I'm sorry, yes, golf play was increasing nationwide, year to year, there was several percentage points that were, you know, you'd see more and more players. And in fact, at the time, my father was operating the Sandpiper Golf Course located on the coast in Galida, which he'd also conceived of and permitted and built and developed and then managed, and it had also seen increasing play year over year. And in those days, the, he was sort of a pioneer in the sense that he'd been involved in other golf courses, which were what they call standalone golf courses, which is to say there was no other economic element to the golf course. And one was involved in Fillmore, California, it was called the Elkins Ranch Golf Course, and then he'd also, say, built the Sandpiper Golf Course, so he was using the same business model, is that La Parísima would also be a standalone golf course, and that the same level of increased population would be eventually present in the area to support the golf course. So, that, on that basis, the golf course was built, and over the many years, it's gained a national reputation. Should read from what awards and accolades it has received over the years since it opened, and these are just simply the most recent ones. Top 100 public golf courses in America in Golf Magazine in the year 2005, four and a half stars out of five overall golf, overall golf experience in Golf Digest, the leading golf magazine. Last March, top 50 of America's toughest courses. LA Times, top five editors pick must-play, also last year. Number one best-conditioned course in Southern California by greenskeeper.org. It's also been a U.S. Open qualifying site, PGA Tour qualifying site, and the LPGA has also played tournaments there. Certainly, the staff has described the surrounding uses, but I thought maybe from our standpoint, the, as we see it, the current land use is basically, we're bounded on two sides, north and east, by residential development, five and 10, five, 10, 20-acre ranchettes. There's farming, some farming to the east, not much, and then Highway 246 is on the south You should also know that there was an environmental impact report that was prepared at the time the golf course was built. The issues were similar to the are today, even though it's 25 years later, they're typically archaeological, water usage, biology, traffic, et cetera. So there is an available impact, environmental impact report. Clearly, that would need to be updated, but there's been a lot of work already done that even at this very early stage could be reviewed, and so we, and the environment, except for the construction of the golf course itself, has not particularly changed, or the environmental issues have not particularly changed, in our view, since the golf course was built. There are some archaeologically sensitive zones on the parcel. Our project proposes, for the most part, to entirely avoid all those sensitive areas. With regard to water usage, we have, we believe by taking turf that is in non-golf course areas, by taking that out and turning that into, say, drought-tolerant landscaping, and by upgrading our irrigation system to more modern techniques, that we can reduce the level of significance, or reduce to an insignificant level, the amount of water, change in water usage for the golf course and the resort. So we've given consideration of that. We have also done a traffic study, which indicates that there's still capacity on Highway 246, and the amount of traffic in certain times would not be significant, according to the report that we've studied, that we've commissioned. Also, it should be noted that to our proposal, the project will be self-contained, for all intents and purposes, and there will be no really additional, hardly any additional burden on the community services and so forth, it's, which is perhaps unusual in many cases. So, we come to this current circumstances and why we're here. Over the last, say, 10 years or so, the Lompoc Valley has experienced maybe minor to consider it maybe moderate growth. Since the golf course opened, of course, we lost the Space Shuttle, that created a lot of economic stress in Lompoc, and so all those hopes, I guess, were dashed with the accident that the Space Shuttle occurred in 1986. But however, since that time, things have changed. Certainly, the amount of wine grape growing and the establishment of vineyards in the Santa Rita appellation has been quite dramatic and rapid, and certainly the Santa Rita wine appellation has gained a national reputation. And certainly, the Santa Rita Wine Appalachian has gained a national reputation for its fine Pinots and Chardonnays. So that's, that is, I'd say, in the last ten years, that's been quite a change in the general surrounding area. Golf play, since two thousand, my dad passed away in two thousand. But since that time, golf play at the golf course has been more or less flat. And that is also true nationwide with just about all golf courses. There has not been an increasing number of players. And so, as such, the Hunter family, from time to time, has had to loan money to the golf course to keep it in the condition that it, that my father would expect. And we are facing some significant capital expenditures in the next five years. Anyway, our goal is to create a sustainable business model into the future that above all preserves the golf course, which is my father's legacy and, as I mentioned, does have an excellent national reputation. And also serves the needs of the surrounding community. Our proposal, which will be described in detail by our architects, consists of eighty hotel rooms and eighty-five casitas. And the theme being, if you will, golf and wine. Similar to resorts that you find currently in the upper Carmel Valley, the Napa Valley, Sonoma Valley, or the south of France, for that matter. So, something that would be in the same vein, in the same theme as those other wine regions in California. Let's see. We know the most controversial part of this proposal is the wholly or fractionally owned casitas, if you call it a residential aspect. So why do we propose it? It basically has to do, for purposes of being able to finance the construction of the resort. And I will read just a short excerpt from a Wall Street Journal article that appeared maybe six months ago, but I'll just quote from it. Lodging econometrics, a consulting firm in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, estimates that ninety-five percent, let me just say ninety-five percent again, ninety-five percent of luxury hotels and resorts in development in the U.S. are being built as part of larger real estate projects, up from ten percent in the late nineteen nineties. Typically, the revenue from the non-hotel portion of the project subsidizes the hotel rooms, and in most cases, the additional revenue stream comes from the sales of condominiums in these cases. So that's, in the world out there where these luxury resorts are being built, almost all of them nationwide contain this type of business model in order to raise the funds necessary to build the resort. Please keep in mind, with regard to this element, whether we have a hundred and sixty-five hotel rooms and suites, or whether you call it eighty hotel rooms and eighty-five casitas, it will all have the same look and feel, either way, to the public at whole, the public at large. And so from an appearance, it should not make a difference, per se. We have reached out to the community. I've appeared before the Lompoc City Council, the Chamber of Commerce, Rotary Club, and whatnot. And we do have letters of support. I think Bob can show those, maybe those have been passed around, from the city of Lompoc, supporting the project, as well as the Lompoc Chamber of Commerce. We know the, as the, we know that, as the staff report, points out, that the, this is inconsistent with current zoning and some of the county policies. But that's why we're here to talk about it, and that's why, that's what this conceptual review is about, is to hopefully listen to the public, listen to the commission, and collaborate, if you will, if they like the project, of course, as to whether there's a way to accomplish this. So we're very, we're all ears, and everything's on the table. There's nothing that's in stone here. This is, this is just a, if you will, an idea that we're coming to you to get your input on and feelings. And so we are here to listen to all members of the public that wish to speak, or if anyone wants to call me on the phone directly, you're welcome to do so. And then after we leave, we hope to just get a better idea of what's feasible to do. I can say this, the, it is important, of course, that if we go through this process and spend the money and go through, spend the commission's time and staff's time, I really do want a project that can actually be built at the end. And that, that's my biggest worry, is that, that the, whatever, you know, if you reach some kind of consensus that's impractical, at the end of the day, it'll all be wasted time for everybody. So I am, I hope, please, I'll keep in mind that what we have to do has to be practical. So, anyway, let me introduce my consultants. They are, they are here to answer questions as we go forward. I'll defer to them in many cases. So just stand up, so you know who they are. And you're also welcome to call them directly, any member of the public can call them directly. But Bob Easton is my architect. Actually, he was the architect originally on the La Prisa Golf Course and was the architect that was involved in building the current structures there. Sam Mafus is our landscape architect. We have Ken Marshall, whose name has been mentioned. Dudek is the land use consultant. We have Peter Doctors from Flowers and Associates, who's the civil engineering firm on the project. So I think that's about it. And maybe if I would, Bob, if you'd like to come up and maybe present just in much greater detail what we're proposing to do.
I have a question.
Commissioner Brown has a question.
Of course, yes.
Thank you. You've mentioned that your project is to be self-contained, but I don't see anything in your literature where it talks about worker housing. Had you proposed any of that?
Well, as I say, not at this point. As I say, everything is on the table. We're here to listen to, to what, you know, to all those concepts.
Okay.
Thanks. Excuse me, but David, could you operate the slides for us? Nathan, thank you very much. I'll just say next, or something like that, whenever it comes up. Bob Easton, the architect for the project. I've got some conceptual sketches and plans to try to give you an idea of what we're starting to think about. And I just want to say that I was fortunate enough to be hired by Ken's father to do the original clubhouse there. And I must say, it's a pleasure to work with Ken now on this. The Hunter family has always done everything they've done with great quality and integrity and respecting the land and the community. So I want to thank Ken very much for having me involved. And I want to present you idea of our basic layout, site plan, and then the individual units, to give you an idea of what the buildings are like. This view here looks toward the east, and in the distance will be the site for the resort. The lake is just about in the middle of the property. This slide you saw before, and I wanted to point out the, 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 there it is. The golf course is here. And then this is the residential area that was mentioned. We have vacant parcel here, and it's vacant here to the south. And this is the Mission property and city of Lompoc here. And two forty-six, of course, goes to Buellton. Next. This slide you saw before, and I wanted to point out the property line of the golf course. And this residential area here off Tularosa Road, which comes up here, is five-acre parcels and a number of ten-acre parcels in this area here. And in this area up in here are twenty-acre parcels, and hundred-acre parcels are located around here. The property here is non-developed with some agriculture. Next. This slide, I want to go through actually what the facilities are. Of course, this is the property line. And the existing golf clubhouse is in this location. There's an existing maintenance area here. We have a barn and facility maintenance located here. And we are proposing to enter the resort area and the casitas area, number one, at this location here. And I have a picture of that coming up in a minute. But we'll run the access road around like this to the resort area here and the casitas area here. We have secondary access roads that would connect the resort and casitas area with the golf clubhouse. And then we have another access road running to casitas area number two, which is in this area here. The present well is located in this area here. The present septic disposal area is in this area here with drywells. And we are proposing new septic facilities here for casitas area number two, here for the resort, and here for the casitas area number one. Next. This slide shows the location of where the access road to the resort will enter the property off two forty-six. The view here will look out over the golf course. Next. This is a shot of the existing golf course clubhouse for those who don't play golf and haven't been there and haven't seen it. It's in the style of the Mission. Plaster, tile roofs, and colonnades, porches. And I tried to pick up the theme from the Mission. Next. This is a close-up of the resort area, the parking area, and casitas area here, access road coming in here from the east. Light quality here doesn't really show this this well, but this is just a conceptual sketch. And we are trying to indicate here that we will have the red tile roofs. We will have plaster and adobe walls. And we will have quite a bit of landscaping, which will be described by Sam Mafus a little later, to soften the appearance. But what we're after here is a look of the old Mission and old California. And it's basically going to be like a little hill town. We are on a sloping site that is about, varies from, say, five to nineteen percent, where we are developing, we're staying under twenty percent slopes in our proposed development area. Next. This is a view of the resort site looking from the east. So the resort and casitas site will be on this hillside right here, which is presently a grassed knoll with scrub brush. It's not in an area of oaks. We have stayed away from oak woodland areas. Next, please. This is a close-up of the resort studio units, which are typical hotel rooms. And you can see a close-up of the parking area here, the swimming pool facility here, the main building of the resort, and the resort access road. This is where people would arrive. They would drive in here. If they were staying in the resort studio unit, they would drop their car off here. Valet would park it. They would come into the building and take, be, taken by cart to their room. If they're checking in to stay in a casitas, they would be able to drive back and park at their casitas unit. Next. This is a close-up of the main building. And this would be the arrival court. People would come in here to a central courtyard and to the lobby here. The figure that was presented by Mr. Eadie earlier, about a sixty thousand, I think he said, or sixteen thousand square foot entrance lobby, I think he was including the courtyard. We're arranging the building in a courtyard shape with the lobby here and a wine bar here, and the restaurant here, kitchen, and meeting room. And I believe they added together the, also the number for the facility of the meeting room and the restaurant seating area itself. We have an outdoor courtyard here. As everybody knows, we have a prevailing breeze from the west. And this area is designed to provide a protected, the building is designed to provide a protected outdoor eating area and to protect the courtyard. This would be a shop area where we would hope to have local wines featured and other items in a shop area. And then the spa is located here, also fronting on the courtyard. So I think this idea, the building is designed to reinforce, maybe what you could say, an old California, or Mexican, or a Spanish hill town, constructed around a courtyard. Once somebody checks in, their baggage and themselves would come down this, this gallery here to a valet, and then this is a cart area. And then they would be located, they'd get on a cart and drive out to their, be driven out to their place. This is an example of a cluster of individual resort units. This is a floor plan here, and you can't quite read the square footage, but about four hundred and twenty-five to four hundred and fifty square feet of unit consisting of a room and a nice bathroom, a very nice bathroom, of a shower and a separate tub, two vanities, closet area, and a terrace. We have a housekeeping facility here, and we're proposing to have mechanical function and storage take place under the dining room in this part of the building. This is a walled, this is a walled service area here, in this area, which is accessed off the road. Next, please. This is a sketch of the resort, the main building, as seen by a person arriving from the access road. You would, having a little trouble with the laser pointer here. That'd be great to have another one. Thank you very much.
Super, thanks.
Great. The person arriving would drive in like this and drive around. The landscaping here in the motor courtyard would be here, and the entrance would be in here. This tower is over the lobby to provide a dramatic point of view. And as you can see, I'm trying to establish a village character with this main building. Next. This is the resort area of studio units looking south from Fairway. So you see the north side of it. The access road would come in here lined with olive trees, perhaps, to the entrance area in here. And then the individual units will be in buildings consisting of three to four to five individual units with some two-story elements to provide some visual character and a hill town character to the area. Next. This is a view looking from the east looking west. What we don't see here, of course, are the casitas units, which would be in this area here. Next. These are sketches of typical three-unit resort buildings, of the studio units. And some of the buildings will have five units. Some of the buildings will have a two-story section- Some of the buildings will have a two-story section. But this is a, gives you an idea, I think, of what we're going for. Materials will be plaster, red tile, wood windows and doors. And in some cases, we'll use adobe because I have found a product that's a veneer adobe that is very effective and very, very beautiful and very well done. So it'll be a mix of adobe and plaster and tile to reinforce the old California theme of the architecture. Now, this view is within the golf course, looking north toward the casitas area, which would be in here, casitas area number one. The resort is in this area here. Casitas area would be here. Next. This is the plan of the casitas area. And as you can see, these are connected by roadway. So the folks staying here would be able to drive to their unit and park at the unit. And this slope here, I have a cross-section coming up through here, varies from 18 or 19 percent in this area up to 5 percent in this area here. We'd have 53 one and two-bedroom suites in this area. The access drive coming around here and going over here to the resort. Next. This view is looking west from the resort site to the casitas area number two, which is on this particular hill here. And of course, we're looking out beyond and over Lompoc. And actually, on a clear day, you can see the shuttle launch tower. And so you should be able to sit and have a glass of wine and watch them shoot a rocket off. It'd be kind of fun. But also, you're able to watch golfers play two or three holes right here. And this is the lake. And I think this is perhaps the most attractive setting on the property. And we're very fortunate to find, I think, the best use or the best location for the resort itself, also in a position to take advantage of the best view on the property. Next. This is casitas area number two, coming up from its access drive, which is by the golf course clubhouse, to casitas that are put in this position here. If you are checking in at the resort and you're staying in one of these casitas, you would be taken by cart through the inner secondary access road over to your unit. Or you could be taken by cart from the golf course clubhouse via the golf course clubhouse and up this road and up here like this. Or you can drive around and, again, park at your, your unit. Next. This is that cross-section that I spoke of earlier. Slope a little steeper down here, but under 20 percent, and then leveling out to about 5 percent up here. This is the access driveway, access driveway, access driveway, which are running in direction perpendicular to the face of the screen. The idea here is these buildings are under 16 feet in height from the natural grade. And they are all positioned below the road, so we are not looking at any cut-and-fill Next. This is a typical casitas building. It's composed of anywhere from three to five of the individual units. This is a view looking up towards it from the 12th fairway. Next. This is now, let's go two more slides, please. Keep this slide on because I'd like now to turn it over to Sam Mafus, who's our landscape architect. And he'll explain what we're doing in regard to respecting the land and landscaping the project.
Thank you, commissioners. Just to kind of start again with the master plan, talk a little bit about our theme. We clearly want to preserve and La Parisma property is, of course, a beautiful, beautiful land form in its, in its own right. As you've driven along Highway 246, you notice the undulating rolling hills and the oak woodland on the tops and on the sides of the rolling hills on the property and beyond the property. This is a distinct part of the property's charm, and we are going to be, of course, supporting that and enhancing that and not taking away from that at all. Our proposal for the hotel and resort will preserve the rural aspect of the property by clustering the buildings, as Bob's talked about. The early California style of architecture will be along the grass knolls, as Bob's pointed out. If I can get out to the pointer now. This is a grassy knoll, which Bob has described as the main area for the hotel and casitas. And this is another grassy knoll. Much of what we'd be doing is bringing in indigenous oaks, as we have on this slope and in this area. This is an oak grove throughout this whole area here. And again, in this area. These oak groves are quite magical and quite beautiful. And that would be one of the main themes of the landscaping throughout is to preserve and enhance and expand on those oak groves. In this area, we have some eucalyptus and sycamores. Those would also be part of the, the theme. It would be an indigenous theme, a native theme. We would keep it in the same vocabulary as, of course, what the hills have around them. In the areas that I think Ken talked about, some of the balancing of water needs around the clubhouse, we would be removing some turf and creating more native drought tolerant planting in this area around the clubhouse and the driving range that helps us balance out some of our water. If you could go to, I'm going to ask you to jump around a little bit. Could you go back to slide 16? Can you find that? That's a good one. The large hotel, back to that site plant. One of the things that, again, as Bob mentioned, the buildings are clustered in ways that allow for large areas of planting and landscaping between them in the foreground and the background. One of the things we'd like to do would be to incorporate, again, the oaks and, in many cases, olives, which are indigenous to this type of area and this rural kind of setting. Large olives can be found locally that would really preserve that rural kind of agricultural feeling as well as go very well with the architecture of what Bob's presented. So much of these trees would be located locally in orchards that are being removed now and being planted with grapes. Some of those plants we've actually sourced for other projects are 12 to 14 to 15 foot high and wide. And much of what we'd be doing would be bringing in those kinds of plants for a more instant, instant softened and adaptive character to kind of make the project feel as it's been there for many, many years. Concept is to blend the hotel into the existing beauty of the site. One more slide, if you could find that. Cross-section, I think Bob talked about from the 12th hole. I want to talk a little bit about how the terracing aspect, thank you. The terracing aspect of how the casitas and the hotel are located on this sloping site allows us to plant in the foreground and the background of the architecture to really, again, soften and blend and make the development, you know, seem a part of the land as it's been there. Olive trees, oak trees in the foreground would foil and soften the architecture, blending the colors, the adobe with the, the natural elements of what indigenous and native plants we could use. The next slide is, I think, right, right in front of this one. It's the elevation that shows from the golf course. I'm sorry, I'm a little out of order. No, it's the casitas. One, keep going. It shows kind of a fourplex. I can describe the same thing real quick, right there, excuse me. That's it. Again, this, this is a real good example of what the development will look like from both on the site and off the site. These olives and oak trees would be placed in key spots to allow for views, but also to allow us to soften the architecture throughout the terracing effect that we have of the buildings going up the slope. We'd be using, you know, native cianotes, native toyon, bacchus and coyote bush, which do exist on the site. Much of the planting that exists and is very durable on the site, we would be repeating again. Our, our whole theme would be to take the beauty of the La Parisma Golf Course, which really, if you've all been there and had the pleasure to drive through the course and some of the oak groves, that preservation and that expansion of that feeling is the theme. We're not going to try to create anything that, that sticks out whatsoever. We want this to be very soft. As Bob mentioned, the height and the profile of these buildings are very low and very much adapted to the site. They won't really skyline or you won't see any ridge line of any of this architecture break because of the landscaping and the actual rolling landforms. Like to talk real quickly, one of the slides towards the end of the presentation. That one, that one right there. No, one back of that, please. Now, this is a view from Highway 246 as you're driving from east to west, looking at the project site. This is actually the 16th fairway, which you really can't see because it's on a ridge. And then it rolls down into the valley where the lake is. And the hotel and the casitas will be sitting in this area with the trees I've described. This is the distant ridge line. So the, the buildings and all the proposed areas of discussion are all in this middle zone. And from Highway 246, this is about the only place on that distance of the property that you can see any of the development. And by adding some screening in here, if you go to the next slide right beyond this, adding some screening of oaks and olives in this area, we effectively could plant something in this height range that could easily achieve that within a year or two, or even instantly, as I described, some of these trees that we could bring in, that you wouldn't even really see this at all. Or we could enhance the view of seeing parts of it, but not all of it, from Highway 246. So the landform of mounds and hills along 246 does a good job of screening this already. But this area, if I could go maybe to the master plan one more time, the large one, just to point that area out. Sorry for jumping back around. One, the large scale. There we go. This area where I took the picture is just right here. So these trees exist and this area of, of oaks really does the screening. This is all landform along the highway. You can't see the project. This is that little area in the photograph I just mentioned that we could do some, some softening and some undulating and some natural planting to actually help soften the, the development. You know, in conclusion, we really feel that, that by taking the already beautiful La Parisma Golf Course, its natural amenities, and using this kind of theme of really adapting it to the beauty that's already there, as we add new landscaping, we can, we can improve the regional amenity. We can add a way for the public to be able to really appreciate the beauty of this special piece of land and enhance the benefits of the Lompoc Valley and the Santa Barbara County. So that kind of concludes the landscape theme. Of course, we're all available for, for questions. Does anybody else want to wrap up? Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. I just want to make one more quick comment, and that is, we did take the project to the NBAR for conceptual review. And I think it's fair to say we got a very enthusiastic response. They appreciated the care and the, the theme, the old California theme of the architecture. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Risen. In keeping Commissioner Valencia with following our, my little dance card here, we could take commissioner, commissioner questions now, or we could go directly to public comment. I'll look to my colleagues here if they have a preference, but I'm looking to you, Mr., Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the courtesy. I think public comment would be good, and then our final comments.
Okay, then we will go to public comment. I have one question. I have a speaker who has identified number one twice and is in my stack, Mr. Romero, on behalf of the tribe. Did you plan to speak on this? You do. Okay. All right, you're, you're in the, in the stack here. All right. We do have a three-minute clock here, and we have a fairly lengthy agenda. So I'm hoping that people can be circumspect and work with this. And I'll read out to in advance who is coming. I have, first speaker is Mr. Wes Hagen, followed by Suzanne Schwark. And we'll go ahead and begin.
My name is Wes Hagen, and I'm the vineyard manager and winemaker for Chlopepe Vineyards, which is about two miles from the La Parisma Golf Course in the Santa Rita Hills. Chlopepe was also a 2007 Santa Barbara County Green Award winner, and also I was the Central Coast Wine Grower of the Year 2001, 2002. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors for the last eight years on the Santa Rita Hills Wine Growers Alliance. And I was also the person who researched and wrote the petition to establish the Santa Rita Hills American Viticultural Area. Well, I view development in a unique way. I'm a farmer, I'm a winemaker, a businessman, but also an environmentalist and a proud steward of agricultural land. I'm also a neighbor to the property in question. I've also played golf actively on this course for 10 years, and I doubt that many in this room are familiar with the layout and the natural features of La Parisma as I am. I've probably walked hundreds of miles on this golf course. From my perspective, being included in three separate planning meetings with Ken Hunter, his planners and staff, the Pasada-Santa Rita Resort Project at La Parisma Golf Course would be good for the wine industry, one of the most important industries in the county, good for the community surrounding the resort, and good for the environment. Let me illustrate. I think it's good for the wine industry. The San Ynez American Viticultural Area east of us contains dozens of hotels, motels, inns, and resorts. The Santa Rita Hills has zero, not a one. The interest and passion of wine lovers is being tempered by a lack of hospitality infrastructure in the western San Ynez Valley. It is currently very difficult to get lodging on the weekends in Lompoc. A client of mine just canceled a tour for 25 people as he couldn't get lodging until April, May for his group on the weekend. To attract the kind of customers that will be happy to pay the going $50 a bottle for our world-class Pinot Noir, we must look into high-end lodging options to keep our wineries open and thriving. I think it's good for the community. The golf course's neighbors are onboard, involved, and supportive. The project will spur hospitality training for all of the San Ynez Valley. It will produce jobs that do not exist before, secure jobs that are existing, and will be a welcome construction project in a housing climate that is not conducive to further building. I think it's good for the environment. The resort plans to use the existing footprint of land at the golf course and minimize the use of forested land that is currently habitat for all kinds of wild creatures. I play golf at La P weekly, seen five kinds of raptors, pigs, coyotes, deer, turkeys, three species of snakes, ferrets, rabbit squirrels, migrating waterfowl, and wild cats. Making the forest, the course financially viable for the ownership will keep the course open land for these species to live and thrive, as I've seen them live and thrive for the last 10 years. The resort also plans to offer van pool wine tasting throughout the Santa Rita Hills, which makes a lot of sense for me as I drive these roads every day. I think it'll decrease traffic and reduce drinking and driving. The plan will also protect views from the highway, and Chlopepe Vineyards supports this project. I've also brought letters of support from myself, as well as the board, our chairman, Peter Work, as well, and his Amplos Vineyards, as well as a letter of support from Chlopepe Vineyards. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Speaker.
Commissioner Brown has a question for you.
Of course.
Can you tell me how many, I guess I should, it's not vineyards, but wine tasting rooms are in this area?
Yes, there are three wine tasting rooms on the 246 corridor, which include Babcock, Melville, as well as Foley. And then on the other corridor, the Santa Rita Hills is sort of like a big W. You've got the Santa Rosa Hills, the Santa Rita Hills, and the Parismas. The 246 goes between the Parismas and the Santa Rita's, and of course, Santa Rosa Road on, on the south side. So there's two, La Fonde, actually Sanford and Almarosa. So three and three, six, three on each side, so a total of six, six tasting rooms.
Six compared to how many on the other side of 101?
Probably between 30 and 50. There's currently 42 vineyards in the Santa Rita Hills, which comprises about 3,000 acres of planted land. The Santa Rita Hills is only about 7 percent planted to wine grapes right now, 40,000 acres total.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Susan Schwark, followed by Will Sharp.
Yes, Commissioners, Suzanne Schwark, and my address is 2145 Sabata Canyon Road. So, that's my territory out there. And you each received a letter that my husband and I wrote, and should be in your hands concerning this project, and actually, the three projects, because this is not a standalone project. And on November 28th, you reviewed the Gaffney Project, and I believe that now it is before the Board of Supervisors. And then there's another project, Parnell Alexander Project, and they're all related. They all touch one with another. They're all making approaches to uses that are not consistent with the zoning. So, when Mr. Blau talks about surprises, that obviously, when it comes, you talk about bottom-up, this is kind of like, this is a surprise to us, that these things are going on, when it's not consistent with the existing zoning, with the existing zoning. And that's really what I want to address, that zoning serves a purpose, and those are can-do situations. When you buy a piece of property, you know what you can do because it's zoned that way. It is a permitted use. All of you are landowners, you know that when you buy your home, you know that's a residential area. If somebody buys the house next to you and puts a steel mill in, you're not happy. But they got a variance to do that. But that changes the complexion of that neighborhood. In 1984, the state required zoning, the California, it says, Dear Property Owner, took this out of my file, 1984, September 21. California Planning and Zoning Law requires that every city and county adopted general or comprehensive plan, excuse me, comprised of nine or more elements, and so on, and so on. And you know how those read. And those then became, and that established, the existing developed rural neighborhood, or the EDRNs. And those are very important to us in the rural area. We own 20 acres, so that's not a big area, but it's big enough for a lot of different operations, you know, small wineries, boutique wineries, raising sheep, doing some of those other things. In fact, I have a whole list. When we got this, we thought, oh, my gosh, what can we do? Is that going to change what we can do? So, we actually sat down with our neighbors and made a list. And we can do all of these things, which would be consistent with what we felt we had when we bought the property. So, I really think that if that, 1984, if that zoning regulation from that date no longer is consistent with how we want to grow, then that needs to be addressed as a whole area, not take isolated projects and make exceptions. Those kind of spot, random, impulsive type things, I think, leads to misuse of property and neglect of the neighborhood and what we all thought we had when we purchased that property.
Ms. Schwark, can you be close to?
Yes, I can, yes. And when Mr. Hunter put in his golf course, he had promised at that time to keep that zoned agriculture, as Bob Campbell reminds me. So, I just would like you to address this as all three projects, and take a look at looking at the zoning situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Will Sharp, followed by Parker Montgomery.
Hi, my name is Will Sharp. Actually, I own the third parcel north of the 7th Fairway of La Parisma Golf Course, so I'm very close to the golf course. And my concern is the rezoning. If you rezone and set a precedence for coming projects, the environmental impact is going to be severe, I believe especially in groundwater usage and wastewater. There's just, all of the water's going to come from the same aqueduct, and we will be heavily negatively impacted by that. So, I think zoning, thinking about rezoning that whole area is not a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Parker Montgomery, followed by Deborah Brasket.
Mr. Chairman, Honorable Commissioners, this is the kind of project that was contemplated by the Blue Ribbon Budget Task Force. It's a small village center. It's a revenue-positive project, in addition to the TOT, which we know stays in the county. It's also a good proposal to both preserve an already-existing public institution and enhance its use for the public. But as Commissioner Blau mentioned earlier, the bottoms-up process creates a tremendous hurdle even for a good project. Absent a community plan, or an update of an almost 30-year-old general plan, the applicant with a good project has an uphill battle to overcome the failure of the county supervisors to have sponsored an update of community plans, or to provide Lompoc finally, who's been an orphan in planning for years, an opportunity to have a community plan that serves its neighborhoods. The staff is put in a position where it has no choice but to support the status quo. What fun is it to be a member of a department called Planning and Development, and basically not allowed to do any planning? This is no longer rural. This is within three miles of a city. This is already partially developed on a very important highway. And I would hope that the Planning Commission would take this very good project and do those things that need to be done overall to enhance other applicants who have the courage and the imagination and the capacity to come forward with good projects, which will enhance not just Lompoc and this particular corridor, but the citizens of the county as a whole. If you have any questions or ideas later as to how we can improve things, it's time for some bottoms-up planning. Respect the neighborhoods, and the neighborhoods and the surrounding communities should be the ones that decide the character of a community, not top-down. What's good in Kiama is not necessarily good in Montecito, or vice versa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery, Deborah Brasket.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Montgomery, when the Blue Ribbon Panel looked at village centers, what was their thinking of village centers?
Well, the idea was, we're small units, not like the North Hills Project, which was 7,500 homes. It was typically 200 or 300 houses. We were asked to come up with revenue-enhancing ideas. We didn't necessarily endorse village concepts as a recommendation, but just one of many ways that if the county got into a budget crunch and wanted to have positive development that would enhance its revenue stream, these village centers would do two things. One, they would be positive as far as revenue is concerned, and they would be as self-contained as they could. For example, I'm sure the residents of this particular project would be able to buy sundries, so they wouldn't be in and out of the project when they were staying overnight, or a week, or permanent.
But am I not mistaken that village centers were really envisioned to provide a range of housing types and little?
Well, I think, no, we were really very vague. But I think that, for example, a project like this could include some workforce housing.
And I guess maybe Mr. Johnson can weigh in here, from long-range planning of what the village concept, since Mr. Montgomery spoke to it, of what was envisioned, because has the county done anything with that concept to sort of flesh it out of what it might look like, or what might be considered in a village concept?
Chair Jackson, Commissioner Brown, as you know, we have been studying village centers. We have looked at it in the past. We, when the North Hills Project came forward, that project never fully went to the Board of Supervisors, and we've kind of continued to look at village centers as a concept for future growth. But I think it's a larger conversation related to general plan and the direction of long-range policy for the county.
Okay, seeing other questions, Deborah Brasket, followed by Sharon Merritt.
Good morning, Chair Jackson, and members of the Commission. I'm Deborah Brasket, speaking on behalf of SBCAN, the Santa Barbara County Action Network, which is a county-wide grassroots organization that advocates on social justice and environmental issues. I'm here today because we have deep concerns with the La Parisma Resort Project, which we believe should be discouraged from moving forward. First of all, the project is in direct conflict with the county's comprehensive plan. It would be incompatible with the surrounding rural area, bringing urbanization into the rural community. As explained by staff, it would require three significant changes to the land use element. Second, it would require rezoning agricultural land to commercial use, at a time when viable agricultural is being threatened on all sides. Not only would it mean a loss of agricultural land, but also negatively impact surrounding ag operations. Third, the project, which consists of a large hotel and restaurant that traditionally employs large numbers of low-wage workers, which would impact the current affordable housing crisis, and the social services of low-wage earners whose departments are receiving deep budget cuts. Any revenue this project might bring into the county would be more than offset by the need to provide affordable housing and social services to its low-wage employees. What we desperately need in the North County are more projects that bring in high-wage jobs that allow the overabundance of low-wage earners in the county to move up the economic ladder, not sideways, into more low-paying jobs in rural areas already stressed by the lack of affordable housing and decreasing social services. Altogether, we believe that this is the wrong project at the wrong time in the wrong place for Santa Barbara County. It brings urbanization into a rural area on agricultural land, employing low-wage workers at a time when affordable housing is nearly nonexistent, and social services that support low-wage earners are being severely cut. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brasket, if I might ask just a quick question. You talk about the negative implications for agriculture. Just expand a little there where you were going with that.
Well, first of all, just taking land that was zoned from agriculture away from that use is a loss of agricultural land that in the future could be used to, for productive agriculture. And the second place, when commercial developments take place within a rural area surrounded by agriculture operations, that also impacts those operations, because it brings people into the mix when you are spraying for pesticides, and you're doing other work in agriculture, and you have a lot of people in that area. It impacts the type of work that they're able to do.
And is there pesticide spraying going on now in that vicinity?
I don't know that there is pesticide use going on in that vicinity, but it is in a rural area, and it does have agriculture that is nearby. And with the heavy winds that we know take place in Lompoc, that is a threat.
Okay, thank you very much. I believe I have Sharon Merritt, followed by Bob Field.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I have, I live on Santa Rosa Road, a couple of, several miles away, and I have mixed feelings about this project. As described, it's a beautiful project, and a class act, especially in the landscaping. However, it is an urban use in a rural area. And while I agree with Wes that this particular urban use could be of benefit to the wineries in the Santa Rita Appalachian, it's a little hard to get away from the fact that it's an urban use in a rural area. I'm especially concerned about the casitas, even if they have to, the goal of them is to subsidize the hospitality part. We're talking about a little town nicely designed in a rural area, in land that is zoned agriculture. I suppose it would be possible for the county to rezone that whole section urban, and then the resort would be like San Ysidro or the Miramar. It would be a resort in an area that's zoned urban. And I guess that you guys have that prerogative, and then the casitas aren't inconsistent. What I'm really concerned about, and I hate to use the word precedent, because everyone's always concerned about precedent setting, but I think there really are county-wide implications to the rest of the areas that are zoned rural and ag. And other projects won't be such class X, and other little hillside towns won't be landscaped to fit in. And it will have impacts on the agricultural lands. So, mixed feelings, lovely project, urban in rural, and maybe you guys just want to rezone the whole area. I don't know, but thank you.
Thank you. Bob Field, followed by John Stahl.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Bob Field. I live in San Ynez. I too am a regular visitor to the La Parisma Golf Course, and as Commissioner Blau said, the surrounding oak woodlands and canyons. The only criticism I have of Mr. Hunter's presentation is the course is even better than he said it is. I'm going to skip over the project itself, because others are speaking to those issues, and go up a notch and ask for you to do a conceptual review of the concept, which was touched on by the previous speaker. I was here a couple of years ago before this commission with the Rancho San Marcos Golf Course, which too had less play than it desired, and was asking for changes to their CUP. So, if this has awarded an 80-room hotel and 85 casitas, why not Rancho San Marcos? The Glenany Golf Course in Goleta is on the rocks. I guess they've got, their sand is running out another couple of years. They're talking to the county and to the city of Goleta about urban development on or instead of that golf course. How far does this go? Can a private country club convert to a hotel with casitas? There are other golf courses, the Alisol Golf Course, they have two? Is this 160 rooms and 170 casitas? What door have you opened with regard to conversion of golf courses to fairly large-scale, medium-scale at least, resorts? And I think the issue, looking downstream, I don't know which speaker mentioned, the Napa Valley and the Carmel Valley, and there certainly are economic interests in this county that see that as a desirable model. And there certainly are residents in the valley who do not. And I think if we are going to decide to turn the Lompoc Valley or the San Ynez Valley into something like the Napa Valley, that that should be a very, very conscious decision, and not something that we do one project at a time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Stahl, followed by Freddie Romero. Oh, you are? Okay, thank you very much. Freddie Romero, followed by Morgan Jack.
Good morning, Commissioner Jackson and Commissioner, fellow commissioners. I'm here on behalf of the San Ynez Elders Council as their rep. The area in which this project is to take place is considered a significant area to the elders, and as the applicant mentioned, there are known archaeological sites within the area of this project. For my concern, I know that this is just a conceptual hearing to review the project, I just want to make this, go on record as making a statement, that we are concerned about what may take place out on this particular project, that the project site is also within a very significant area for us in which we know we do have established burials. And that may be something that the applicant may not be aware of. Also, that I know that an archaeological survey was done back in 83, or prior to the development of the golf course. To what extent that was, was it just restricted to the footprint of actual development of the golf course, of greens or fairways? I don't know. I haven't seen that review or that report. But where the actual development is taking place, there would be a concern for us as Native American people. Native American people for the discovery of new archaeological material that may be in the ground. So, at this time, what we would like to do is avail ourselves to the applicant to be part of this process for cultural resource and mitigating any problems that may arise out of this. So, at this point, that's where we stand. I just, we do have a concern here concerning the archaeological material. But like I say, we do avail ourselves to the applicant for the purpose of mitigating any problems that may arise out of this whole project being developed in order to streamline that process in regards to cultural resources.
Mr. Romero, if I can ask a quick question. First of all, I truly liked the way you presented helping the applicant. Significance. Help me, could you fill in the blanks a little bit or help me get an understanding when you say that elements are significant? And do you have some aspects that could help me understand what you mean by that?
Well, as Native American people, we, within a half-mile of the actual golf course, we have resided as inhabitants where the mission is now located at. Our ancestors resided within that area. The surrounding areas have been known as traditional hunting grounds. Not only that, but we've gathered in the areas, whether it be material for craft-making, for food, for just resources for survival. So, when we look at the valley, when we look at areas such as that, especially where there has not been much development and it's just a lot of agricultural, we do consider significant areas or, maybe I should use the word sensitive area. But the reason why I say significant is because of the fact that we do know that we do have a significant area within, that within close proximity to it that does have burials in it, which has also been noted in previous studies, archaeological studies. So, that's what I mean when I say significant. Are sensitive slash sensitive.
No, I really appreciate that. That helps me a great deal. Thank you very much. I believe it's Morgan Jack followed by Floyd Wilder, and that'd be awesome. Thank you very much, Mr. Romero.
Commissioners, my name is Morgan Taylor-Jack. I live in Mesa Oaks, which is maybe a couple of miles down the road from the project that we're talking about today. As beneficial as this project may be to the business people of the area, I do think it's premature to consider rezoning rural land to urban or commercial uses. We don't have a viable comprehensive or community area plan for Lompoc Valley. The Lompoc, the city of Lompoc is now in, beginning Saturday, they will have the first update of their general plan. And I feel that with total three requests for rezoning in this very area that we're talking about today, including the Hunter Project, that I think this could have enormous implications for how the valley is going to grow. And I feel we need more input from other citizens of the valley before we initiate this. I would like to see us go ahead and go through the process of the general plan in Lompoc first before we entertain rezoning in rural areas. I think if you do that at this stage, it's going to open a Pandora's Box. Any developer in the county and elsewhere is going to want a piece of Lompoc Valley, and there's no planning here, really. I mean, you piecemeal here and you piecemeal there. So, I would like to see us begin, excuse me, I would like to see us begin with a Lompoc update of the general plan before we start, you know, developing rural areas. Thank you.
Thank you. My last speaker for this phase is Mr. Floyd Wilder, unless I have miscast any other slips.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for taking my late request to speak. I'm a resident of Tulareza Road, which joins the golf course, and I've been there since 1989 or the late 80s. I saw the golf course and decided that's where I want to play golf the rest of my life, and that's what I'm busy doing. And I'd like to stay that way. There's some concern on my part that the financial aspects of the golf course are not healthy like they should be. There used to be a dividend each year for the limited partners. A limited partner, I did buy into the golf course. Those dividends have been going down to where they're now amount to about three or four free passes to play golf. So, it tells me that the golf course is financially in trouble, needs money, or they're not going to survive. There's a glut of golf courses around and some of them are going out of business. One thing he didn't mention is that this is the 33rd most difficult golf course in America. Difficulty translates to good quality in the golf course and not the other way around. It's likely the golf score. Low means better, high means worse. I know all about the high. Yes.
Me too.
Thank you. We're on the same boat there, I guess. But that's what keeps us coming back. So, I would not want this to turn out to be like Glenany Golf Course, which looks like it has a good chance of folding. There is a similar project going on in Paso that has already been approved for a high-end hotel and accommodation likes being proposed here. And I don't know why we can't get on board and have our paperwork changed to allow something like this if it's being done there. I'd like to have places to have my guests come from out of town and visit and stay at a high-end place. They can afford it, I can't, but I'd like that option to be available. And also to have a nicer place to eat on occasion without going to Santa Barbara or some other city. There are a few nice places in Lompoc, but we need a real top-end, high-end place, and we don't have it. Again, the golf course is my main reason for being in Lompoc. I used to commute between the Bay Area and Orange County back when I was employable. And I threw out the anchor here when we drove a motorhome by and saw the golf course, and we've been there ever since. I'd like to stay. I don't want the golf course to fold. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings an end to our public comment at this phase. I think what I would like to suggest at this moment is that we take a bit of a five-minute break, if nothing else, for we commissioners up here. So, we'll take a brief respite and we will start up again. Okay, at this juncture, my agenda tells me we close public hearing at this point and bring it back to the commission for individual comments and/or questions. I know we short-trippeded questions, so I will, if there are questions that any of my colleagues have for staff or for the applicant, we'll do that at that point. That being the case, I see that Commissioner Blau, you have a comment or a question?
I just have a question first before I make my comments. This is just curiosity. When, where they have the casitas that are the fractional ownerships or the whole ownerships, if those are rented out by the hotel as part of their operations, is that subject to TOT tax?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, I think so, but I'm not positive.
Okay. You know, as this project progresses, if you could answer that question, and my real concern is, is that there, if there is something that we could do to ensure that there's a TOT tax when they put, if they put those fractional ownerships into a rental pool, it would, I would like to do that. And I don't think the applicant would object. So, that's my only question.
Okay. At this juncture, colleagues, do we have any additional questions? I had just one or two quick questions for staff at this point. And Derek, I'm glad that you're here. I'm just going to do it. There's been reference, of course, to the fact that comprehensive planning has not taken place in this area in quite some time. The urban boundary line that is presently on the maps that we talked about, how old an urban boundary line is that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Jackson, I think that urban boundary line dates back to when the original general plan was developed for the area. It has remained largely unchanged since the original comprehensive plan.
And that would make it 20, 30, 10 years?
That would be since 1980.
1980, so about 27, 28 years since that. Okay. I believe at this juncture, there isn't presently scheduled any amendments or general plan projects for this area at this time. Is that correct?
Mr. Jackson, that is correct. We'll be coming with our work plan in a few weeks. And the Sabata Canyon case, that was our recommendation that you do consider looking at an area plan or a process to look at comprehensive planning for this area, and that project will be included in our work plan that you'll see on February 6th.
Really, that is all the questions that I have. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, it's a very controversial project, you understand, you know, we understand. And there's a lot of items that need to be resolved, water, land use, and so on. And so, there's a lot of hurdles that have to be overcome by the developer. At this particular time, we don't have a detailed map or anything, and we don't expect that. So, rather than get into very deep on this thing, it was just a briefing, and we know that he has a lot of things that he has to look into to bring to us before he comes in for any review of any type. It's not going to be easy. It's, as you can see, there's some people in the community who are concerned, who live nearby. And I know many of these people. I've worked with them for many years, and their concerns are great. But I think the project has some merit, and I think that it would be good if the project went forward. And I'm sure that, you know, he's got 85 casitas there. Probably when he finishes, he might end up with 70, who knows, you know? But at this time, I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners, see what their concerns are. There's a water issue, there's amendment issues, there's rural versus urban and so on, and those are all things that are going to be looked at in great depth and detail. But I certainly want to hear from my fellow commissioners at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Valencia. Commissioner Brown?
I'll start. I think there were two speakers, actually there were three, who identified, the biggest issue for me is that this project presents piecemeal planning issues, and I really think that we need to understand the implications of development in this area. Just how is the valley going to grow? And I, you know, I know that Commissioner Valencia, over the years, has talked about a community plan for this area or some sort of plan to guide growth. And it's always fallen on deaf ears, and fortunately, or maybe unfortunately, where staff's going to be bringing it forward. But I think it's, I'm not sure what form it's going to look like, but I really think that we need to have some guide rather than just allowing a project of this nature to go forward. Because I think it was Mr. Field who says, "Well, what are the implications for other golf courses for Rancho San Marcos?" It's a good question. You know, I'm somewhat concerned about changing ag into commercial, visitor-serving. What a project of this nature is going to do is going to put pressure on the adjacent rural parcels to bring about further change to them. You know, we all think, oh, these wonderful vineyards that are in the area are going to be vineyards forever. But what I see is, because I live in an urban area, what I see is we nibble at the edges. We nibble at our ag land at the edges, and this is the first bite at that. And that's, that can happen unless we have some bigger plan or bigger vision about what's going to happen here. Ms. Brasket, I think spoke to one of my issues. It's about, there's no housing for workers. I mean, this is going to be a fairly intensive project that's going to generate the need for workers to house, to house people who are in the hotel, work in the hotel and the restaurant. And where are we expecting they come? They're going to be driving in from Lompoc, Santa Maria. I think that if this goes forward, you have to have a fairly good component for worker housing here. You know, we don't need more high-end housing, and this is what this project is. It's basically all high-end housing. I wouldn't be able to afford to go stay here or live here. I just, I just think that that's, in today's day and age, we need to, you know, think about these issues. Sustainability, I think one, Mr. Hoggins spoke to green issues. There's no green issues here, where I haven't seen any in the project. I think that certainly we should demand that if, in fact, the project goes forward. I'm somewhat concerned about infrastructure. Mr. Jensen was here earlier, and he left. I don't know if he's still here. He works with Environmental Health, and he, I asked him about some of the septic issues, and of course, he hasn't seen the project, so his thinking off the top of his head was there's, you know, high water flows coming from the visitor-serving areas, the hotel and the restaurant. And he's obviously not sure what that means, and I think Commissioner Valencia identified some of these infrastructure issues, some of these hurdles have to be overcome. And water, again, there's a lot of unknowns here. I don't want to get too much into the architecture and landscaping, but I have a real problem with white plaster on the hills of this area. I just don't, I think it's totally out of character. If anything, they've got to be earth tones, it blends in. We talk about landscaping. I like Mr. Mafes's ideas about the landscaping, but I always have problems when we have to have landscaping to soften the built environment. The built environment should be fitting into the natural landscaping and not have to be softened with other landscaping. I think, you know, two-story housing units are just totally out of character. I don't agree with the NVAR's comments. I think it's, we're just taking a rural area and make it really more urban or suburban. This project would look great on the fringes of Montecito or Goleta, but out here, I don't like it. I just, I think it's got some way to go. Mr. Easton does great designs, but I think it's, they need to be softened, they need to be more earthy. And I'm, you know, really, quite frankly, I appreciate that this is a great golf course. I was out there, it was really, really, really beautiful. And it's beautiful to me because it's in a rural area. And here, we're going to urbanize this rural area, and I just, I have a hard time with that. It's interesting, when I did a site visit, I was coming from Goleta, and I was driving out in this area, and I was just struck how rural it is, how rural it is, particularly with the row crops. I went down to the mission, went down there and turned around, and I contrast and compare it to the east side of 101 where it is more of sort of what I would see where this project would really fit in on the east side in that area. But I don't see it fitting in here at all, quite frankly. For me, it has many, many hurdles, and I might be able to approve housing, but not visitor-serving commercial, not a huge restaurant, meeting rooms. I just really wonder who might even go to that. You know, there are fancy restaurants up in the San Inés area, and I do go to those occasionally, but I doubt that I would come over this far. I just simply can't see it. And we're doing, the Bakar in my area is wanting to do some of this type of development, and there's great concern in the community about... great concern in the community about, you know, the little guy. The little guy is being left out of this. Just, I got real problems. So for me, there are a lot of hurdles that the applicant would have to jump through.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Blau?
Yes, thank you. I think this is a terrific project, and I think it's one that needs to go forward. I don't have any concerns that the applicant and the county staff will be able to work out all the issues, as water and sewage and those sorts of things. I do have a couple of comments maybe for staff. As we go forward and prepare this EIR, for example, on the traffic, you know, I wasn't happy with the way we did the traffic study when it came to the Diamond Rock mine, because they sit there and they were talking about a trip generation and NOx fumes and so forth, when in actuality, by doing the mining, there was actually less NOx emissions that were pointed out. On the golf course, for example, where the hotel room is, most of the people that are gonna be using that hotel room are playing golf. Well, if I go play golf there, I drive there and I drive home. If I'm a guest of the hotel, I drive there, play golf, and stay there. Drive home the next day, or when I get in and play golf. So I'd like to make sure that we don't have that same mistake in the traffic. When we do the traffic counts, we double and triple count the traffic, because we do one for golf, we do one for the restaurants, and we do one for the hotel, and we do one for the casitas. I'd just like to make sure that we don't have that. There's been a lot of mention about this being precedent-setting and having some problem with, you know, having similar projects in the county that maybe aren't appropriate. I don't have that concern. I would hope that however we amend the zoning, however we do the general plan, we do so that it's very specific to this project. This project, we need to point out what's very unique about it, so that we don't have someone coming in and say, "Look, you did it in Parisma, and we want to do it again because we're a golf course." No. Parisma has a specific set of circumstances that are very unique to it. Let's make sure we identify those, so that we don't have the concern that this is precedent-setting. Unlike my fellow commissioners, I'm not crazy about big community plans. I guess my concern is, is that, okay, we spend a year or two years in a community plan, and we look at, you know, hundreds and hundreds of parcels. In this particular case, we're going to spend probably 30, 40 hours looking at one parcel. I have every confidence that the staff is going to look at the cumulative effects of any of the project that's been approved, or ones that are being proposed, when we view this project. I don't have the concern that this, that we're somehow creating some adverse impact that we're unaware of as a result of looking at projects one at a time. I especially feel that way when there's a project of this size. And we were talking about, you know, a couple one-acre parcels and five-acre parcels, and there's a bunch of them all over the map. That might lead me to want to do a community plan. And when we're taking a look at 100 acres and 160 units, for me, I don't need to have a community plan to see if that fits or not. That's a big enough project, it's gonna take enough review. But I'm confident we will come up with an appropriate project if we so approve the project. I wouldn't mind seeing some housing for the workforce, some for the project, if the developer or the applicant thinks that's appropriate. Having said that, however, I hope that before this project, before final approval, that we will have looked at and reviewed our affordable housing element, and come up with some changes, such that this project, whether they build them on-site or not, will participate in the new rules for affordable housing. Probably why it's so important that we see that project sooner than later. So all that being said, I actually am quite looking forward to see the project go forward, be successful. And I hope that the applicant will work with the staff appropriately and get it to us in a timely fashion. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Blau. I guess that means it's my turn. Got to fight with this thing. There are a lot of the comments that have been made thus far that are concerns that I feel I will look to staff to drill down on. I am really moved by the applicant's desire to seek out the input from the community. I think he means it. I was deeply impressed with the tribe's interest in offering. And I thought that the rapport expressed there is the way it ought to be presented. So I do believe that I am seeing a great deal of interest from the Lompoc community drilling down on this specific project. And I'm a little concerned, when my colleague says that this might fit in Montecito, or this might fit in Galita, but it might not fit here, there's an equity issue that, and maybe that's not where you were going, but it goes to my, to a question that if there is a efficacy to a community of a project, then its efficacy to the community it's in ought to be examined and given weight. I am not unsympathetic to the fact that we, either by being backed into it, or thrust into it, or tossed into the pool, will be dealing with projects in this area. And I am not confident that there is going to be assistance in the form of long-range plans on the docket to essentially offload this responsibility. So I think that this is going to be in our hands. As a result, I'm significantly chastened to be concerned about the environmental impacts, to be concerned about the impacts on the immediate neighborhoods. And I'll expect the package to be thorough and as well researched as in my limited experience on this committee that I've seen. So I am not moved to not feel positive at this point. It needs the normal thorough due diligence that we do. And specifically to its impacts on its neighbors, gonna want to look at that, to its circulation component, definitely gonna want to look at that, gonna want to understand its utility. As Commissioner Blau brought up, when you look at circulation, how is it planned to be used? A casita is a little bit of a new concept for me, so I'm gonna kind of drill down on that myself. But I am not, at this point, negative on the project. I think the normal course of homework will be there to move me in one direction or the other. But I am particularly moved by the expressions of the local community, the type of support they are getting. That does not mean I'm insensitive to those who have grave concerns. I count on staff to try and reconcile those concerns for me. So if that's a long-winded way of giving feedback, that's where I am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was very good. And I appreciate all the comments from my fellow commissioners. I'm sorry, did you have?
I just wanted to respond to what Commissioner Jackson said about my comment. My comment concerning that I thought it would be more appropriate in the Galita, the boundary, or Galita or Montecito, is that this is, for me, an urban project. It's not, doesn't belong in a rural area. And that, just like Bacara, it's sort of a Bacara-like project, which I would think would draw, would be able to draw more visitors in that type of an area than here. I think there's greater challenges here in terms of getting people here, and they may be golfers. But I'm sure that staff will look at it, and the applicant will look at it. But that's the reason I said that.
And I appreciate it. I think I was more drilling down on my own thoughts, but I took a lead from your comment. I apologize. That being the case, Commissioner Valencia, any other further comments?
Well, further comments. There was a concern concerning the water situation. It's, I think, the call is for about 32 acre feet in the normal threshold, and it exceeds the threshold. But they're working on a process of trying to come up with how to alleviate or mitigate that. Secondly, the concern was about traffic on 246. 246 was made for about 29,000 cars, and they have about 11,000 cars passing there at whatever time increment it is at the measurement. So it's still at a level LOSA, which there isn't a problem. In terms of a community plan, which many of us have been asking for, for 27 years, it's not gonna happen. Community plan is gonna cost in excess of $1 million. The county is involved in trying to get this North County jail, they're trying to fund funds for that. Have you heard the governor yesterday, he said there's gonna be a reduction in money. So it's the same old picture, you know, there isn't any money to do this. Is this project gonna have a major impact on us? I don't think so. I think it's gonna provide something positive. Would people be going to that restaurant? I think so, because many of the people now go to, as Commissioner Brown said, they go to San Inez, they go to Santa Barbara, and they go to Santa Maria for these big fancy restaurants. What's wrong with having one there in our community, you know? But there are things to look at on the other side, too. The Village Country Club is having difficulty sustaining itself. And there's a restaurant there, and it's having difficulty. So Mr. Hunter's gonna have to look at this, is how do you keep a restaurant that large operating, you know? So it isn't all, while I think that the project should go forward, it isn't gonna be all just one way. There are many obstacles that have to be looked at. And while he may try to mitigate some of them, some of them may be very difficult. But I look forward to him working on these projects, looking at, probably one of the most important things that came up, is the housing situation for workers, you know? And I appreciate that comment very much. And I think that it's something that he's going to look at. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I look forward to, hope this program goes forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm sensitized to drilling down on efficient meeting management, and I'm running long. So I would like to ask of my colleagues that we leap into the next one. And if that be the case...
Mr. Chair, if I can just make a concluding comment, so that we don't leave the room with a different understanding of what the next steps are, everybody in the room. This is a conceptual review item on a pre-application. So an application for this particular proposal has not yet been submitted, just a pre-application. If the applicant chooses to move forward, and one of the purposes of conceptual review is to give them an indication of where the individual commissioners are in their initial review of the project, if they choose to submit an application, this would be an application that involves a comprehensive plan amendment, in fact, several comprehensive plan amendments. We would bring the details of that back to your commission for formal initiation. So this does not supplant an initiation hearing. I just wanted to make that clear.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I ask how many speakers we have, item one?
Yes, speakers for item one. One, two, three, and four speakers that I have at this juncture for item one. Pardon me. All right, we're gonna take just a three-minute break to get set up for the next item.
Mr. Chair, before we move on and have David read item number one into the record, I am, at the suggestion of Commissioner Cooney, asking that lunch be brought in for the commission, so you can take a shorter break, if that's the pleasure of the commission, because we do have quite a bit of agenda material to get through still. So is that okay?
Yes.
And I expect it to arrive about 12:15. We'll let you know.
Okay. That being the case, David, would you like to read the next item into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of John Stahl, agent for John Higgins and Kathleen Martino, owners to consider case number 06 TPM 28, application filed on November 17, 2006, and to approve the negative declaration 07 NGD 35 pursuant to the state guidelines for the implementation of SEQA.
Thank you. I'll go to my colleagues and ask, with regard to this item, if we have any expertise and site visits to disclose. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yesterday, I visited the site, what I could see from the road.
Okay. Commissioner Brown?
No expertise. I drove by the area this morning, but I just couldn't find 1683 Alamo Pintado Road. I'm sure I passed it, but I couldn't find a mailbox with that. And so I was in the area, but that's probably not good enough.
About seven trips.
Yeah.
After seven trips, I found it.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it wasn't very clear. Sorry.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
I had the same difficulty finding the site, but I did, and was able to review the, at least the external layout.
And it is in my backyard, so I was able to find it, to see it. So that being the case, we'll now move on to the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Dana Carmichael, and I will be giving a brief presentation of the project. And then I will be available to answer any questions that you have. The case before you is the request for the approval of a tentative parcel map. The project site is located in the Ballard area, approximately two miles north of Highway 246, two and a half miles west of Highway 154, at 1683 Alamo Pintado Road. The property owner, direct to the north, has submitted a letter with comments received relative to visual resource and neighborhood compatibility concerns. And his parcel is located right here, where the pointer is. The project parcel is currently 10.02 acres in size, and is zoned ag 1.5 with a five-acre minimum parcel size. The land use and zone designations for the parcel are not proposed to change under the current draft San Inez Valley Community Plan. The parcel is currently developed with a single-family dwelling, barn, and three sheds. This aerial photo of the parcel depicts the existing 1,500-square-foot single-family dwelling, the 1,612-square-foot barn, and sheds. The area contains slopes ranging from 0% to 19%, comprising approximately 60% of the parcel, and steeper slopes ranging from 20% to 45%, covering the remaining 40% of the parcel. Vegetative communities consist mainly of annual grasses, coastal sage scrub vegetation, and trees, including some oak Parcels located to the immediate north, east, and south of the project site are zoned ag 1.5, and to the east, ag 1.20. The project parcel is located in an interrural area, which is characterized by low-intensity agricultural uses and ranchet development. This slide is an excerpt from the draft San Inez Valley Community Plan depicting the proposed zoning for the interrural area and vicinity. The project parcel is outlined in red, and would retain the current ag 1.5 zoning. The applicants are requesting to subdivide the existing 10.02-acre parcel into two parcels. Parcel A would be 5.01 acres in size, and would retain the existing 1,620-square-foot barn. Parcel B would be five acres in size, and would contain the existing single-family dwelling and three sheds. Parcel A would be accessed via an existing 12-foot-wide driveway of approximately 640 feet in length, and parcel B would be accessed by a proposed 30-foot-wide easement on the northwestern boundary of proposed parcel A in favor of parcel B. Sanitary services for both parcels would be provided by private septic systems, and water would be provided by private water wells. The proposed subdivision would result in the creation of one additional parcel, which a build-out would result in an additional single-family dwelling with accessory structures located on proposed parcel A. As a result, neighboring parcels could experience changes in their private view shed. Therefore, conditions of approval were added to the project to require the preservation of an existing row of mature olive trees, which would serve to aesthetically soften and screen any future development from the neighboring parcel to the west. Additional landscaping along the driveway to shield neighboring residences from lights resulting from vehicle ingress and egress, and the requirement that all outdoor lighting be hooded and directed downward to prevent light from spilling onto adjacent properties would also help to protect surrounding properties from the potential impacts of the additional development on parcel A. And this photo shows the driveway located along the northwest property line of parcel A. And just note the existing row of mature olive trees that are proposed for preservation. And this photo is taken from the north property line of parcel B, looking east towards parcel A. And it shows the driveway, as well as the existing row of olive trees that are proposed for preservation. And project build-out could result in development of a single-family dwelling that would be located on the other side of the olive trees, adjacent to the barn on parcel A. And you can also see the white roof of the barn, which is approximately 18 feet high, located... located to the left of the photo. A mitigated negative declaration was circulated for public review from October 17, 2007, to November 7, 2007. Potentially significant but mitigable impacts were identified in the six categories listed in the slide. The six mitigation measures required to reduce impacts to less than significant levels are included in the staff report under Attachment C, conditions of approval. The project would be consistent with the comprehensive plan with the inclusion of two project-specific conditions and the standard conditions of approval included in Attachment In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the required findings specified in Attachment A, including SEQA findings, approve the negative declaration, and adopt the mitigation monitoring program included in the conditions of approval, and approve 06 TPM 28, subject to the conditions included in Attachment C. And I would also like to mention that an updated fire department condition letter dated January 7, 2008, should also be included in the conditions of approval, and that letter supersedes the December 15, 2006 letter. So that concludes my presentation, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have planning commission questions. I see Commissioner Brown was first.
Ms. Carmichael, would you put up on the screen the map of the adjacent neighbor's house and the proposed two parcels?
Is it the one that showed Parcel A?
Right, and I think you had one that showed the neighbor's house, too. And you, can you point out where the entry is? Because I...
Okay, so...
From Alamo Pintado Road, where's the entry from? It's right there.
Alamo Pintado Road goes along here, and then they would come in the driveway here.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. So the neighbor who wrote the letter is located where?
Okay, the neighbor who wrote the letter is actually here.
Okay. And the mature olive trees are located where? Or is this...
Chairman Jackson and Commissioner Brown, the line of olive trees is along here.
Okay. Okay.
Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, I just had a question. Is this, is this subject to BAR review if they were to proceed with an actual building?
Chairman Jackson and Commissioner Blau, at this time, it is not subject to Board of Architectural Review, because it doesn't fall under the requirements.
Okay, so then my next question to follow up on that would be if, this is a big D, little d maybe for our attorney, but is that a condition that we could impose upon the subdivision by making the secondary parcel subject to BAR review?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, members of the commission, if your commission in reviewing the project found that there was some policy that might be implicated or affected, or, you know, environmental issue, which I might add would not be a private view effect, that could be mitigated or addressed by BAR review, then you might require that as a condition.
I'm sorry, that was a typical lawyer answer. Was that yes or no?
That's, that's a yes, but you'd have to analyze the circumstances, see whether, to see whether the requiring BAR review would be appropriate in light of either a county policy or an environmental...
Okay, so if the only, so if the only issue was the private view, that would not be, we could not make a condition for the BAR?
Okay, that's... That is correct.
Okay. Why?
Commissioner Brown.
Another question, I'm sorry. And this is why it's important to do a site visit, so I'm really sorry I couldn't find this place. Is there a topographic change between the neighbor's house and the proposed parcel split? And if so, what is it?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Brown, the... Well, I actually may have a better picture that could show that.
Okay.
If you'd like.
Yep.
Let me see here. Well, I don't know if this one...
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so what am I looking at?
Let me go to the bigger...
That's 23. Okay, good.
So this one does show, this is the neighbor's home
Right.
Here. So it does sort of
Okay.
I guess go down, and then it comes back up
Okay.
as you approach the line of trees.
So if there's any additional dwellings on this property, where? It could be located anywhere on the...
Um...
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, in this slide, the applicants have indicated that they would like to build their house here, and this is the neighbor's home here. So it would come down, and then it does sort of appear.
Right, and so what is the difference, the gray difference between the one on the top and where they want to build their house? Any idea?
The applicant's here.
Yeah, is the, if the applicant's here, perhaps?
The applicants are here, they may...
Okay, maybe when they have a chance to come up, they can explain all that. Thank you.
Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I, I think we're zeroing in on the crucial issues here, and it's interesting, if this project was situated in many areas of the county, we would have not only BAR review, but we'd also have a specific building envelope, which would give us much more guidance, as well as neighbors more informed prediction as to what might be built where. I didn't see any restrictions in the project at all with regard to where the house could be built. I assume it could be built on the highest point of Parcel A, which is significant. We saw the roof in one photo of the barn, which is up on a rise, and that's 18 feet high, Ms. Carmichael says. So my concern is if we only have the limitation of the county ordinances, and this could go up to 32, it would have a very significant impact. Now, it would, it would directly impact the neighbor's viewpoint, but what I'm concerned about is whether a building of, built to the height limits that the county has currently in effect would be visible from public roads. And it's, it was difficult for me to determine that. One, I think misleading statement that was made, the driveway that shows on this photo is not Alamo Pintado Road, I don't believe. I think Alamo Pintado Road is off the screen to the right. That driveway goes quite a distance off the road, and there are numerous homes that are served before you get back to where you turn off for 1683. The applicant should be prepared to clarify that. But the question for me is whether any height or location conditions can be attached due to the perception from public viewing places, particularly Alamo Pintado.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Do you want to try and, to answer that one? Or should we wait on that question?
Mr. Chair, I think we should have the applicant walk through the
Okay.
slope issues and visibility issues, and then we can confirm.
Mm-hmm. One question I did have in your presentation. Do you have a vicinity, a vicinity slide that places Alamo Pintado and kind of looks at the properties along that shelf area there? Okay. And so the driveway that you're talking about, if you, I think our pointer disappeared, so if you can bring us into the site, okay? Okay. All right, so the driveway that is in question that comes into this site, as I understand it, is, is in this vicinity, or no? It's, well, then I need, I need to, need to hear from the applicant where exactly that is for access, because one of the, one of the aspects of seeing the general vicinity area is, is to notice the types of development along here and along here, and that it is a, I think a substantive rise there. So I would be ready to hear from the applicant at this point, unless there are any other questions from, okay.
Morning, Chair Jackson, members of the commission. My name is John Stahl, I'm representing the applicant in this case. You're correct, the site is about a half a mile from Alamo Pintado, and you cannot see the site from Alamo Pintado. And I only believe you can see the neighbor's house, which is higher up, about 30 feet higher than this parcel is from Alamo Pintado either. So there really is no visual impact from Alamo Pintado, from the project itself. Alamo Pintado, right where the words Alamo Pintado are? Oh, great, great. Let's see, other way? My glasses, oh, okay, comes out the small man. This Alamo Pintado right here, and this is also called Alamo Pintado because it's addressed off of Alamo Pintado, although the fire department would like that it wasn't. But the access is right here, runs across here, up a hill right here, comes right around here and then down this direction here to the parcel. This is the neighbor's parcel, this is the applicant's house now, and then they propose to build a home right in this area here, which is screened by the olive trees here. The applicant sits up on a hill, so it's, he's really looking, I mean, the neighbor sits up on this hill, so he's really looking at all the houses in there, and there's like a 35-foot difference between this level and where his house is. So no matter what you build in there, the neighbor's gonna be able to see into this entire parcel, in fact, all the neighboring parcels right here. We think Dana did an excellent staff report. We do think it's fairly straightforward proposal, and it's zoned and general planned for five acres, we're proposing five acres. We have worked with the staff on the conditions to date to make sure that the olive trees remain, and the house, like I said, the house is proposed to be located in the area behind the olive trees, which will certainly help with screening. In fact, the applicant is a designer himself, and he's gonna talk to you in a minute about what he, the plans he has for his house, and answer any of your questions on that regard. The neighbor will benefit, we're gonna have to bring in a, the fire department wants us to bring in a fire from this area right in here, wants us to bring a, I'm sorry, right up in here, wants us to bring a new water main in from there, all the way up and down the driveway, and put a fire hydrant in here, which will certainly benefit the neighbor's home. We understand that the, we've been talking to the CHMASH, and that they would like to add a condition regarding doing a phase-one survey before the house is built in the area where the structure's supposed to be, and we're in agreement with that. So we're available for any questions, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Higgins.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl. I have a question on one of the conditions, and this perhaps should be also directed to the applicant, but I just want to get a feel for this. It's about these row of olive trees, the condition is to, shall be preserved and protected for the life of the project. That's not really specific, because he could, you know, top the trees, he could trim the trees, it just says, doesn't say what kind of condition they have to be maintained in. And I'm wondering, do we need, is it, it seems to me that in order to fulfill this condition, there needs to be greater specificity about the condition, that it should be maintained that they're mature, growth, or something like that, because this could be...
Yeah, I don't think we have a problem with that, because he wants the olive trees, because they screen
Right.
his house from the neighbor's house.
Right, from his, right, okay, all right.
So it's to both of their benefits.
All right, fine, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Higgins, could you show us where the mailboxes are, so we know what we were, where we were looking for?
The mailboxes are all down here on Alamo Pintado Road.
So, oh, so we were looking...
Everybody has to drive down and get their mail down in here.
That's where those are, right.
And there's, that's also the interest, too, there's a winery right in here, so...
Yeah.
Okay, what's the name of the winery?
Oh, it's Lynn Court.
Lynn Court, yeah, that's right, that's the main, the main entrance to Lynn Court is also the main entrance for all of these homes up in this area.
All right. We need better maps, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Shall we bring the applicant up? I'm trying also to move things along.
You did a good job there.
Somebody's hungry.
Afternoon. I'm John Higgins, Greg Higgins, I go by. And I don't have a lot to add, I, I do want to, though, ease my neighbor's mind a little bit as much as I can, because we haven't really had a chance to talk about what plans are. I mean, everything's in the beginning stages, I don't have any concrete plans at this point, they're all very preliminary. But my intent is to face the house to the south, most of the, almost all the rooms of this home would be facing the south in order to gain the solar, the passive solar benefit. South, of course, is straight down to the bottom of the map here. My neighbor's view would be toward the end of the house, so the width of the house would be facing to the south, and not a side of the house or an elevation that my neighbor would be able to see. I, as, as Mr. Stahl said, I want as much privacy as my neighbor does, and I want the house to fit in with the contours of the topography, not just in form, but in color and material. The trees I would certainly want to maintain, they're, now they're approximately 14 feet in height, I'd say I certainly want to maintain that, and whatever greater height I can get on that. There will also be garden walls that would be incorporated into this building, so that any lighting from cars coming in and out would be completely blinded from my neighbor's point of view. If there are any questions, I don't know where to proceed from here, are there any questions, though?
Commissioner Cooney.
Mr. Higgins, thank you. If, if you've said this already, please excuse me, but I didn't understand how the driveway approach would be and where, where your garage would be on the parcel. Could you show us with the pointer?
Yeah, let's see. Turn this, there we go.
Don't look at it.
Yeah, we're coming in this way, there's an easement row that runs right along here, that goes to my neighbor's house to the east. I'd be coming in around my barn and driving that way, so it'd be a loop right here.
Okay. And the, the plan for the house, have you moved along enough in your design to determine whether it's one or two stories?
Well, it's going to be primarily a one-story home. I haven't moved far enough along to know if there would be any second story to it. If there would be, I don't, I want to keep it to an absolute minimum, I don't want to have much of a second-story space, but I don't know yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, no lights lit at this point. Any other questions from commissioners? All right, at this point would be the time for public comment. I do have some speaker slips, let me make sure I've got these correct. Well, we've had Mr. Higgins...
Thanks, Mr. Higgins. You're...
Okay, I have Mr. Hawkins, followed by Mr., I don't think Mr. Stahl would be, I don't think you meant this one, did you? Followed by Mr. Cohen. And that's all I have at this point.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name is Charles Hawkins, and I own 1681 Alamo Pintado Road, which is contiguous to the applicant's parcel on the north side. I am speaking in opposition to the subdivision proposal. I have formally directed my concerns to the planning department, and understand my letters to the planning department and to you have been included in the file for this project. I am coming before you today to personally appeal to you to protect me from the adverse consequences presented by this application. Some of my concerns have already been addressed, and I'm up before you today to discuss those items. items. One of my concerns has been partially addressed, related to the condition that the existing row of trees located on the northwestern property line be preserved and protected for the life of the project. I respectfully request that you consider modifying that requirement so that should a tree need to be replaced, that the replacement be a mature tree rather than a sapling. My concern is that over time, trees may die, and if this condition is not made, the effectiveness of the screening could be compromised if the property owner chooses to use immature replacement trees. My main concern related to this application has not been addressed at all. This relates to the impact this application might have on the aesthetic value of my property. As I look out for my property today, I enjoy pastoral views of surrounding mountains dotted in front by fields, sheds, and barns. My property, as well as my neighbor's, exists in a rural setting. Each of the homes has been situated so that no other homes are situated in front of them. This preserves for all of us the beauty which, in a way, defines the San Ynez rural life of San Ynez Valley. I provided the planning department with a picture taken from my home of the lovely landscape, which is so integral to our home. When he informed me of his plans to subdivide the property and build another house, the applicant informed me he planned to build this house directly in front of my home rather than in front of his home. Presumably, this is so he can continue to enjoy the rural setting we all enjoy today, even at the expense of ruining that setting from my property by altering my situation from a rural setting to a suburban setting. I am not fundamentally opposed to the subdivision and development of this parcel. I am fundamentally opposed to the idea that it would so drastically change the nature of the neighborhood, or at least my property, and ruin the aesthetic quality of my home. For this reason, I am seeking that conditions be placed on the project to address the sighting and size of the buildings that might be permitted to be built. I think that a solution can be found that will enable the applicant to subdivide and develop the parcel without harming me. That solution has not yet been identified or adopted. Unless and until it is, I strongly urge you to deny this application, and in so doing, protect my home from being so adversely impacted. I have a copy of my testimony for the record, if that's appropriate.
Provided to Mr.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for him at this point? No? Okay, Mr. Cohen, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be before your board in this new year. Congratulations, Mr. Jackson, for being appointed chairman of this fine committee. I am pleased to be here in support of this application. We've talked with the planner, well, the private planner, and with the applicant, and we've reached an agreement to add a condition, an agreed-upon condition, which I'd like to read into the record. The prior to map recordation, the applicant shall conduct an extended Phase One cultural resource survey with a limited number of shovel test pits for areas of ground disturbance for any structures. The applicant has agreed to this condition, and based on this additional condition, the tribe is in support of this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Any questions for Mr. Cohen? Commissioner Blau.
I have a little concern with that condition if we're going to talk about precedent-setting. I'm not sure I agree that it should be prior to map recordation, but prior to issuance of a building permit. I don't want to have that condition occur, because I can see cases where we would do a lot split and not ever build anything, and then there would be no reason to have the cultural Phase One. I don't want it disturbed, I understand that, but I'm just concerned about being prior to map recordation as opposed to prior to issuance of a building permit.
Mr. Cohen.
That's actually a question for Mr. Cohen. If he would agree that it could be issued, that that would be done prior to the issuance of a building permit, I'd be a lot happier about that condition being included.
Mr. Cohen, would you care to respond to that?
Maybe I could respond first before Mr. Cohen.
Okay, Commissioner Cooney.
I think, Commissioner Blau, that's a question that we need to take up at the time we deliberate the condition, but certainly with regard to precedent, if the applicant and the tribe have agreed on a condition taking place at a certain time, I don't think there's any precedential value at all. That's something that they've agreed to, and we don't have to interfere with their agreement. Now, if the applicant would rather do it later and ask us to decide when we want to do it, then the question's before us. But I have a concern when the commission gets into revising conditions unless we have some particular need besides precedent. It's their case, it's their condition. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, I'll respond by saying I understand that, but you know, these conditions and this approval runs with the land, not just with the applicant. So I'm more comfortable having the commission set the condition as I stated it, not as they maybe have agreed to. But I'm interested to hear from Mr. Cohen if that would be a problem for him.
Well, this is a strange day for me, in that we have so many items on this agenda. The Eberher, if I can, I may be mispronouncing the name. In Eberher, that's, we actually reached an agreement with the applicant to do the extended Phase Ones. And if you'll look on page nine of the mitigated negative declaration, that's exactly what occurred in that particular case. And we're merely taking Higgins and making it like Eberher. Now, you know, item number four, on the other hand, we have a significant dispute with the landowner. So I'm sort of asking you to be more Eberherish and less Hertelish. I don't know if that answers your question. So we have reached an agreement with the landowner. He has a site for the structure, and he's okay with it.
Do you want to?
We can live with it either way. So, I mean, we're planning on doing it right away anyway, so. Have a survey. I know the archaeologist, he's working on one of my other projects, and he's in and out of the area, so timing's not a big issue with us, I don't believe. I would like to add one other point on one other issue. In order to hopefully alleviate some of our neighbor's concerns, Mr. Higgins is willing to take his plans to the VAR for the house.
Okay.
Voluntarily, okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, that closing the public comment portion. We'll bring it back to the commission for questions of staff and/or deliberations. First, let's take a look at, do we have questions for staff or anything like that? Doesn't appear the case. Okay, because this is a third district issue, and I am at the chair, I'm going to ask that I hear from my colleagues in advance of my comments at this point. Who would like to take the lead? Commissioner Brown.
Okay. I support the project. I would like to see two conditions, well, I think we've got three conditions. Since the applicant has agreed to the Phase One, I think that should be added. Whenever, I think, as Commissioner Cooney indicated, the tribe and the applicants agreed, and they should proceed on that. I would like to add BAR review, the applicant has agreed to that. And in condition eight, I would like to add the language, "The existing row of mature-sized olive trees." So the addition of the words "mature-sized," and the applicant has indicated that that's what his preference is, and that's what he wants. So that would mean that should there be any changes that that, they would have to be a mature-sized tree. So that would be my only thoughts on the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Blau.
I'm going to support the project. I would hope that the maker of the motion would include a condition for the native assessment. However, I'm concerned, I want to see it prior to building permit issuance, not map recordation. And I think, Mr., you could talk about precedent settings, but as Mr. Cohen alluded to, you know, he wants it more like he's setting a precedent on other projects. I don't, I'm not going to fight the issue of the mature olive tree. However, I'd like to point out that there's practically no enforcement mechanism should that condition be violated three to five years from now if a tree dies and he doesn't replace it, I don't believe. So I'm not sure it's appropriate, but if they've agreed to it, and I guess it shows the intent, you can go forward. But I'd be concerned that it really doesn't have an effect. Now, what the adjacent parcel owner might want to do is to plant some trees on his side of the property line right now, and he can ensure he has his view blocked if the trees were for somehow not be there. The issue of the BAR, that was my initial thought, but if council's telling us that it's not a, even though the applicant may agree to it, I don't think it's appropriate. Again, it becomes a problem for other projects.
Commissioner Valencia.
I also, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I support the project also, and I also have a problem with it, life of the project. I mean, how do you protect the trees for the life of the project? I can understand wanting to protect the trees as long as the trees are alive, but something happened, they get a disease or something, the tree's gone, but the project is there. Well, he might want to put something else other than those type of trees. It should be his prerogative. But at any rate, I support the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also support the project, but I think these conditions are important, and I think we need to go site by site. Each site is a little bit unique. It does happen that we have a cluster of tentative parcel map and other lot divisions on our agenda today, so we have the opportunity to discuss some different settings, and maybe these conditions will come up for discussion in each of them. But I certainly think, in this case, in the interests of neighborhood compatibility, if nothing else, the concessions being made by the applicant are significant, and we should be respectful of those. I appreciate and have appreciated Mr. Stahl's appearance on behalf of others, that he's looking for ways to solve these disputes before they get out of hand. And the offer of going to the sea bar with the actual house drawings is, it's certainly an extra burden the applicant's taking on, but from my standpoint, it makes me much more comfortable in the approval, because that's going to address how it sits on the site, the bulk, the size, the colors, the impact on both private and public views. And if we're constrained to only consider public views, nonetheless, I'm sure I could find a place in the valley, up on Mount Figaro if necessary, where I could see this house if it were too big. So I really appreciate the concessions being made, and I'd like to have those all in the conditions that we approved today, including the maintenance of the olive grove as mature. I realize that this, we may be light on enforcement, but that's not our concern here. Our job stops when we approve the project. So if the conditions suggested by Commissioner Brown are in the project, I'm certainly willing to vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. From my standpoint, I'm grateful when anybody tries to work things out in advance before they come here, and can only encourage further. And I think the structure that is in place with the conditions that Commissioner Cooney has articulated, I am one that is, that tends to be concerned about precedent, but I am confident that in this issue, I am not. I think that, again, parties working together to address this is a superior perspective, and I'm in favor of encouraging that. Commissioner Cooney, if you wouldn't mind, could you help me or perhaps frame this motion?
I'd be glad to, Mr. Chair. I would propose that we adopt staff's recommendations for this project set forth on page two of our staff report with the addition of three conditions. One, that an extended Phase One exploration study be performed prior to map recordation. Number two, that any residential structures on the property be submitted to the central bar for review and approval. And third, that the condition, we do have in the existing recommendations for maintenance of the olive trees be enhanced to make it clear that the olive trees will be maintained with mature trees. I'm not setting any height limitations, I might note. That's the motion.
Second.
Okay, there being a second, any further discussion from commissioners? Seeing not, whoops, no, wait, do I have somebody? Oh, Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, I'm going to support the project and vote yes, but I'm objecting to the language for all three conditions, just for the record.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion at this point? Doesn't appear that way. Why don't we call a roll?
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Blau.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia.
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thanks again, Mr. Stahl. And Mr. Higgins.
I think now would be good for us to adjourn for lunch, but it won't be here for 15 minutes.
Mr. Chair, the planner is here for, oh, item five. Oh, that's a novel concept.
The workshop on?
Sure, I'm happy to go through the presentation, assuming I can find it. I was going to do that at lunch. So if you can give me just a couple minutes, I'll find it, and we'll go through item number five, at least start it.
All right.
Okay. Sorry about a few-minute delay.
Okay, do we need...
Mr. Villalobos needs to read this into the record.
Read this into the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of county staff that the County Planning Commission review and give direction on proposed revisions to Chapter 35.76, road naming and address numbering, Chapter 35.84, post-approval procedures, Article 35.2, zones and allowable uses of Section 35-1, the Santa Barbara County Land Use and Development Code, and Article 5 of Chapter 2 of the County Code relating to shifting permit reviews for certain applications.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, before I go into the particular items that we want to present today, I have a couple of disclaimers. Number one, Pat Salee was going to be here with me, and actually was going to be in the hearing room in the South County. I don't think she is. So, if there are some, some questions about the data, I may or may not be able to answer. That's my disclaimer. Secondly, just to provide a little bit of context for the commission, we, I did come to your commission a month or two ago, presented sort of where we've been and where we're going on process improvement. We did hear the commission. We are working on some items, including public, two public workshops in the county. We're working on developing a work plan with the Oversight Committee. We're actually meeting with them this month, and we will be doing some evaluation of measures that have put into place. So, I didn't want you to feel like we, we didn't hear you. We did. We just haven't had the opportunity, given the holidays, to work with the Oversight Committee. So, we're jumping into the next small set of improvements that we wanted to discuss with the commission. We're bringing this forward to you as concepts today to get your input, and then if the commission gives us direction that you want us to move forward with these items, we'll come back at a hearing, I think we have it scheduled on your projection report, with ordinance amendments that would accomplish these items. So, what we're here to talk about today are, have to remember, I'm actually running this PowerPoint, four, what I would characterize as relatively simple issues to at least understand. We want to talk about road naming and renaming applications, and who should be hearing those and when. We want to talk about time extensions on various discretionary applications. We'll talk about the requirement for CUPs on septic systems in special problems areas, and whether or not that makes sense. And finally, we want to revisit for a moment the recommendations that we made regarding government code Section 65402 conformity determinations that we brought to the commission, I would guess, about a year and a half, maybe two years ago. The first issue, road namings, what I'm going to try and do is describe the current process, and then what, what our proposal is. So, on road namings, currently, roads can be named in two ways, and it's optional to an applicant. This is a brand-new road. They can either process the road naming application with the tentative map. All they have to do is put a name of the road on the map, very simple, and it's processed as part of the map. Or, they can process it after the map is approved separately, and that requires a zoning administrator The application following a tentative map, now I'm lost, sorry. See, this is the disadvantage of the lunch hour being missing. Let me go to the next one. Oh, Pat is here. Okay.
Just saying that you just, it's, just saying what you just said.
Right, right, right. Okay.
You can go to the next, you can go to the next slide.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Proposed process. What we're proposing is that we require, and Ms. Salee is now in Santa Barbara, so if we have questions now, we're fully covered, and that's a good thing. What we're proposing is that naming a road as a part of a subdivision be required. In other words, it's not an option anymore. If you, if you have a new road, you name it in, on the map, so that there isn't a separate, separate application. Where there's a need for a, a naming or renaming absent a map, because occasionally roads are renamed or a new road is added to the system, and it's not in the context of a map, we're suggesting that we use the waived public hearing approach that we discussed in the context of coastal development permits with a hearing, where a notice is given to the neighbors, and the zoning administrator would only hear it if someone requested a hearing. Most of these are very non-complex in nature, but occasionally you get particularly a road renaming that people are interested in. And then typical appeal path would be available if...
I have a question.
...oriented.
Commissioner Blau has a question.
Yeah, and are these names run by the fire department for their review?
Yes. So, our fire department and surveyor looks at the names, and has to approve them.
It approves them. Great.
Would there be, just as a follow-up question, would there be a cost associated with appealing?
Yes. The standard appeal fee would be required.
The standard appeal fee for...
We only have one appeal fee, and it's, I think, $443.
So, to, just so...
Currently.
To, to appeal a name change on a road, it's going to cost me 400 bucks if I...
That's true.
Okay.
But, Mr. Chair, just to, to take that one step further, you have the opportunity to request a hearing. That's not an appeal. So, you can request a hearing before the zoning administrator, make your case, and then if you weren't satisfied with the results of that hearing, you could appeal. If you don't ask for a, a hearing, there's no appeal available.
No, that works. Commissioner Cooney, followed by Commissioner Valencia.
Okay.
Excuse me, Commissioner. I'm sorry.
What is the noticing for this?
The noticing for a subdivision is obviously at least 300 feet. For a road naming, it would be the same. Be 300 feet within, within 300 feet of the road.
Okay. Has there ever been so much controversy that it's brought in people outside of that area that you ever recall?
Yes.
Oh.
One, one area.
And...
That I remember. Santa Claus Lane.
Oh, okay. So, there's some sort of community noticing?
We would still notice, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, we would still put notices in the paper and do, do all of the noticing. We would typically re...
That was probably unusual because of that community. Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Ms. Black, you are familiar with the Coastal Commission changes to the county's proposed ordinances in, on other issues, and I noticed that noticing, they added notice to owners in addition to neighbors, and I just want to be sure that when you're referring to notice, that, that that means someone who owns the property's getting notice of the road name change, as well as his tenant, if it's not occupied.
Mr. Chair, the, well, the owner has to agree to process an application, but yes, it would be to the owners as well as tenants in the coastal zone.
Well, I'm just talking about, my neighbor and the fire department have talked about changing the name of my road. If I don't live on the property, and I didn't get notice of the name change, it could be already in effect. That's, that's the issue I'm talking about.
No. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Cooney, I, I understand your point. We notify property owners throughout the county when our noticing 300-foot requirement is, is required. We notice occupants within 100 feet of a project in the coastal zone. So, that's the difference. The owners, property owners will always be notified.
Okay. But not always the, the tenants, if they're additional people.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other question about, questions about the road naming? Okay. The next issue we wanted to discuss is time extensions, and on the slide, you can see some data about the number of time extensions over the last seven years. We've had 50. 30 have gone to the Planning Commission, this Planning Commission, three have gone to the Montecito Planning Commission, and 17 have gone to the zoning administrator. And these are time extensions for tentative maps, conditional use permits, and other types of applications that are on the screen. The ordinance requires the decision-maker who heard a project to also hear the time extension. Current process is that we conduct the same noticing as, as was, as was required for the original application. The same findings have to be made, and it's applicable to the same body. So, if the Planning Commission hears the time extension, it's appealable to the Board of Supervisors. I think we've had one appeal, and Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, one appeal in the past eight years, and it was a CUP last year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Our proposed process is very similar to the new road naming, or the road naming outside of the context of a map, where we would have the waived hearing approach, same notices was originally required, and if a hearing is requested, then we would have the hearing before the applicable hearing body. Otherwise, we wouldn't, and we would just move on. So, I think it's fairly simple. Questions?
Commissioner Blau.
Yes, Chairman. Who, you say hearing if requested, requested by who? Could a person from, that was noticed, require the hearing, or is it just the applicant or the...
Mr. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, it would be, obviously, the applicant would have requested us to waive the hearing, so it would be from an interested party. The, the whole idea behind this waived hearing request is having hearings when somebody is interested in the matter and, and wants to address an accountable hearing body, but not having them if, if that isn't the case. Okay. CUPs for septic systems. Currently, in designated special problems areas, a septic system has to be approved by CUP, and the zoning administrator typically hears those in Montecito. They go directly to the Montecito Planning Commission, because they act as the zoning administrator in the Montecito area. They are reviewed by the special problems area, which is a subdivision, or a smaller group of the subdivision development review committee. The data on this is that over the past seven years, we've had five coastal and 14 non-coastal CUPs for septic systems in special problems areas. What we're proposing here is different than the other two issues, and, and for a very different reason. We're suggesting that the review really be limited to the special problems area committee, and that a land use permit be issued if the, the septic system is proposed in the inland area of the county, and a coastal development permit if in the coastal zone. And the rationale behind this one is, the special problems area, area committee is really the committee that has the expertise to review this issue, and there doesn't seem to be value added in having the zoning administrator or another politically accountable body review the, the data on, on these. So, we're recommending that that actually be downshifted to either land use permit or coastal development permit. Obviously, those permits are appealable to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors, but we haven't seen many appeals in these over the years. In fact, I'm not sure we've seen any that have gone anywhere, because they are such a technical issue. Pat, did you have something you wanted to add?
No.
Okay.
Okay, I just have a question, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Brown.
Ms. Salee had indicated that a size or capacity limit may be appropriate to ensure that large-scale septic systems are viewed by the PC. And now we're, now that we're going into the septic, the package treatment plants, I'm wondering if there might be some merit to that. But the other piece to that is, are package septic systems ever put in place outside of, or in conjunction with a development proposal?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I can't really answer the second part of that question, because we haven't really seen many.
Okay.
I could see, I could certainly envision a situation where that might occur. I didn't forget about that sentence in the staff report, and it's something that we'll look at. I think most all of the systems that we're talking about in the context of that comment in the staff report are already covered by permits, but we'll make sure if the commission wants to go in this direction, that, that that's in fact the case.
It would be my preference that we look at any of those large-scale septic systems, or if they're package treatment plants, that are outside of a development proposal. I don't know how many we get, because these are all new, but it might be worthwhile just to take a look at the first few, to see whether or not this is something we want to look at. I mean, we don't have any experience with it, so rather than just say, no, we're not going to do it, might look at it, and then say, no, we're not going to do it.
Okay, Commissioner Cooney had a question.
It's along the same lines. In the staff report, it suggests that if the special, I presume it'd be the special problems committee would identify a large system as requiring a major conditional use permit, then it would come to a decision-maker, presumably the zoning administrator, or it could be the, the Planning Commission. But they're making the, the determination in the first place that a, a major or minor conditional use permit would apply to the project. Is that correct?
Currently, or in the proposal, Mr. Chair?
In the proposal. I'm trying to see how things would change.
I, I think as far as we've gotten in, in our thinking is, individual septic systems in special problems areas would be downshifted. Systems that serve multiple residences, I think we're still looking at. I think they're covered in the ordinance in a different way now, but we'll check on that and make sure they are. It's not my intent that systems that serve multiple units would be downshifted.
Okay, thank you. I, I just think we need to clarify that distinction here, because there, these problem areas were created for a very good reason, and, and they do need close scrutiny, and I, I think it wouldn't be bad to have a decision-maker involved if they're multi, multi-party systems.
I agree. Okay. Fourth issue that we wanted to revisit is consistent, government code consistency reviews, 65402 reviews. And government code consistencies are required when real property is acquired or disposed of, or a real building is proposed. So, your commission sees all types of these 65402 consistency reviews. In the last seven years, 89 projects have been reviewed. So, you can see, this is kind of a bigger volume issue for us, and they're, they operate on very short timelines. 89 projects have been reviewed. 35 were reviewed in a very full way by the Planning Commission, meaning they were on the regular agenda. 54 were on the consent calendar. And there's some examples of the types of projects that require reviews, including public works easements, acquisitions for parks, utility projects, and then we do a 65401 review for the capital improvement program. In April, so here's the answer to how long ago was this. It was almost two years ago. In April of 2006, we brought to the Planning Commission consideration of designating the Director of the Department as the planning agency for the purposes of 65402 projects, for simple, small projects. The peace, Planning Commission at that time decided that rather than designate the planning director as the planning agency for some of these projects, that you instead wanted to see those projects put on the consent agenda with a brief staff report. And that's what we've done, done since April of 2006. Current proposal is a little open. We're looking for some, some direction here on whether this is even anything you want to consider. There's no specific Oversight Committee recommendation. We spent about 15 minutes trying to explain what this was to the Oversight Committee, and I think they thought we were a little bit nuts, because it's just not an issue that concerns them at all. They don't really involve themselves in this arena. So, this is really a, a staff issue that we're bringing to the commission to see whether or not you want to reconsider this idea of establishing some parameters for the director reviewing these, rather than having them all on the Planning Commission consent agenda or standard agenda.
Ms. Black, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Brown.
How many of these have ever been really contro, I, I know the ones that the commission has, has looked at, and the ones we haven't approved, and so on and so forth. But how many of them have ever been controversial with anybody in the community, other than Subalfield Road, maybe?
Mr. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I would say a handful. In, in my time here, Subalfield Road certainly was one. There have been facilities on the, on and around the county transfer station that have been somewhat controversial.
Do we take a reservoir, maybe?
Yeah, some, some reservoir projects have been. And what we, what we're suggesting exploring is coming up with some... And what we, what we're suggesting exploring is coming up with some criteria that would clearly set aside those that really just never are controversial, and shift those to the director. And the reason is really a pretty practical reason. We have 40 days to review these, and this isn't a process that the other departments love. So we have 40 days, it takes us 21 days to get an item on your agenda, just given the noticing and staff report preparation. So we have a very, very short timeframe to get these things done. We can explain to a department, when a project is more complex, and they know there's public controversy involved, why they need to give us some advance notice before submitting those, but on these very small ones, that's a pretty difficult thing to expect them to do, and there are costs associated with the reviews to the county as a whole. So that's kind of the practical reason. We're not trying to cut out public comment, we're not trying to cut out the Planning Commission in an inappropriate way, we're just trying to use the Planning Commission where the review is really warranted and would have some public benefit. So that's our goal. I don't know if...
Could you come back, and perhaps if the commission would agree to come back with that list, your next, then maybe we can...
We'd be happy to. If that's something the commission as a whole would like us to continue to explore, we'd be happy to delve into this a bit more.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney had a question.
Yes, I just want to indicate, and Ms. Black was here for every one of these, but in my time on the commission, there have been at least a dozen projects that have had some public policy implications associated with them. I don't think that all departments of the county share the need for public exposure, but I want to emphasize, it's a state law. And the reason behind the state law is that the Public Works Department, or the water districts, have one idea of how to get a project done, but they don't always consider the broader implications of the project. The Montecito Ortega Reservoir was one. It was right, a major reservoir in the middle of a neighborhood with a very, originally proposed, it had a very reflective roof, and you would have seen it throughout the south coast, and that project was substantially modified as a result of what was basically a six-five-four-oh-two hearing. And another in my neighborhood, Public Works wanted to acquire an easement to store boulders from Toro Creek on a private property. Well, the property is very prominent on a corner, and a big boulder pile would not have been appropriate. Now, there is one there, I'm not sure if it's Public Works or not, but in any event, my point is, these sometimes don't appear, I think, even to staff of the Planning Development Department to be capable of the kind of controversy that they raise. So I, for one, am going to be reluctant to go very far beyond what we've decided in the past with regard to relying on staff to pull out some and give them to the director.
Commissioner Blau.
I'm going to agree with Chairman, with Commissioner Cooney. I don't understand why we can't have a list of anything the zoning administrator is going to be doing, or has done, that could not be on a consent calendar. I mean, list 25 items, we don't hear them, we don't, I mean, they, it's kind of like what the board does, they've got their Agenda A, and there could be 27 things on there, and they won't discuss one of them unless there's a concern by one of the supervisors. And I would want to do the same thing. Let's just put everything, and it's, it's consent, Agenda Two, which is all the minor things, we don't expect any discussion, we don't expect any controversy, and if one of us wants to pull an item off, for the reasons that Commissioner Cooney outlined, or the concerns that Commissioner Brown has, we pull it off, we hear it that day, or we set a hearing date to hear it, if there's not enough information in our packet to do it. Just want to have the opportunity to say, we want to see this one.
What does that, sorry, Mr. Chair, what does that do, though, in terms of staff reports for those items, and what that looks like, and then if we pull it off, you hear it, previous, because there are time constraints on these things, too, and that's my, I mean, I want to hear them, because I think there are public policy things, but I think there are ones that are so minor and inconsequential, it doesn't make any difference.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, we've essentially tried to establish that procedure, where we've put items that we believe are simple on the consent agenda, and if a commissioner wants to pull the item, they can pull it, and we'll discuss it. The difficulty is getting more information, because that requires the departments to essentially allow the commission more than usually the 40 days, because we usually get them to you pretty darn close to that 40-day limit provided by law. Now, it's not as much an issue with another county department, it can be with another county, with a non-county agency, because you do these six-by-four-oh-two reviews for water districts, sewer districts, school districts, other special districts that aren't necessarily dependent on the county.
Commissioner.
So those pose a bit of a more difficult issue in terms of managing the time.
Commissioner Valencia, then, Commissioner Blau.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sometime back, about three or four years ago, we had a major problem in the first district concerning flooding and that type of thing, and we were going to pile up material in certain areas, and there was an uproar, and we were going to pass a, one of these consistency things, and I think it got changed as a result of all the concerns of the people. We still have, will contain that review, or is this what you were talking about? Yes, I think it's important that we, I remember that was very controversial, stockpiling dirt or some road material.
So, Mr. Chair, what I'm hearing is, this isn't worth pursuing, and we should just continue on with our practice of putting items on the consent agenda that we don't believe are controversial, and that's fine.
Commissioner Blau has a question, and then so do I.
I'm saying that it doesn't necessarily have to be on the consent agenda, you could, you could notice us, that you're going, that the zoning administrator is going to hear this.
It's not the zoning administrator, Mr. Chair, sorry.
Whoever is...
It's you.
Okay. Well, but you're talking about having the directors or zoning...
Who's the director?
If I could just, if I could just have the list of projects that he is going to be approving, I could live with that, as opposed to actually having them all come up on the consent calendar. It's kind of like, you know, it's advising consent. In fact, I'm going to talk about that at our retreat, because I'm not always so sure that some of the things the zoning administrator is approving should come here first, and I'd like to sort of see the list of projects, and say, gosh, we need to look at this one, it shouldn't be done that simply.
I'm going to do mine, and then I'm going to, I'm with, generally with Commissioner Cooney, except here's the concern I have. A sentence in the consent calendar reads, "Reservoir in Montecito." How do I know that the roof isn't reflective? Otherwise, I completely concur with...
Mr. Chair, when there's a matter on the consent calendar, we still provide you with a staff report. The agreement that we reached back in April of 2006 was, that staff report was going to be quite brief, and so we very briefly describe the action that's proposed by the agency or department, and indicate whether or not we think there's an issue. Obviously, if it's on the consent calendar, we don't believe there's a consistency issue, but it provides you and the public that's paying attention with the opportunity to say, well, wait a minute, is there a reflective roof, or, you know, is there some other issue that we need to be considering here that maybe the staff didn't consider?
Commissioner Brown, and then Commissioner Cooney.
Commissioner Blau's suggestion, I just have problems with, because, I mean, even if we were to just get a, an agenda for the director that said he was going to consider these, it's, I mean, you're doing commission's work in abstentia, sitting at your computer saying, no, pull this one off, we want to see, I just have problems with, I don't think you can do that. But I concur with Mr. Jackson, Commissioner Jackson, Cooney, that I think for the vast majority, probably just need to see them in a very brief format, that we have been on the consent agenda, but there may be worthwhile looking at some that are just no-brainers, that have no impact, maybe not, I don't know.
Commissioner Cooney.
This is an observation, Ms. Black. I thought we spent a fair amount of time as a commission a couple of years ago, and came to this kind of compromise where we did see some, and further, I thought it's been working pretty well. Perhaps there's continued pressure from other county departments, and maybe even on Planning and Development in doing what is coming to the commission, but we don't have them every meeting. It's actually kind of unusual that we get them, and I think the staff reporting has been good enough for us to be able to ferret out any problems, we're alerted enough to go by and check it out for ourselves if it's in our district. So I like the current procedure, and I think the risk of delving deeper is you're going to go backwards to a more burdensome procedure.
That being the case, and not seeing any lights, and knowing people are hungry, are we at a consensus here, or shall we break?
So, Mr. Chair, then, I think just to wrap this up, what I heard, don't want to take anything for granted, is, it sounds like we're prepared to move to ordinances on road namings and time extensions, and the septic system in special problems areas, as long as we continue to review at a higher level septic systems that serve more than one connection, or multiple connections. So we'll bring back ordinance amendments to you within the next month or so, that'll look at that.
I don't see my lights lighting up, saying we disagree with that, so I'm going to make an assumption we're probably comfortable that way, and I know we're more uncomfortable, because lunch is waiting.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Salee.
All right. Okay. This one is...
Thanks. How are you?
Okay.
Oh, thank you. I'm here. So you're doing well? Are you happy? Okay. Yeah, I like it. I like it sort of, yeah. Did all the answers? Hearing room. I don't think they're huge. No, I don't think they're huge.
Oh. Did you say we were coming back?
No. Hang on.
Hold on just a second.
I'll just have you announce it.
Okay.
So we did say we were coming back.
Oh.
1:30. So Shelley, we're going to come back at 1:30. Since you're the next, yeah.
Okay. We are adjourned for lunch, and we'll return at 1:30 PM.
Of course, we probably weren't on TV.
This is Planning Commission hearing of January 9th. Okay, we are prepared to start with item two on our agenda, and Ms. Rodriguez, are you prepared to read that into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the request of Tish Beltranina, agent for Mr. Richard Supicio, landowner, to consider the following. 06 TPM, 12 TPM, 14 701, application filed on May 26, 2006. 07 DVP, 18, application filed June 28, 2007. 03 CUP, 01 60, application filed on June 28, 2007, and to approve the mitigated negative declaration, 07 NGD 38 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you very much. At this juncture, I'll ask my colleagues with regard to ex parte or site visit disclosures. Commissioner Brown.
Well, this was another project. I tried to find it this morning, and only discovered, talking to Ms. Weber, that Casey Avenue doesn't go through to whatever that road was, so I didn't get there, but it's pretty country out there, I have to admit that. So, no, I didn't do a site visit, and I had no ex parte.
Okay. Commissioner Blau.
No ex parte, site visit.
Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you very much, and I did find the site, and it was very nice.
And Commissioner Cooney.
I did find the site. I couldn't get through one of the gates, but did a partial site visit. No ex parte.
Okay, and for myself, no ex parte, but since that's behind the church, I know where it is, so I know where this property is, so we'll move on from there to the staff presentation, and who do we have?
Ms. Weber will be making the staff presentation today.
Thank you, Ms. Black. Good day, Chairman Jackson and member of the commission. The case before you is a request for the approval of three projects on a single parcel. First is a tentative parcel map, second is a development plan, and third is a revision to an already existing conditional use permit. The project site is located at 4050 Casey Avenue, approximately three-quarters of a mile west of Highway 154 in the Santa Inez area. The following slide is a closer aerial photo of the project site. Currently, the parcel is an approximately 158-acre parcel in an Ag-240 zone, used for commercial horse operations, as a breeding, layup, and recovery facility. The areas surrounding the parcel have both commercial agricultural uses and inter-rural The following slide is a closer aerial photo of the project site. Currently, the parcel is an approximate, oh, I did that. The first request is for the approval of the tentative parcel map, to divide one parcel into three, approximately one 78-acre parcel and two 40-acre parcels. The second request is for a development plan, to approve 58,280 square feet of existing development on the largest of the proposed parcels. And third is the request to approve two recently constructed farm employee dwellings, as a revision to an already existing farm labor camp conditional use permit. As depicted on the screen, the proposed parcel A is the 78-acre parcel requesting the approval of the development plan. Most of the structural development will remain within this parcel, including the two additional farm employee dwellings. Parcel B and C are the 40-acre parcels, and the only development on these two parcels are the horse shade shelters. This site plan is a diagrammatic layout of the existing site. The project site, Ag-240 Zone District designation, is not proposed to change under the current draft of the Santa Inez Valley Community Plan. This project is found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, with the inclusion of the departmental letters, standard conditions, and project-specific conditions. A negative declaration was circulated for the 21-day review period, with mitigation measures applied in the areas of visual resources, cultural resources, and biological resources. No public comments were received. An interdepartmental comment was made by Paul Jensen of Environmental Health regarding domestic water not being addressed. The comments received have been considered, and changes to the staff report, or changes have been incorporated in the staff report dated January 9th, 2008, on pages six and In conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the required findings in Attachment A of the staff report, approve the negative declaration specified in Attachment B, as well as the mitigation monitoring measures, and approve the project subject to the recommended conditions of approval specified in Attachment B1, B2, and B3. This concludes my presentation. Ms. Black and I are available to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this juncture, we'll start with any questions from commissioners at this point. Don't see any lights at this point.
training facility, as well as in the operation that's on this particular property. Mr. Supicio has three daughters, which is his impetus for creating the additional parcels. However, their development as residential use in the 40 acre parcels that are being created is a little bit far out in the distance. We did go to the Ag Preserve Advisory Committee and twice because they wanted to make sure when the new rules were adopted that the farm employee part of it, those dwellings were consistent with the new rules. But they did find us completely consistent with the Ag Preserve uniform rules and we will, prior to recordation, apply for the three replacement contracts for those. As far as addressing the water, we had been in consultation with Norm Fujimoto, who generally handles from the South County the more complicated, more liable parcel systems. And we had addressed that, but they hadn't gotten a letter back into us after going to subdivision review. So we do now have that letter incorporated in here. And I think that was part of Mr. Jensen's confusion. The water well that has the 50-foot seal that's adequate to serve the two new parcels is also the irrigation well, but it produces some 1,600 gallons per minute. So I think it is, it's adequate for the two residences as well as the irrigation water. And of course, we have the state's small water system infrastructure and the other water well in place on the 78 acre parcel. And so that will simply, will modify that permit to add two more connections. But basically, that infrastructure will continue to serve this farm labor camp. Yes, Casey Road on paper goes all the way through to Edison, but actually you can only access it from Mora straight in. And where it deadends is, it's actually a beautiful little employee complex. It's, you know, a group of beautiful little cottages with trees and things and a communal laundry. And, you know, it's a wonderful place to live for his employees. And, you know, I wish we could see more of these kind of developments for these Ag employees because it's really, really a special little place that he's developed there for them. Shelley Ingram is my senior planner and she has been working on this project. So there may be questions from you that I will refer to her. The two 40 acre parcels will take their access through the main entrance that's on Baseline Avenue. And the other facility will take its access off of Casey Road. It will continue to be cooperatively farmed. And so that pretty much covers anything that I thought might be additional information for you that would be useful. And Shelley and I are here to answer any of your questions that you may have. And we'd certainly like to be able to respond to anything that the lone speaker might bring up. So, thank you.
Commissioner Cooney has a question?
Thanks, Ms. Beltranina and Ms. Ingram, yet another former county employee that Ms. Beltranina has snatched away. That's probably not the right description, but my question is concerning the new wastewater systems. I looked throughout the staff report and other materials for better description of exactly what's being installed or proposed that's new and what kind of technology is involved. I don't need the details, but any background you can give on the new system, how it's going to operate, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, correct. You know, all of the other dwellings, the other seven, their systems were completely reviewed in the '03 review, but there are two new systems. And Shelley can address that. She's been intimately involved with those.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Cooney, the two new septic systems have already been applied. The applications have already been filed. They're using the dry well method. And they actually are already approved, have been approved by John Davies. Because they were existing structures, we felt it was important to go ahead and get them correctly installed. And he has informed me that they're approved, everything is fine with them. And as soon as the land use, if we receive approval here and then through the land use process, they'll be issued.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I neglected to reveal in my ex parte that I did speak to Ms. Ingram. And this is just a question that I want to put on the record. You know, I'm an urban person, so please excuse my question because you see my naivete on this. But it is important for me because this property, before it's split, has a certain amount of carrying capacity for the animals on the site. And when it's subdivided, if the two properties that are supposed to go at some point in time to his heirs reduces, could potentially reduce the capacity of this site to hold the same number of animals for which he has all this infrastructure. So is that a concern? I mean, I realize we're not concerned here and there's nothing from what Ms. Ingram tells me in the Land Use and Development Code about total number of animals. And, you know, just driving around there, I don't see people having thousands and thousands of horses. But how does, how does the applicant look at that? Does that, that's obviously not a concern.
Yes. What I can tell you is that, you know, in smaller parcels, you know, generally speaking, they like to allow about 20,000 square feet per horse. At the capacity that this is operating right now, there's a little bit over an acre per horse. So even if you cut it down to half and have the other two go off and do their thing, you're still going to have over 20,000 square feet per horse. But it is the intention of the operation, you know, to continue to have it cooperatively farmed. But I think that, you know, the carrying capacity, because all the structures are on the 78 acres, you know, it's a good question. And we did think about that. And there really is, without the 240s, the capacity for what they do now.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I had a question. In doing the site visit, going to the end of Casey Avenue, just before you get to that final barn out there, there's one structure right on the left-hand side, very tall, very small, like 200 square feet. Does somebody live in there? It's made like a little house.
It's, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Valencia, I think you're referring to the 400-square-foot employee dwelling that we're now legalizing as part of this process. It looks like a little tiny house.
Very tiny.
Yeah.
That is 400 square feet. Unbelievable. It looks like a 200. But okay, that's, all right.
But it's very, very cute inside.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other lights. So I think, are there any other further questions of Ms. Beltranina? Okay, at this juncture, then, I think we would move to public comment. At this juncture, I think I see one speaker slip at this point, Mr. Romero. Are there any others who wish to speak on this issue? Okay, that being the case, Mr. Romero.
Chairman, Commission, thank you for allowing me to come to speak for you again. For this particular project, due to the fact that there has been no previous study on this project, I'm asking that as part of the condition for approval that for mapping process or for these other two additional properties, that prior to any ground disturbance or any building, that testing would be done, a 1.5 testing would be done for archaeological material or cultural material. That's the only concern that we have for this particular project, in the sense that, you know, they're just doing, it is a lot split. We don't really see a problem with what has already been done or any testing that may be done. But it's when the actual ground is disturbed when, or either sale or either the transfer of these particular lots to the heirs who will then maybe possibly develop this property. That's when we would request that this testing be done. Okay. We'd ask that be a condition of the approval.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
Mr. Romero, is the concern with the two newly created 40 acre parcels and rather than the remainder parcel? In other words, the study would be attached to development on the new parcels?
Correct, correct. And I've spoke with Ms. Beltranina and she didn't see an issue with that as far as, you know, that particular comment. Because, yeah, that was the concern that we have is there's already been some ground disturbance on the existing or the parcel that would be left. It's the two additional that would be created. We know that there, possibility in the future, the heirs may decide to develop or build their own homes on it.
So this would be an extended Phase One? Is that the level of review? Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I have just two questions. One is, I'm curious, I have no idea what the cost of an extended Phase One report is. Do you have any kind of estimate that would cost for a 40 acre parcel?
No, I don't. But I would, I wouldn't ask that the entire parcel be tested. I would be looking more at the footprint of the development.
Any idea what that costs?
No, I don't. Not off the top of my head. I couldn't give you that. I'm not in that.
Okay, well, maybe the applicant can answer that question. And another question for you was, is there any reason to believe that there are any archaeological finds on the two 40 acre parcels? I know that you've told us before about other parcels that you know or you highly suspect may have some artifacts. Is there any reason to believe that these two 40 do?
Well, only because of the fact that we have inhabited this entire valley, this particular valley itself. And I can't point to any specifics or within the actual project area, but it still remains a sensitive issue to the elders.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Romero.
Thank you.
Not being any other questions, bring it back to the commission. And at this juncture, I have a question first. Perhaps, and I'll ask this either of you or Ms. Black, the normal expectation of a landowner and his responsibilities toward archaeological resources. Could you help give me an understanding of what the normal expect, let's say, independent of a specific request? What is a landowner expected to do under normal circumstances with regard to archaeological resources on a given site?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'm going to give you my second caveat of the day. I'm not an archaeologist.
Okay.
And I'm not a lawyer. But it's my understanding that if a citizen were to come across an artifact on their property, that they're supposed to notify the appropriate authority that they've found something. In our particular project reviews, when we don't have any indication that there are archaeological remains on a property, there's no recorded archaeological site, nothing has been observed on the property, but it's in an archaeologically sensitive area, which means it's in an area where Native Americans may have lived or used a particular piece of property. And we include a condition that says if you find a resource, you're to stop work and consult, you know, let the county know, and then we take it from there. Depending on what is found, some additional archaeological work would follow from that. So that's the purpose of our discovery clause condition that you've seen, I think, on several projects today. This case in point is one where our review, our Phase One, didn't indicate that there were any known archaeological resources on the property. But nonetheless, there is some sensitivity on the property, you know, just because of where it's located in. So we put the normal discovery clause in.
Okay. I see Mr. Cohen, you'll write up a slip post haste and, I know this is slightly out of focus, but I would like just to hear what Mr. Cohen has to say, if that's okay.
I don't know if you have your Eberhard packet, all right? But in Attachment C to the Eberhard packet is a letter dated August 3, 2007, from me, actually, all right, on behalf of the tribe. And it actually references the county guidelines, all right, for archaeological, cultural resources. And it says, of course, if there is a cultural resource located within the project site, you're supposed to be on notice. And the county, of course, has their maps. But there's also a section that says if there is a high potential for its presence on site based on recorded site distribution patterns or historical accounts, all right? And I think that's where we're trying to work with the county currently in the Santa Inez Valley Community Plan Cultural Resources Section as part of our SB 18 consultation to kind of ascertain what, sort of a sensitivity analysis for when are people reasonably to be able to predict if there's a cultural site on the property in the absence of a known cultural site that's already been recorded. Some of the factors include waterways, all right, patterns of cultural sites that have been discovered around an area, sort of like a shotgun blast. If you have a lot of sites in an area, then it's kind of, you're sort of on notice that maybe there is a site that hasn't been discovered between the two known archaeological sites. Those are the two that come to mind. And so we're sort of using this and trying to develop sort of a predictive model that we hope to at least interject in the discussions, the SB 18 discussions for the Santa Inez Valley Community Plan process. And that letter is Attachment C.
Okay. Thank you. I see, Commissioner Blau, you have a question?
Yeah, I think Ms. Beltran is going to be able to tell me what the cost of the Phase One architectural site would be.
Commissioners, yes. You know, depending upon the site disturbance area, you know, that's, that pretty much gives you the idea. So, you know, it can run anywhere from in the area of $1,000 to $2,000 up higher. Given that these properties are under an Ag Preserve contract, they would have a very limited building envelope for the 40 acre area. And I did speak with the representatives of the CHMASH prior to the hearing. And I said that, you know, we would agree that on the two new parcels, that prior to issuance of a land use permit for future dwellings and ground disturbance, that we would agree to the study. The reason that this is good timing is because when you submit a land use permit, you have your layout for your septic, you know where the house is going to go on the parcel, and you can focus in on, only on the area where the disturbance will be. And certainly in the past, the standard mitigation was the discovery. And even on properties where I've been involved, where we were trenching for a water line and, you know, dug up artifacts that had no condition on it, you immediately stop work and, you know. And that has always been the, you know, the standard. But I think, given the trends that I've seen in permitting and the additional participation of the CHMASH and a lot of our more recent projects, in the interest of, you know, compromising with them, I agreed that for the two new parcels, that this condition would be acceptable and reasonable to us, with the timing being prior to issuance of a land use permit for development on either one of these vacant parcels. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this juncture, do we?
The reason that this is good timing is because when you submit a land use permit, you have your layout for your septic, you know where the house is going to go on the parcel, and you can focus in on, only on the area where the disturbance will be. And certainly in the past, the standard mitigation was the discovery. And even on properties where I've been involved, where we were trenching for a water line and, you know, dug up artifacts that had no condition on it, you immediately stop work and, you know. And that has always been the, you know, the standard. But I think, given the trends that I've seen in permitting and the additional participation of the CHMASH in a lot of our more recent projects, in the interest of, you know, compromising with them, I agreed that for the two new parcels, that this condition would be acceptable and reasonable to us, with the timing being prior to issuance of a land use permit for development on either one of these vacant parcels. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this juncture, do we have any other questions or interests on the part of commissioners? At this juncture, I'll, I guess, close the public comment, or perhaps I should have done that earlier. And if we have no more commissioner questions, then I presume it's prudent to contemplate deliberations. And since I am chairing, I'm going to ask that, once again, that my colleagues share with me their perspectives first, if that is all right. Commissioner Cooney.
Mr. Chair, I'll go first, only because I wanted to comment on the most recent discussion of the, again, collaboration of the applicant with the CHMASH on this sensitive subject of mapping. Even from the county standpoint and from our standpoint as decision-makers, I think it's helpful to have a better idea of where we can look for artifacts than to simply rely on the contractors, not even the applicants, but the contractors they may hire to do construction, to be alert for the presence of archaeological remains. I would be frankly reluctant to impose this condition without the applicant's complicity in this situation, because there has been, on the basis of the Phase One study and the way we do things, no indication of particular presence here. On the other hand, as Mr. Cohen indicated, and I think the record supports, it's very difficult to say exactly where, at any given time, the CHMASH were taking up residence or areas in which they considered valuable. So when the applicant and, in any case, where an applicant agrees with the tribe to do study of prospective disturbance areas, I think that's great to come to the commission with that as a precursor. And sooner or later, we're going to have a pretty well-mapped area, I think, of the entire San Inez Valley, and that will help future commissions make intelligent decisions about conditions to impose on these projects. That was, that plus the wastewater treatment facilities for what is obviously a significant agricultural operation are my only concerns, and I'm prepared to support the three permits that have been requested here today, with the addition of the condition as outlined by the agreement.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, I'm prepared to support this as well. I'm a little more concerned about archaeological condition. I would be much happier if it was the standard condition, not the new one. I hate the idea of we keep imposing what's probably an unnecessary cost, since there is little likelihood that there's an archaeological find there, and if they do, were to find one, it would be dealt with appropriately. I mean, you're already paying, this is my swan song, $1,800 to the fish and game for their report for the subdivision, for God knows what reason, but you are. And I would hate to see another $4,000 per parcel when the money is not really necessary. Now, having said that, quite frankly, personally, if I were developer to develop this property, I'd do the report, whether it was required or not, because I'd rather not, I'd rather know before I start, rather than stop the trucks and the tractors when they're there. But I can see where other people would have reason toward the $2,000 or the $4,000 is a fee that just isn't necessary. So I would support it without the condition, the standard condition. Again, I'm not going to, I mean, if the applicant's agreeable and you want to do it, that's great. But I don't want to see this as being the standard condition going forward, because I don't think it's necessary. I think if there's a likelihood that there's sites there, you should maybe do the report. But there's no evidence of that fact, and the tribe doesn't feel like there's a likelihood of it being there. I don't want to be wasting applicants' money, because I find $4,000 to be significant.
Thank you, Commissioner Blau. Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I support the project also, and I am also concerned about the review that might be necessary. But I'm glad that we do each one individually and that the prerogative rests with us, rather than as a blanket statement of saying, you always have to do it.
Thank you, Commissioner Valencia. Commissioner Brown?
I support the project.
Okay, that being the case, and it being my turn, employee housing. Gosh, how long have we been talking about that? So I'm excited that we're actually seeing one in practice, and I'm enthused about that. I'm equally enthused that parties are talking, and that I do not wish to be the entity that sets precedent or requires of it, but when it does happen, I believe that's an enhanced proposition. I like the project. I like its intentions. I like its objectives. Once again, as Chair, I'm going to ask for one of my colleagues to please make the motion, but that's where I am.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we adopt the, let's see now, we need to go...
Mr. Chair.
Do you want to do them individually, or do you want to do them all three at one time?
No. Commissioner Blau, if I could suggest going to the January 9 memo, you can just move the staff's recommendation with whatever your intention is on this archaeological issue.
Okay. I'm going to make the motion that we do the staff recommendations, 2.1 through, I guess it's 2.1 through 2.5. Do I have that correct?
Yes, in the January 9.
In the January 9 memorandum, with the inclusion that they perform an archaeological Phase Two extended survey prior to the issuance of a land use permit. Does that, do I say that correctly? One, excuse me, 1.5, thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion at this time?
I just have one thing to clarify. I think in the making of the motion, Commissioner Blau, the request was for the archaeological Extended Phase One to be performed prior to any permit for land disturbance. So it would, it could relate to a land use permit, but it could relate to some grading, for example, grading permit. And I just wanted to make sure that we put the words "permit" related to site disturbance.
That's what I intended, thank you.
That being the case, and seeing no other lights at this point, David, we'll move the issue. That's, move the issue, and I thought that's what you do when you vote on it, but...
Mr. Chair, we'll do a roll call vote.
That's what I meant.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Chair Jackson?
Yes. Okay, I believe we have that completed. Will we need setup time for the next one? Ms. Black, let's take five minutes to set up for the next one, please. David, are you going to read it in? Or... Yes, sir? All right, well, then, why don't we go ahead? We're going to go on the record, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the request of Sid Goldstein, agent for the applicant's Dennis and Cynthia Ebiger, to consider the following. 07 TPM 2, application filed on January 25, 2007. 07 CUP, application filed on January 25, 2007, and to approve the mitigated negative declaration 07 NGD 16 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
Thank you very much. At this juncture, I'll ask my colleagues about ex parte and site visit disclosures. Anybody? Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I visited the site with Mr. Goldstein a few minutes after you did.
Commissioner Brown.
Well, I should have had Mr. Goldstein take me to the site, because I was there, but I couldn't find it. It was another one of those, mailbox isn't by the road with a number on it, I'm not going to find it. Anyway, but no ex parte.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can disclose that I did a neighborhood visit, driving around all sides of this property, but I didn't, I was not able to get on the site to see the lot-line division, so I'm anxious to learn more about it this afternoon.
Thank you. Commissioner Blau? I will acknowledge I had an ex parte meeting right before Commissioner Valencia, with Mr. Goldstein at the site, and got a chance to see the site and tour up and down the street scene, et cetera. Thank you very much. At this point, Ms. Edie, would you like to begin your presentation?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Jackson. Before I start my presentation, I would just like to mention that this morning, staff received a revised condition letter from the environmental health department. I believe copies of that letter dated today's date, January 9, 2008, have been distributed to all the commissioners, and that will supersede the letter placed in the staff report. That letter has also been given to the applicant and the applicant's agent, and they have agreed to those conditions. With that out of the way, good afternoon, Chairman Jackson, fellow commissioners. The proposed project is the request of Sid Goldstein for the approval of the Ebiger tentative parcel map and conditional use permit. Project site is located on the southern end of Los Lejos, at the intersection of Grand Avenue and Lansing Crossing. As indicated by this figure, the project site is located within the boundaries of the San Inez Valley Community Plan area. However, the community plan does not currently propose any change to the land use designation or zone district for the project site. The project site is directly adjacent to the Alamo-Pintado Creek and is surrounded by a mixture of single-family and small agriculturally-zoned parcels. The existing project parcel is approximately 2.55 acres and contains an existing single-family dwelling with attached garage, storage shed, and horse paddock. If approved, the proposed tentative parcel map would create two new parcels of 1.27 and 1.28 acres respectively. Both proposed parcels would retain their existing single-family, 1-acre minimum parcel-size zone designation, and the lot split would result in the additional development potential for one new primary residence. The approval of the requested conditional use permit would allow the construction of a septic system to support this future residence. Proposed parcel A could accommodate the construction of a new primary residence, while parcel B would contain the existing single-family home highlighted in red. As seen in this figure, existing property lines are denoted in blue, the new property line is denoted in red. This photo shows the view of the project site's frontage on Grand Avenue facing south. Here you can see where Alamo-Pintado Creek traverses the western edge of the project site, with the horse paddock to your right. And this photo shows the primary buildable area on parcel A, basically the open area in the middle of the horse paddock. And finally, this photo shows the existing residence to remain on proposed parcel B. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the required findings for the proposed project, specify in Attachment A of the staff report, including SEQA findings, approve the mitigated negative declaration, Attachment B of the staff report, and adopt the mitigation monitoring program contained in the conditions of approval, and approve the project subject to the conditions in Attachment C of the staff report. That concludes staff's presentation. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Edie, I'm not sure if you've had discussions with Mr. Jensen to have any ability to answer this question, but it has to do with the wastewater treatment facility. This site is more constrained than others we've been dealing with today, and it's immediately adjacent to Alamo-Pintado Creek. And I'm just curious as to the description of the system, if you have any knowledge about that. If not, perhaps Mr. Goldstein will.
Chairman Jackson and Commissioner Cooney, as you can see on the map on proposed parcel A, there is a cross-hatched area close to the public right-of-way and the new property line. That is the area that has been identified for the new septic system, which will be typical tank and leach line. A 100% reserve area has also been laid out, which has the diagonal lines, and that's directly, that would be south of the primary leach field area. So in the event the system fails, where it's installed the first time, there is adequate area to, in effect, reinstall a brand-new system, the same size.
I'm holding a toy, so tell me again where we are talking about...
This is the primary leach field area here, and this is the secondary leach field area here, in the event of a failure.
Thank you.
So as a follow-up question, then, are there easements from parcel A to parcel B for the maintenance of that leach field?
Chairman Jackson and Commissioner Cooney, there's already an existing septic system on parcel B. This is simply the area needed to support the new residents on parcel A, so no easements would be necessary. Each lot has its own self-contained septic system.
Do we know where the septic system is on existing parcel B?
It is right here. These dotted lines, I believe, actually denote the existing leach lines.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the part of commissioners? Okay, that being the case, we would move to the applicant presentation. Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Sid Goldstein. I'm here representing the Ebigers. And this project was submitted about a year ago. We worked very closely with staff and the other county departments, in particular the Health Department, with regard to septic systems. So what I'll do first is answer those questions again that Commissioner Cooney just brought up. One of the things we did do in response to the Health Department's inquiry was to have a soils engineer perform percolation testing on the property. And as Nathan indicated, parcel B is already developed with the existing single-family residence and has its own existing septic system, so it's only parcel A that we were concerned about. We have percolation testing performed there to do two things. One is to determine the size of the septic system required, and also to verify that a leach field, as opposed to dry wells, would be sufficient. The results of that test did indicate that leach lines were satisfactory for use on this property, that there was sufficient separation between the bottom of those proposed leach lines to any groundwater. In fact, there was no groundwater to be found in that particular boring, and also that we had adequate room for the proposed septic system. So the hatched area, as Nathan pointed out, is the area not only for an initial septic system, but also a duplication of that septic system should the initial one fail. And that was designed to accommodate a four-bedroom home on this property, which is probably larger than the typical home in the area, but we felt it was conservative and complied with the Health Department's request. So we were able, based on that testing, able to show, and the Health Department agreed, that this lot was developable, would conform to their policies and requirements for septic disposal. The reason the septic system is on the far east side of the property is there is a requirement, because of Alamo-Pintado Creek, that that septic system, both the tank and leach field, be separated from the top of the creek by 100 feet to the septic system. So if you look on the map, you'll see a 100-foot designated line, if I can get this thing to work. Right here is the dimension line showing 100 feet... here is the dimension line showing 100 feet from the top of the creek bank, which is here, to the beginning or most westerly edge of that septic disposal area. So everything is 100 feet or more beyond the top of creek. And then, as Nathan pointed out, because, not only because it's designed this way, but we're required on private septic systems to have them self-contained within the parcel that they're serving. So there are no easements required. Each parcel has its own septic system, and each parcel is responsible for maintaining that septic system within its property boundaries. You have any other questions regarding septic?
No, thanks, Mr. Goldstein. I think I have it now. I appreciate how close a call it is, though, because if it were any closer to the creek, you'd be within the setback. So you've gone about as far out toward the road as you possibly can.
Right. Yeah. And this was actually looked at some years ago when we did the original lot line adjustment that created not parcels AMB, but the combination, the existing parcel, the two-and-a-half-acre parcel. We did look at areas available for septic disposal to assure ourselves, as well as the county, that those parcels were buildable and septic systems could be developed on those in compliance with the county standards.
Mr. Goldstein, the Health Department's letter refers to testing conducted in 2004. Is that the testing you're referring to? There wasn't something done subsequently, to your knowledge?
No, I believe that would be the, although 2004 sounds like, which letter are you referring to? Yeah. Thank you.
It's in the third paragraph down, second sentence.
Yes, that would be it.
Four years ago.
I'm getting old. Yeah, four years ago. It seems like it was yesterday. That would have been the testing that they reviewed and that this map was based on. So aside from the septic system, we also have on the property flood control setback, and that also is from the top of the creek bank. In the case of flood control, they require a 50-foot setback. That's what this line indicates. So again, from the top of the creek bank to any structural development, that structural development could not be any closer than this line. The building envelope then consists of this area to a setback along Lansing Crossing, down to our area set aside for septic disposal, and over to a setback line along the north property line. So that constitutes roughly 5,500 to 6,000 square feet of buildable area. All of the area beyond that, to the west of the building envelope, would be left, obviously, unbuildable, but usable, for example, for horse enclosures and other similar features, garden areas, or just open space. In fact, there is an open space easement on the property, which I believe is designated by this line here, currently an open space area to protect the creek area. So other than the staff report, which adequately explains the project, the basics here is we are conforming to zoning, conforming to the general plan, conforming to the proposed community plan. In terms of land use, minimum parcel sizes, the parcel existing is two-and-a-half acres. We're proposing two, 1.2 roughly acre parcels to be created. We've complied with all the county department requirements, regulations. Fire Department is requiring installation of one additional hydrant to serve not only these properties, but also other properties in the area. And all the conditions have been found to be acceptable by the applicant, as well as the current letter, which the Public Health Department just submitted today. That is also acceptable. I do want to point out that in the environmental review, there was a negative declaration that was made public. And during that public review, there was a response letter from the Schumash regarding potential archaeological sites. And in this case, there was a Phase 1 study done some years ago, actually, when the original lot line adjustment was prepared back in 1985, I think it was, or '84. And that Phase 1 indicated negative results. In other words, it didn't find anything. But because of the concern that there may be proximate to this property archaeological sites, there was a request for a Phase 1 extended study as part of the negative declaration for this current project. We discussed that at length with the applicant, with planning and development, and eventually agreed to have that extended Phase 1 performed, was completed. It's now part of the record, part of the negative declaration. And the conclusion of that extended Phase 1 was also that there were no findings relative to archaeological sites on this property. So it benefits not only those concerned about archaeology, it also benefits the county and the applicant in terms of creating clean record for this particular land division, and they can move forward with development of parcel A without any concerns about that potential arising during construction. So I just wanted to point that out and answer any other questions you might have.
Commissioner Valencia, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. Goldstein. We didn't get a chance to get back here. Are these two separate creeks, is it the same creek, but two separate creeks? And is this high ground here?
No, it's all one creek.
Oh, this is all one creek right here?
Correct.
So the high ground would be over here on this?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
So if these people wanted to do a, they have to go around like this, or could they, I guess they would have to go through a permit process to put a little walkway bridge over to, if they wanted to put orange trees or something in there?
Well...
It's too wide?
That's an open space area. It's a designated open space easement along Alamo Pintado Creek.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So the use of that is extremely limited and cannot be developed in any way.
All right. Thank you very much. That is my question. Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions from commissioners? Okay, at that point, this is a third district issue, again. And again...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Have we opened the public hearing?
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. At this juncture, we will open for public comment. My apologies, ladies and gentlemen. I'm pawing the ground and moving too quickly. Are there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this issue at all? Okay, seeing none, I apologize for getting ahead of myself. And now, we'll come back for discussion deliberations. And indeed, as this is a third district issue, and I'm chairing, I like this structure. I would like to hear from my colleagues in advance this time, so I'll pretty much structure that the same way we did last time. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't find any problem. After walking the project with Mr. Goldstein, I don't find any problems with the project. At first, I thought perhaps driving in, because it was so close to the intersection, but he indicated to me where the drive-in might be, and to drive to the property, and I don't think there'll be any problems. So I'm in support of the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Valencia. Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I'm prepared to support the project. I just have a question. In the environmental health letter, their item two says, "Prior to recordation, the applicant shall submit a copy of the final map to Environmental Health Services." I'm going like, yeah, so... It doesn't say that they're going to approve it, doesn't, I mean, I have no idea why this is written this way. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Mr. Chair, perhaps Mr. Eady can answer it. I could only speculate, but I think he knows.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, typically when planning and development approves a tentative parcel map, we also will give the applicant a department sign-off sheet. And so for conditions like this, where the, prior to recordation, the Health Services needs to review the final map, they have to sign off on the department's sign-off sheet. It's not until staff receives that department's sign-off sheet that we allow the map to record.
Great. And I think they need to know that they need to change the language in here, and it says this for their review and approval. If I were reading this as the applicant, I sent him a copy, and I'm done. I don't, they don't, it doesn't appear, it doesn't read like I've got to get their approval and get something back from them. So I would like to see that condition changed, that if it's, if they have to approve it, review it, approve it, it should say so in the condition.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
I support the project, and I'm ready to move ahead.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
Hi, Mr. Chair. I'm supportive of the project. I'm going to look, as I head back to Santa Barbara, hoping it's still daylight, I will try and see if I can see down into the area. But obviously, there's a lot more, and it's pretty shielded by trees on at least two sides. One inconsistency I'd like to address, and I think this is just a matter for staff to take up as a general matter in the future, but we have two projects, items three and four, on our agenda today involving property very closely situated to one another. And both in the negative declarations identify noise as a potential environmental issue, and both suggest the same condition, that is, during construction, limited hours, limited days of the week. The difference is that on the Ebiger project, construction hours are proposed to be limited from seven to four. And on the project, we'll next come to the Hurthel project, it's from eight to four. And I'm guessing the noise impacts would be pretty much the same on both properties, and so I just think we should be consistent. And I don't feel strongly that we require construction on this project to be delayed till eight o'clock, but I'll go anywhere my fellow commissioners wish to on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Good catch. I would think we would want to be consistent one way or the other there. Commissioner Blau?
Just to answer Commissioner Cooney's question, seven o'clock works best for me. Seven to four, both projects.
Okay. Ms. Black?
Mr. Chair, I was just going to suggest that we inquire of my staff where he got the seven to four versus the eight to four. Because Santiness doesn't have a current community plan, a lot of those hours come out of the community plan, so maybe that was from the draft community plan, or perhaps it's from the noise element. I was just trying to figure out which one it's supposed to be.
Ms. Eady?
Chairman Jackson, fellow commissioners, the planning and development department has a standard list of conditions that we apply to the vast majority of projects, the noise condition being one of them. So that's where that condition would have come from. That's a county-wide condition rather than a community-specific. But as Mrs. Black mentioned, there is a possibility that that timeframe could vary from community to community if a separate community had a community plan and decided to specify their own construction hours that they felt were more appropriate.
Yeah, I think it's probably the seven to four, I think, because that's kind of the area there. Just to jibe my fellow commissioner here, if you buy Dunn School and you come around down that hill, you're pointing into this property.
I got there.
Okay.
I did that.
If you go in the driveway just a half step, the panorama opens up.
Okay, that's what I need to do.
Just for that. I, too, support this project. Once again, I think it's thorough and well-thought-out, and I am thankful. It's a good response from staff. It's a good response all the way around. It's a negotiated outcome in certain places that I think also augurs well for it. At this juncture, actually, I would be happy, even from the chair, to make today's motion in support of the staff report to move to approve the requests, items one, two, one and two, from the staff report.
So, Mr. Chair, I think what your motion would be then is that you're moving staff's recommendation on page two, including the revised Environmental Health Services letter dated today.
Correct.
Second.
Okay. One day, I'm going to get one right the first time. I see, Commissioner Blau, you have a, we have a motion and a second for any discussion. Commissioner Blau, your light's lit.
Yeah, I'm going to ask, does that include making the hours of Operation seven to four, or as, I was going to suggest, or as may be modified by the adoption of the Santiness Community Plan?
Mr. Chair, I think what we would want to do is just leave it at seven to four. I don't think we can have conditions that change upon adoption of a later community plan. So I think we should just leave it at seven to four, which would be the standard approach today.
Well, I'm not going to agree with that, to tell you the truth, but I do think you can, if the, I'm sorry, if the plan is adopted later on, and they change the hours from eight to four for the Santiness community, I think that would apply. And I think there's a problem by telling this applicant and giving him a written condition that says seven to four, and then in December of '08, we change it to eight to four, and somebody in the community calls up and complains, the staff says the community plan for the whole area says eight to four, you know. Sorry, I don't agree.
Okay, Commissioner Valencia, well...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While you're waiting there, in the comprehensive plan area consistency, the requirement in the discussion didn't follow the standard format, but I suspected that they, all of the items were consistent. I read them all and tried to make his or tails. Usually, there's a bold statement that, right off the top of each one, that says consistent, which helps you understand the discussion. So just for next time, they should all say either consistent, potentially consistent, or inconsistent, just as a matter of format. Thank you, and I'm ready to go.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We are wrestling with the seven to four notion. We have a request to amend the motion. As the maker of the motion, I'm ambivalent because I tend to feel that it will work out, but I'm willing to accede to Mr. Blau's request and place it in there. We'll the second of the motion, so...
And so that's to change it, too?
It leaves it at seven to four, but puts them on notice that if the community plan gets adopted, and there's a different timeframe, they'll comply with a new timeframe.
As amended and accepted by both the maker of the motion and the second, let's, unless there is any other discussion, hope I see, Commissioner Valencia, your light is lit?
No.
Okay, I don't see any other lights lit, so I believe it would be time to have a vote.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, we will take five minutes to set up for the next item. Thank you. There are people who are planning to speak in the public. Pass the speaker slips to Commissioner Brown there. And we will begin, and Joyce, oh, wait. I'm getting better. David, would you read it, read the item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Following is the request of Tis Beltranina, agent for Douglas Hurthel owner, to consider case number 05 LLA 16, application filed on October 19th, 2005, and to approve the negative declaration 07 ND NGD 39 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
Thank you very much. At this juncture, commissioners, do you have any expartee communications or site visit disclosures at this time? Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I saw the site and all the barley or hay growing on it.
Okay, Commissioner Blau?
No expartee, site visit.
No expartee. Have visited this, been by the site many times.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cooney?
Just drove by. I had seen the site for the related project to the south, and was able to identify, I believe, on the ground, the proposed lot line adjustment we're considering today.
Thank you. I had a conversation just with the planner. No expartee with anyone other than that on this issue, and I have visited the site on several occasions, so I'm fairly familiar with it. That being the case, I have found my cheat sheet, so I'm back in control. And we will move to the staff presentation now. Joyce?
Thank you, Chairman Jackson, commissioners. This case is a request to approve a lot line adjustment among four contiguous irregularly-shaped... lots. The project site is located along the west side of Grand Avenue, west of State Highway 154, and about half a mile south of Alamo-Pintado Avenue in the southern part of the community of Los Olivos. And it's surrounded here by the red line. This is 154, and here's Alamo-Pintado, and here's Grand. The four lots are currently zoned residential, 15R1, 15,000 square foot minimum parcel size, 3.33 residences per acre, under the Santa Barbara County Land Use and Development Code. The site is currently undeveloped and is actively farmed. These lots are part of a larger, approximately 27-acre area historically called the Montenaro Farm. The south part of the farm is the subject of another lot line adjustment that is currently under appeal to the Board of Supervisors. This project is within the Santinaz Valley Community Plan area, and is shown in this slide. The area is currently designated residential and zoned 15R1. The current draft of the Santinaz validity community plan proposes to re-designate the project area as comp plan designation residential zoning RR5 residential red chat with a five-acre minimum parcel size. The proposed project would reconfigure the four irregularly-shaped parcels into four regularly-shaped parcels, each with about 220 feet of frontage on Grand Avenue. This slide, which is actually in color, I don't know if you can see that here, shows the four original parcels as they are currently configured. Here's one, here's another one, here's the third. The mouse is stuck here. And then this area here, which should be purple, but I don't know if it's coming out that way, is the fourth quite large parcel. This is Alamo-Pintado Creek, Grand Avenue's down here, and Santa Barbara Avenue's up here along the north on the other side of the creek. Although not in agricultural preserve, these lots are currently being farmed. Their ability to remain in crops will not change with the lot line adjustment. The lots are already zoned residential, and their current irregular configuration is a result of their creation by certificates of compliance. The lot line adjustment will actually regularize the lot size, and should one be sold or developed, make it easier for the other lots to remain in agricultural use. This aerial just shows the, the fact that it's currently completely farmed, except for this area along the creek. The project site is near a documented prehistoric Chumash cemetery. The location of the village site associated with this cemetery is unknown, but is believed by archaeologists to be in the immediate vicinity of the project area. For this reason, a phase one surface survey was conducted to assess the presence or absence of cultural resources in the proposed project area. The results of the survey were negative. However, because the property is in an area along the creek bank that experiences rapid alluviation and deep alluviation, resources may be deeply buried with few surface indicators. For this reason, we required an extended phase one subsurface presence-absence test prior to any development on the parcels. In other words, in this area, phase one survey is not enough on the surface alone, because it doesn't provide any certainty that, it doesn't provide enough certainty, because soils deposited by water courses often bury these artifacts very deeply, and they may not be present on the surface. If no cultural resources are found during the extended phase one, then development could proceed without any cultural resource monitoring, but with the standard discovery clause. If cultural resources are found, then the first choice would be to avoid them altogether by project redesign if possible. If avoidance is infeasible, then additional phase two significance testing would be required. The testing would be conducted by an archaeologist with a Native American observer, and additional phase three mitigation of impact work may also be required. Oh, one thing I would like to point out is that the extended phase one that would be required in an alluvial area is according to our Santa Barbara County Cultural Resource Guidelines. There's a paragraph in the guidelines explicitly requiring that in alluvial areas. Sorry, there we go. The lot line adjustment would not increase the number of residences that could be developed on the lots, and the lot line adjustment would not increase the subdivision potential of the land. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project and circulated for a 21-day comment period from November 13th to December 4th, 2007. It identified potentially significant but mitigable impacts in four categories, as you can see on the slide. The three mitigation measures required to reduce impacts to less than significant levels from the negative declaration are included in the project conditions of approval, and these do include low-intensity hooded outdoor lighting, the extended phase one survey plus appropriate follow-on, and the standard construction hours. One public, public comment letter was received during the comment period. The email from the Santinaz Band of Mission Indians requested that the phase one study be conducted prior to approval of a lot line adjustment, rather than deferring it to the time of zoning clearances. It also required, requested that test excavations be monitored by a Native American observer, that the excavations include controlled backhoe lifts, that the testing program be subject to the tribe's approval, and that an EIR be prepared for the proposed project. The project would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, with the inclusion of departmental conditions and the standard conditions of approval for lot line adjustments that are included as attachment C. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the required findings for the project specified in attachment A, including SEQA findings, approve the negative declaration 7 NGD 39, adopt the mitigation monitoring program included in the conditions of approval, and approve the lot line adjustment, subject to the conditions included in attachment C. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. At this juncture, do my fellow colleagues have any questions of the staff report at this time? Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, Ms. Gerber, you, you were referring in one of your slides to the proposed zoning under the Santinaz community plan, is that correct? And so this property would be downzoned to RR5?
Chairman Jackson, Commissioner Cooney, that is correct.
Thank you.
If I may ask another question, I believe this is the case, but we have a prohibition against certain things involved with the community plan until its adoption, and I don't believe that this qualifies under that prohibition. The question I had is, when it is in the community plan and presented one way, is there not also an alternative that is presented with that? Is that worthy of consideration or understanding at this point?
Mr. Chair, the community plan, I believe, I don't know if the community plan itself includes alternatives for zoning of this site. The environmental document will, when it comes out.
All right, thank you. I don't see any other lights from my fellow commissioners, so at this juncture, we'll open the public comment. At this juncture, I have two speaker slips. Whoops. It's my second meeting. Excuse me. Why don't we have the applicant make their presentation? I'm sorry.
Okay, good afternoon again, Chair and Commissioners. We're glad to finally have this lot line adjustment in front of you. I know that you are all very aware of the issues related to this site, given your deliberations over the Montenaro lot line adjustment, and by reference, I incorporate all of that documentation to this. As was noted, we did do a phase one archaeological study of the entire Montenaro Farm, which was requested in September two years ago. That was a negative in its findings. In your approval of the Montenaro lot line adjustment, which was unanimous and has now been appealed, we did agree, as with my previous project, that we agreed to the extended phase one at the time of the land use permit. However, the Chumash band on this particular project and on the Montenaro project has wanted us to basically dig up the entire farm prior to even recordation of these lot line adjustments, and this is something that we think is totally unreasonable. Our archaeologist has made it very clear that when there are cultural resources, a potential for cultural resources, the best thing is that they remain untouched. And to indiscriminately dig up this farm at great expense to my clients when they intend to continue to farm it, you know, again, we thought that was unreasonable, and we were willing to agree to what we just agreed to on the subdivision that was just deliberated. But that, in these particular cases, has not been satisfactory to the Chumash. And when you talk about the cost of an extended phase one, I want you to know that my clients have spent upwards of $70,000 of unnecessary cost because of the appeal from the zoning administrator approval, your unanimous approval, and now we have to go to the board, and that, a lot of that is legal costs, but, so, just that as background. I'm just going to read a portion of a letter from Janice Yates-Montenaro, who lived on this site most of her life, and she signed this letter for the previous project. "My name is Janice L. Montenaro Yates, and I own my family's historic residence on the Montenaro Farm where I grew up. In the 1800s, at the age of 28, my grandfather, Peter Benedict Montenaro, built the home I own. He lived there all his life, and my father, Arthur P. Montenaro, also lived there all his life. They both farmed until that land for over a century and never found any Chumash artifacts on the land. We often heard stories about Chumash burial sites and the discover of artifacts near the Santinaz and the river, but there was never any archaeological site mapped on our farm." Information that we have discussed with you is that the SB 188 burial ground used to be visited by teachers and is about a half a mile south of this site, and actually on the west side of the river, which is typical of Chumash burial sites, they would build their burial sites west of rivers and west of villages, so the souls could go west. And that was in documentation from an archaeologist that submitted testimony on the Montenaro. To bring you to this, the downzoning was a request of my clients to the community plan. Right now, under the zoning that this is under, with the 15,000 square foot allowable lots, if you just, you know, do the division, you could have 37 units out there, and we know there were projects proposed in that scale, and that prompted the purchase, the ultimate purchase of this property by my clients. So they put in a letter, as you know, you cannot rezone a property yourself during a community plan, so we put in a letter to the community plan, and they agreed to downzone this property to the five-acre minimum parcels. And the reason for this lot line adjustment should be pretty obvious to you. We have landlocked parcels that were created in the, between 1898 and 1906 by George Heller and Peter Montenaro. We weren't, we couldn't take any action on this property until we did a parcel validity study, and so we did it, and this is what we found. And so their purpose is to reconfigure this land into the three-plus acre parcels that actually reflect the old 1800s farmlot pattern on this rural residential area. And also with the three-point acre parcels, they will, under the new zoning, never be able to be subdivided again. They will be legal non-conforming lots. As it is right now, if we leave it like this, if the new zoning comes into effect, the pink lot could actually be split into two, because it's over 10 acres. So their feeling was that the best thing to do to maintain their value, they have a very high personal mortgage on this farm, they're trying to preserve it, and so while downzoning it, the lot line adjustment will, you know, create the three-acre parcels that will allow them to preserve the value of the land, but not allow it to be ever subdivided again. I've covered the valley plan. What we asked staff to do on this lot line adjustment was to roll over the conditions that your commission unanimously approved for the previous one into this one, and that includes the extended phase one at the time of a land use permit. And that way, instead of indiscriminately trenching up this farm for no reason, because they plan to keep it in alfalfa, and hopefully, you know, what they want to do is simply use the commercial buildings. So, you know, when, as I said in, in the previous project, when you turn in for a land use permit, you have a plan that shows where is your driveway, where's your septic, where's your home? And so that is the appropriate time for any additional testing. We did agree to that. I know you thought in the last project that that was overdoing it, and yet, you know, for some reason, it satisfied that subdivision, but for a lot line adjustment, that isn't satisfactory to the tribe. I put forth to you that it is. We're going above and beyond. We already did the phase one, and we would like you to approve this project with the conditions and the same conditions that you approved unanimously the previous lot line adjustment. And we're hoping that the community plan will downzone this property to the RR5, and, you know, it is my client's hope that they'll be able to preserve this property and make use of the historic buildings on the southern end. And with that, I'd like to introduce Doug Hertel, my client. He has a beautiful overhead photo of the farm, and if you have any questions for us, I'd be more than happy to answer those, and we would certainly like to be able to answer to any further comments that come in. Thank you.
Chairman Jackson and Commissioners, thank you for taking a look at this project, and thank you to Joyce Gerber and Tish Beltranina. I actually, we kind of did this before, so I don't want to bore you guys, go over, rehash, and so I just, basically, if you have any questions, you know, there's, there's the farm that you have seen or driven by, and if you, if you have any questions of me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Dr. Hertel, I was not here at the last one. Anything that you feel emerged in that discussion that you feel might be relevant here that I ought to hear, because I know my, my colleagues have heard it?
That's great. I, I'll just, I'll just point out a few things and reiterate, that we actually requested that this be majorly downzoned, because we felt, the thing that started this whole process was, there was a developer that had a plan for 34 units and 34 unattached units on this piece of property, in a sewer plant. The community didn't think that was a good idea, thought it was a real negative to Los Olivos, it would have given a 62% growth rate. After the developer backed out of that, then the county actually solicited the owner to, to put five to seven houses zoning, SLP zoning, on this entire property. So that's five to seven houses per acre. We thought that was really way, way, way too high. At one time, Polo tried to get it downzoned to just one acre zoning. As it turned out, we had to buy it to prevent it from being high-density zoning, and, and our goal is to continue to feed our organic alfalfa hay to the horses. goal is to continue to feed our organic alfalfa hay to the horses, which absolutely love it, it's great, and then to clear up these lot lines. So basically, we're just asking for a lot line adjustment. Tish is correct. We want to protect any Chumash artifacts. In fact, I think we're doing a beautiful job of protecting the land and the artifacts. We think it would be horribly negative to go in there and backhoe this whole property looking for them, and I think that if there were any artifacts, I think that could be detrimental. And I think archaeologists like MDs and veterinarians take an oath, do no harm, and I think this would be a real harmful situation. And the other reason we're dealing with this, and like Tish says, it's cost $70,000 extra, but there's a lot of people that could not withstand that kind of abuse. So we're sticking with it, and I don't think that we should set a precedent where people have to dig up their properties, you know, over childish dispute. So any other questions? Appreciate your time.
No, thank you very much. Okay. Now, I think, I am ready to public comment. For those who wonder, I have a cheat sheet. Public comment. At this juncture, I have but two names, Michelle Grafful, followed by Sam Cohen. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to submit a form? All right, well, then we'll start with Ms. Grafful. Welcome.
Thank you for taking the time for this. I live on Grand Avenue, right across the street from the property, from the Hertel property. In fact, my house is one of those in the trees on this side. I've lived there for almost 25 years. The Hertels have done nothing but enhance the community, and I really am here to encourage you to please stop the game that I know you didn't create, but this whole shenanigans of making them go through this again and again and again. The amount of money that's been spent on this could have been used in community projects, which they're very supportive of. I mean, I don't know if there's another precedent of properties that have to go through this process to get a lot line adjustment. We're not talking about digging up a teaspoon of dirt, just moving the lines. When I moved to this, my house, I was told that there could be one house per acre across the street, and it always scared me that it would be developed, but I knew that was part of the deal. Then a few years ago, when, I think it was the state mandate came for low-income housing, all of a sudden it went to the possibility of 132 units across the street, some multiple family, some single family. That's how Polo really was created, was to stop that kind of development in an area that really couldn't sustain it. No one from the tribe objected, that I know of, at the time, when all these other developments were being talked about. We're not even talking about a development, we're talking about moving some lines on a piece of paper. And I've been to several of the Board of Supervisors meetings, I was at the last meeting when this was discussed. I will say that not only for myself, but many people in the community feel like this is direct harassment to the Hertel family because they are on the Board of Polo. And as everyone in the community knows, there is a problem, and there's constant disagreements between the two entities. It should have nothing to do with a personal piece of property that someone's trying to just develop a lot line on. There's no develop, the word was wrong, not develop, draw, to redraw the lot line. So I would just like to really encourage you to stop the process now. The fact that anyone else in the community would take a piece of property they could develop and make a lot of money from and downzone it is just amazing to me. We're very lucky to have them, and I would encourage you to let this process, to approve the Hertels' project as it is without it having to go another step further. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
I'd like to read a letter for you, and to the record, to the County of Santa Barbara Planning Department Development. "In reference to your letter dated May 28, 2003, about possible zoning changes on my property located on Grand Avenue in Los Salivos, I am requesting that you leave my property as it is. I want no changes made. Thank you. Janice Montanaro Yates, June 16, 2003."
All right, it's in my supplemental documents.
You know, this started off as a routine matter. In November of 2006, we started looking at Alamo Pintado Creek and the possibility that this was the road to Sac Tenacmu, an Indian village in the mountains north of Los Salivos. Then we found SBA 188, a Chumash cemetery located in and around Los Salivos. Then we found the application of Dr. Hertel, which said there are no sacred sites or cultural resource sites anywhere near his property, which was patently untrue. And then finally, when Dr. Hertel had a cultural resource survey done on the property, not only did they find a chert tool, all right, but they found lithic scatter, all right? That's known as shells, all right? And the chert tool was dismissed as just an isolated find, and you got to get this, and the shells were just because one of the Montanaroes liked to eat clams, all right? I sent that off to CSU Bakersfield, all right, and that letter is part of the record, and they said this is abhorrent work, all right? They should have had the shells analyzed by carbon 14 dating, all right? A chert tool is clear evidence that there's archaeology under this site, and it merited further investigation, all right? And so we're here today, all right? I just want to make eight points. We've revisited this, and we spent the whole day together. It was joyous, absolutely joyous, all right? First, the Los Salivos historic map, all right? Everyone agrees that the 1800s Los Salivos map is not of legal significance, and if you read the Hertel Certificate of Compliance application, their registered architect also puts that, and I made that part of the record. Second, George Sumen. Do you know George Sumen? He became Eberher, all right? He tried to do a subdivision across the street in 1984. One of his neighbors, surprisingly, protested and said none of these lots should be subdivided and no increased development should occur. That was Doug Hertel, all right? He shut that subdivision down, even though Sumen was trying to do it the right way. He did it as a subdivision. He didn't do two separate lot line adjustments filed a month apart, all right, to make it look like they were just under the four-lot limit. Third, VPAC. VPAC in 2002 had a hearing on this exact site, and someone stood up and said, we all know it has cultural artifacts on that site, all right? They were on notice in 2002, before they filed the lot line adjustment, that this was an archaeologically significant site. They, of course, put on the application, there's nothing there. But God forbid, you put that there's archaeological sites underneath, on that particular site, you know you're going to trigger an enhanced investigation. Fourth, 2003, all right? Concerns over high-density development on this exact site. Preservation of Los Salivos, all right? The Board of Directors, Doug Hertel, at that time, opposes any development for this lot, and promises that they will buy this lot and will not subdivide or sell any piece of it. Oh, I missed that, all right? Fifth, all right? In 2007, Dr. Hertel subdivides into three and a half acre ranchettes, all right? He puts a newspaper press release out saying he has to do it to pay off the mortgage, and today we're here talking about how his horses like alfalfa, all right? Where are we going with this, all right? This Hertel V application, I had to find, all right? When I first found this application, it was merely the farmhouse, all right? I had to investigate, and then I found this so-called Hertel IV, all right? As a reference in the record, I had to hunt it down on my own. Finally, six, the requirement for environmental impact report. Not only did we have originally Larry Spanney review the site, all right, and claim that we needed backhoe lifts, I had Professor Glassow review Larry Spanney's work, all right, and he also asked for additional work. And finally, I sent it to CSU Bakersfield, and Professor Hendrickson said additional work is warranted, all right? We've done our homework, all right? And we ask that you do the investigation on this site. It's significant, there's a nearby cemetery, it's not an ordinary site, all right? And we have very little confidence the applicant's going to take care of this site.
Thank you. Commissioner Valencia, did you have a question for Mr. Cohen?
Well, whoever answers a question. The shells were brought up at the last meeting that we had, and this carbon testing is something new. I don't recall it being discussed then, or maybe it slipped my mind, but was there carbon 14 testing? Has it been done? And if it should be done, who pays for that? Will the Chumash pay for that? Mr. Cohen, maybe you'd answer that for us. On the mic, please, so that we can... Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Basically, when you do a phase one test, you walk the property. If you find something, you have to do additional investigation. It's part of the phase one test.
The carbon 14?
And the carbon 14 was in the letter from Professor Suzanne Hendrickson that was put into the record in both files at the end of last year. And it's also as part of the additional documents that I put into the record at the beginning of the week.
All right, thank you very much.
I have a question. Professor Cohen, too.
Just finishing up with the county council.
Go ahead.
Council, is that the case on the phase one testing, that the applicant must pay for the carbon four testing, carbon 14?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I don't know whether extended testing, to the extent of requiring carbon 14 testing would be required as part of examination of material that's found in the phase one.
Who within the staff? It is required?
Perhaps staff has a better understanding of that.
Oh, Ms. Gerber, all right. Thank you.
Chairman Jackson, Commissioner Valencia, members of the commission. When a phase one study is done, it's to identify whether or not there are resources in the project area, and if so, their vertical and horizontal extent. Normally, if you find a scatter, you look a little further to see if there's anything else. Normally, carbon 14 dating is reserved for phase two studies, which is where you would evaluate the significance of your find, and the date of the shell would help you evaluate the significance of the site.
So at this point, it wasn't required under phase one?
That is correct.
All right, thank you very much for answering my question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are there more questions of Mr. Cohen? Because I don't want him to bounce back and forth, and I saw you... Go ahead, Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, my question is, if... Explain to me the reason we would need to do the backhoe investigation if this property were only used for the farm and the growth of alfalfa in perpetuity. Is there still a reason, give me the logic behind doing a backhoe testing for the site?
Mr. Chair, are you asking me, or are you asking Mr.?
Actually, I'm asking Mr. Cohen. He's insisting upon we do this big backhoe investigation of the site, and I'm wondering the reason, if we continue farming, which has been done for the past, I assume, many, many years, if that were just to go forward, what would be the reason for doing additional testing?
I, without showing any disrespect, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Blau, the question would then be, in my mind, why would we be doing this lot line adjustment at all if we were planning on keeping this land in alfalfa in perpetuity? But without answering that question, our position is that this development is foreseeable as a result of this lot line adjustment, all right? The petitioner has already stated repeatedly in the media, all right, they're selling off these lots, all right, and we actually have put in the record a copy of his statement, or at least the press reports, and as a result, it's foreseeable, and therefore, since development is foreseeable, we're asking that the testing, enhanced environmental testing and cultural resource testing be done.
And Commissioner Blau?
And you don't think it's reasonable that that condition be tied to the construction? I mean, I would agree with you that if they were to go build houses on there, it could use additional testing. My concern is, that might not happen for 40 or 50 years, and I don't see the reason for them laying out the money today to do this extensive testing if we're not going to build a house on there or disturb the soil for another 40, 50 years. It would seem logical to me your condition is appropriate if we're talking about actual construction and we move dirt. But I don't understand the reason for doing it today if all we're talking about is a lot line adjustment and there is no building contemplated. I'm further concerned that, as with many things we experience, today's standard is one standard, and a standard we had 20 or 30 years ago was a much different standard. We could have a much heavier standard 50 years from now. So we could have them do this test now, whatever mediation is there, they don't build a house for 50 years, there's a new standard in 50 years, and they do it all again. So why would we not impose the condition as a condition of development as opposed to a lot line adjustment?
Commissioner Blau, Mr. Chairman, there's two reasons. Well, first of all, we probably will not see this project again, all right? Because once this lot, the lot lines have been rezoned, everything else is ministerial, all right? The building permits, the grading permits, so the tribe itself will not be in a position, all right, to have a public hearing on this project again. Second, we've had a disastrous experience with this project with the planning commission, with the planning department, all right? We've been through three different planners, all right? And we've been through four different iterations of this document, all of which we've had to fight every inch for, all right? And we, it hasn't been the best experience. And the third issue is, we have very little confidence that, with the applicant, who didn't even put down that there was any significance to this site on per cultural resources from the beginning of the project.
Mr. Cohen, Commissioner Cooney has a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cohen, as I recall, and your memory of this may be much better than mine, we were concerned and discussed these issues when the other lots were up for review in summertime, and I remember your comments about not having any notice of additional development on the property. And so I recall agreeing with you on that and asking that the permit be amended to provide that the tribe specifically would be given notice of any ground disturbance on the property. And if I recall correctly, that was agreed to by my fellow commissioners and was a condition of the project. And so I'm there with the tribe for this project as well. In other words, I think that the tribe has made the case for the potential, the increased potential for valuable and important findings to be discovered there. And I think the tribe should be absolutely aware of any ground disturbance on the property, whether it occurs 50 years from now or five months from now. What bothers me a little bit is the motive, and a lot of the tribe's concern expressed by you today, is based on the fact that you don't trust the applicant to do the right thing. And I think, you know, one of the public speakers felt that the tribe's motive was questioned, that the only reason you're objecting to this project has to do with your disaffection for the applicant, not for these legitimate, significant issues that the project brings. So getting past that, you made a point and went to the trouble of creating some documents for our record here. You didn't touch on it in your oral presentation, but you've asked us to consider a re-review of the environmental issues under SEQA and asking that an environmental impact report be prepared prior to passing on this particular application. But I don't understand the connection. I don't see how you're getting from the case authorities you cited to this project. What is it about this project that is subject to further SEQA review than has been performed to date?
That would go back to our cultural resource studies and our position that it should be done prior to recording of the lot line adjustment. That's the sole basis we're banking on, and our reading of the SEQA regulations are, if reasonable parties, if reasonable experts disagree, then you should go to EIR.
You know, I think I understand SEQA relatively well now, and I'm as much an advocate of overdoing environmental review as anyone, I think, and my concern here is, if we're missing... And my concern here is if we're missing something, if we're allowing a project to go forward, even though it's conditioned on the basis of a mitigated negative declaration, and it should be subject of an EIR, I really want to understand why. But I don't see the connection between the case and the cultural resources. They've been identified. If the argument is the mitigation isn't adequate, that's, I understand that argument, and we can argue about that. What I don't understand is the argument that there hasn't been sufficient study to be able to grant the application.
I guess I... You know, we have been unfortunately very consistent today, pretty much asking for extended Phase One studies, all right? Until the last project, which was agreed to when I was outside, all right? We've been very consistent asking for an extended Phase One study prior to map recordation or prior to approval of lot line adjustment, all right? At least today, all right? And except for the last, and that's our position. And we believe that an additional study of the site needs to be done. Subterranean test pits, whether you like shovel test pits or whether you like controlled backhoe lifts, we think that's an essential part of deciding whether or not the site has subterranean cultural artifacts. And we think that's a SEQA issue. Maybe it's not a full-blown EIR, but it's certainly additional investigation that needs to be done, whether it be the initial study or whether it need to be a full EIR. I guess we can discuss that in more detail.
Okay, well, thanks for trying to address the concerns.
Are there any other questions of commissioners at this time? I just have one or two. But I think I want to let you go ahead and sit down. Joyce, you have some experience with archaeological matters, I presume. Maybe you could share with me a little bit. But there's talk about one set of experts, another set of experts. The question that came to me was, a Level One first study was done, and nothing was found. And the subsequent expectation on a lot line adjustment, before we talk about the fact that people have recognized there is a relationship with this project, would then subsequently be... You were talking about taking us through the process from Level One to 1.5. Could you take us back to where you were going with that?
Chairman Jackson, commissioners, if I understand your question correctly, you're asking what would trigger an extended Phase One? Or you're asking briefly to describe the process from Phase One to Phase Three to beginning to end? I'm not sure.
Well, probably both. I'm asking both of those.
Sure. I actually prepared some slides thinking that this question might come up. There... Maybe we could move the Montanaro Farm just for a moment. Thank you. There are three... Well, to start at the beginning, Chairman Jackson, commissioners, I have a master's degree in archaeology from UCSB. I studied under Dr. Glassow for my thesis. And I, before coming to the county, spent 20 years as a professional archaeologist in Santa Barbara County. So I have some familiarity with the issues. There are three essential steps under SEQA and as laid out in our county guidelines for cultural resources for looking at cultural resources and handling them under SEQA. The first is identification, whether or not a site is present. And if so, what is its vertical and horizontal extent? That would be the Phase One study. Sometimes, I'm going to go back to this slide. This is item G from our county cultural resource guidelines that were adopted and then revised in 1993, I believe. Item G, under the guidelines for Phase One studies, explains that sometimes because of dense vegetation, rapid alluviation, imported fill, conditions like this, you can't tell if a site is present until you look under the surface. So that would sometimes be part of the discovery phase of the Phase One study. The Phase Two would be that if you found something during a Phase One or extended Phase One, then you would need to test for its significance under SEQA, its importance archaeologically, whether it was able to contribute to our knowledge base of archaeological sites or cultural sites. If so, it's considered an historic resource under SEQA. And we would either avoid it or we would go on to the Phase Three, which would be mitigating impacts from the project. And that's essentially the process. Does that answer the question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. Since I'm a little new, that clarifies a great deal. At this juncture, I need a little help here because the representative of the applicant wanted to respond to one of the questions that was asked. So I'm going to ask Ms. Beltranina to come up. And maybe you'll also tell us what you're responding to so we can get caught up to where we were.
Yes, several things. There's been repeated accusations that we were not honest on our application. The question on the application has to do with are there mapped archaeological sites on the property? And we did the review of the area, and none showed up. And we actually put unknown on there. And staff also, you have, you know, things you can check. And we put unknown. But there was nothing and still is nothing actually mapped on this particular site. And since then, of course, we did the Phase One studies. With respect to this talk about the clam shells, we did two Phase One studies because they are two projects. The Phase One study down by the old Montanaro House had some Pismo clam shells outside one of the stoops. There is a letter attached to the Phase One for that other lot line adjustment, which you have already unanimously approved with the same conditions we're asking for today. There is a letter signed by a man who used to go clamming at Pismo with the man who used to live in this house. And that was the location where they would shuck the clams. And so that was attached to the archaeological study, which was for Lot Line Adjustment 15. So that is why the archaeologists attaching that letter realized that these were a more recent phenomenon from a clam digging, a pair of gentlemen that did clam digging. And that was where they shook the clams. They were not the result of any Schumash clam or mittens or scatterings like that. That being said, that was the Phase One study for the different one. Then we have the Phase One study for this end of the property. And that Phase One study was completely negative. And obviously, you've got tilled land out there with alfalfa in it that's loose. And he followed completely the protocol and did not find anything. Again, we're asking that you apply to this project exactly the conditions, including what Commissioner Cooney mentioned as far as the notification to this particular lot line adjustment. And actually, Mr. Cohen misstated on the previous subdivision, they agreed to the condition, which is exactly what we're asking for, extended Phase One prior to issuance of land use or permits for any kind of ground disturbance. That way, when you turn in the plan, if somewhere in the future you're going to develop one of these lots, you know exactly where you're going to disturb the ground, and that's where you do the extended Phase One. That is staff's recommendation to you. And Ms. Gerber has been the staff. And that is what was approved for the last lot line adjustment, which now has been appealed to the board. And so we would ask you to approve this project with those same conditions. Be consistent with what you did on the last one. And so, you know, that's basically what we're asking. And I just wanted to explain the talk about the clam shells and the carbon testing because it was deemed that was not necessary. But it is the Phase One study for the other end of the property where that was listed. I do have with me copies of those Phase Ones. As the owner, we have the right to release those Phase Ones to anyone. But staff doesn't typically release them. We asked staff at the previous hearing to release the Phase Ones to the commission so you would have those in your hands for information. They did not. We also asked for this time that, you know, with our permission, they be released. And I'm sorry you don't have those in your hands. They might have given you better information.
Thank you very much, Ms. Beltranina. Oh, do... I see lights. Are those questions for Ms. Beltranina? Just so... No? Do you have a question for this?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to know, do you have any idea what the carbon 14 testing would run approximately on those shells? It seems like that would be an expensive process.
I would imagine that would be an expensive process. Again, that would probably be the responsibility of Ms. Janice Yates-Montanaro, who is the owner of the portion of that other previously approved lot line adjustment that, because those were found on her dorm step of the, you know, historic family home. But, you know, I don't have any figures on what that would cost. But I would imagine that would be quite costly, yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. At this juncture, I don't see any more questions. Oh, wait, I do. Commissioner Blau?
I have a question to staff. I'm curious as to the status of the prior appeal and when it's scheduled for the board. And inasmuch as I've got a strange feeling that this one's going to also be appealed, I'm wondering if there isn't some method that we can get this to the Board of Supervisors with the appeal that's currently pending so that if my perception is right, and this really is harassment, rather than a legitimate concern, that we can at least get this decided on behalf of the applicant at the quickest possible time with the least possible cost?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, I'm going to try and address that one because Joyce did not process the previous appeal. I have not seen that item calendared for the Board of Supervisors yet. I've also not seen either a scheduled facilitation or the results of facilitation. That doesn't mean it hasn't occurred, but I haven't seen it. So I don't think it's been yet docketed or scheduled for the Board of Supervisors. I think if the commission were to take action today, any appeal would need to be filed within 10 days. And I think we could probably combine the appeals being heard at the board.
That's great.
I don't see any reason why we couldn't.
I'm just curious if we couldn't both approve this and have us send it up today?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, I don't... I think it would be odd for the commission to both approve and essentially appeal your action. I think it won't matter whether it's 10 days or it's tomorrow for that appeal to occur. We can get things moving if we know it's coming and take care of it.
Okay, I guess if I had really good assurances from the staff that we're going to stick to the 10-day appeal period, and if appealed, it gets moved to the same docket as the one that's currently being appealed, that would at least give me some great comfort. I also wouldn't mind the $433 for the county for the appeal. That might be a bad idea.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, I can assure you that there will be no longer than a 10-day appeal period. The appeal period is 10 days. So it will fall on the Monday following... I think the appeal period, actually, for your actions falls on either a Saturday or a Sunday. So it's the following Monday. And we will do what is necessary to make sure that the appeals get to the board quickly and together.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
Just, I don't want to let that opportunity go by. But if I understood Commissioner Blau correctly, and I follow closely what he says because he usually has a lot of wisdom in his suggestions, it was that we appeal our own decision approving the project to the board in order to get it there faster?
No, but I think we could just... I'm not sure that we couldn't just send this to the board and say, "Look, this is maybe appealed. It's part of the same project. You may want to consider this as well as your appeal." Since they are all the same issues.
I understand.
But as long as we get it there concurrently, I don't have a problem with it. It's fine.
It's just, it's... According to our procedures and any concept of due process, it's the appellant's right to appeal.
Yeah, I guess my concern was I had no idea whether this can be before the board, like next Tuesday. With me, that would be... If it's not scheduled yet, not likely to be scheduled for a month, then there's no problem getting them to go concurrently. My concern was that the appeal might be heard before this one could possibly be appealed, so they go through it twice.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair? Just to clarify an issue that I think Commissioner Cooney raised about the archaeological condition. And I apologize for this. You're right, the condition is not exactly the same as the condition that was approved by the planning commission in the context of the previous lot line adjustment we intended it to be. In fact, we checked, double-checked it. But unfortunately, I think Joyce was looking at the staff report and not the action letter when she was confirming the facts for me. The condition that you applied to the previous lot line adjustment for her files that is on appeal to the Board of Supervisors did include that the Santinas Band of Schumash Indians shall receive mailed notice of all development permit applications on the subject property. This was contained within the requirement for the Phase One, or in this case, extended Phase One. And then in... And that's it, yeah. So it... And so I would suggest that the condition mirror this condition if your commission is so inclined to act on the project today. The other point of cleanup on the conditions is the noise condition that Commissioner Cooney pointed out on the last item. And I think we should make this condition seven to four with the clause that provides that unless the Santinas committee plan changes the hours, construction hours. So just those two issues.
Commissioner Cooney?
Just to close the loop on those two issues, could we have a representation, Ms. Beltranina, that those two condition modifications are acceptable to the applicant? That is, expanding the construction hours and, more importantly, including the notice condition that was part of the last project?
Yes, the construction hours extension is fine. I think consistency is always good. And I just provided Mrs. Gerber with the action letter that I had with me from the last one to make sure that everything is, as we had requested, identical to the last one.
I thought that's what you intended all along and was certainly prepared to add that to what we have. But thank you very much. And there's nothing to require construction to start before 8:00. It's just to be consistent with the other projects, we should allow it.
Well, I think it's a very normal timing. Construction companies generally work seven to four. So I, you know, I think that is a good timing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or issues at this point? I'm a little reluctant, only because the applicant has asked to add something. So I'm going to look to my colleagues here for support. And all right, if you'll promise to keep it brief.
Very briefly. Just to characterize it, I think it's important that these shells, the Pismo clam shells, were five feet from the back door, and there was two of them. And they were in perfect condition. I mean, they were not even broken. And then the chert was a rock about that big that nobody here could have defined it, I don't think. But the expert we had said it was a scraping tool. There was a... You know, so there was, in the creek bed, there was that. So on the 25 acres, there was one chert and two Pismo clam shells, not a mitten, a pile of mitten or something like that. And then as far as we're going to sell off property, I don't think I've ever said that. I think our banker would like us to quit downzoning it. He's getting nervous. So, okay.
Thank you. Okay. At this juncture, we are beyond the... We've closed the public hearing. We've had our commission questions. I don't see any lights for additional questions. So now would be the time to begin some deliberations. I don't see any lights for additional questions, so now would be the time to begin some deliberations. This is a third district item. It is also an item in which my colleagues have, have been through this process and discussed it before. So I am going to, at this juncture, seek their perspectives before my own, and begin discussion that way. And I see Commissioner Valencia, your light has lit up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to make a long story short. I support the project, Mr. Chair. I don't see any major problems. The concern I was concerning these two shells, but as was indicated before, they were at another property. The carbon 14 testing, which was recommended by Mr. Cohen, is really a Phase Two project, so it's not something that's concerned at this time. So with that, I do support the project to continue forward. And last but not least, I want to thank Ms. Gerber for doing an outstanding job, and being so technical, and being able to give us all this information. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Valencia, looking to who wishes to be in this, Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is my second opportunity to review this property, which in its current state, of course, is, is just really exceptional in the way it's tucked back in against the trees, beautiful open field, no fences. It's idyllic. And it's something that I, if I were living across the street, would love to have stay just as it is, but there's nothing that we're in a position to do to require that. What we can require, and what I feel very deeply we should require, is diligence in identifying what might likely be buried six to 10 feet below the surface in the way of relics and other evidence of previous Chumash occupation. And I'm convinced that that can be done if and when the projects, if and when the properties are developed with anything from a road to a home, or an outstructure on any of the properties relating to barns or anything else. I do feel this is our obligation to the tribe. I do not feel that we have the obligation to conduct an environmental impact report. The mitigated negative declaration does identify the existence, the likely existence, of very important evidence of previous Chumash use, and it suggests, as the mitigation, this extended discovery related to development. So I'm satisfied the county is making its best effort to protect all rights here, the rights of the property owner, and the rights of the tribe to preserve its culture. And subject to the, the conditions that we've discussed, including notice to the tribe of any ground disturbance, I'm satisfied the project should go ahead as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Mr. Brown?
I concur.
Commissioner Blau?
I also concur. I think it's unfortunate that we are having to hear us on appeal again, but hopefully this will be the last one we hear where the lot line adjustment is at issue for cultural issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Blau. From my perspective, a couple of issues. Joyce made a sterling case for recognizing the component of alluvia, and that artifacts may begin to go very deep, and that that is a consistent phenomena that is at play on that site. So on the one hand, there is an inherent protection that appears to exist if indeed those articles are there. Also, I heard the applicant say that he had respect for if they are found and will respond accordingly, but that his initial and primary focus is to continue to farm the parcel. I believe, no matter what either of these parties do, the Montanaro party is going to be a, property is going to be a fishbowl in the Santa Inez Valley, and if it isn't one of these two parties acknowledging when a shovel or a spoon is turned in the property, it might be any one of Mrs. Griful's neighbors along that street, or perhaps a host of other removed disinterested parties who feel the need to keep track of what goes on with that property. So I am moved that, while I recognize there is a credible argument for there being some artifacts below the surface there, that the process still exists to protect them properly. And I believe we have added the additional notification to the tribe that will take place if dirt is moved, and we have codified that in our responsibility, so we have, in effect, gotten involved at a level that perhaps we might not otherwise to ensure that even acrimonious parties will acknowledge to one another when dirt is moved. Therefore, I am also moved to support a motion. Being that I was not here, I would like some assistance in framing that motion, so that it is consistent with what was done before, and I'll look to my colleagues to give me some assistance there. I'd rather get this one right the first time.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the following motion, that the commission adopt the recommended action staff has set forth on page two of our staff report dated January 9, 2007, subject to the amendments to the conditions that we have discussed today, in particular, the condition of notice to the Chumash tribe of ground disturbance, and for consistency purposes, on the noise condition, limiting construction to the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. during the weekdays.
And I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Now would be time for any additional comments. Looking, I don't see any. So at this juncture, we will have a vote, and Letitia, would you take, take the roll?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Chair Jackson?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you very much. Do we have additional housekeeping to complete at this point?
Mr. Chair, that's the last item on your agenda. I was able to confirm with Mr. Baker that John Terrell with HCD will be available on January 23rd, so we will conduct the briefing, although modified, briefing on the housing element and affordable housing relative to the recommendations that came out of the, I'm going to call it the Housing Advisory Committee, but it probably has a different name now. So just wanted to let the commission know that your projection report in two weeks will reflect that.
Thank you very much.
And other than that, I think we'll, we're ready to adjourn, unless there is other business of the commission.
Could you make sure that the report with the supervisors is in our packet for the 23rd? The recommendations, it wasn't very?
Yes.
That being all?
You had biteers for us, I saw them.
I do.
Yes? Okay. We won't leave without them. I believe we are adjourned.[1754.26][1754.26][music]